Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. If you grab a seat, we will convene the Malibu Planning Commission meeting for Monday, July 15th. Can we have a roll call, please? Kathleen.
Commissioner Hill.
Here.
Commissioner Marks.
Here.
Commissioner Mazza.
Here.
Vice Chair Jennings.
Here.
Chair Euring.
Here.
You have a quorum.
All right, okey dokey. Uh, Fledge of Allegiance. Tony, where are you? Lead us in the Fledge of Allegiance, if you would, please.
All the way back here, I'll do it.
Just yell, yeah, guys talk loud.
Stand up, everybody. Follow after me.
Allegiance certified in the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in common.
Very well done, Tony, thank you. Uh, approval of the agenda.
I move agenda be approved as staff recommends.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Done? Uh, report on posting the agenda, Kathleen.
The agenda for this meeting was properly posted on July 3rd, 2019, with the amended agenda posted on July 10th, 2019.
Excellent. Okay, staff ceremony presentations, Richard can give the staff update on the Woosley fire.
Good evening, Commissioners. We'll give you an update of the numbers. And these are numbers as of today. So far, we've only issued one de minimis waiver, and that was for a wastewater treatment system. We have now a total of three coastal development permits, applications, so these are folks who are doing completely new projects. These projects are beyond what was previously approved on the site. And we have thirty-five administrative plan reviews that we were, um, that were submitted. Some of those, of course, have already been approved. And our number for temporary housing approvals through the planning department still remains in the thirties, it's just thirty-seven. We haven't seen a large increase in that. And we've issued one hundred and fifty-one planning verifications. So that's in-kind replacement, up to ten percent. Our building and safety folks have issued now a total of ten permits for the reconstruction of single-family residences as a result of the fire. Two-hundred-and-sixty-five permits have been issued for debris removal. And for repairs, that's two-hundred-and-two permits. Once again, just like to reiterate that we have a fire rebuild counter upstairs. That counter is open at all times when City Hall is open. The planner that's there, Andrea, she can schedule an appointment for a planning verification meeting, or, uh, and also pre-design meeting. Andrea can be emailed, or, as I mentioned, come and visit at City Hall. The county is still operating their debris removal center on the other side of the hill in Calabasas. And we mentioned last week a change, but just to reiterate, that the fire department does have staff at City Hall, but now it's only on Thursdays. It's no longer Tuesdays and Thursdays, it's just Thursday morning from eight to twelve. Another program that we've begun, uh, the implementation of, is a fee waiver program based on the ordinance that was adopted by the city council. Uh, that, those fees that are, um, charged for like-for-like rebuilds, or like-for-like plus ten percent, and that would be for the primary residence, so a home that you lived in and occupied prior to the fire, as of that time. Um, according to the city council ordinance, we waive the fees for the planning department, as well as all the other departments, so that'll be building and safety, environmental health, geology, and public works. And it's only the city fees that are waived. Uh, once you pull a building permit, there are county fees associated with that permit, those fees still need to be paid. And if anybody has already paid fees to get in through either the planning process or in-plan check, uh, they can make an in-person application, uh, with the folks at our fire rebuild table, and the fees are being processed through the planning department. So we are the folks you want to talk to, uh, to start that process. And once again, we, on the city's website, we've got all of this posted. It would be Malibu City Re-, or MalibuRebuilds.org.
Richard, thank you very much. John, go ahead.
Richard, I think you reported two-hundred-and-five, maybe I'm wrong, lots have been cleared? And I, we read in the, let's see, two-hundred-and-sixty-five. Uh, and there's been several articles in the paper saying they're all done. So is that just one program that's done? Or, or what's not? There's apparently another, what, one-hundred-and-thirty-five or four, three-hundred-and-sixty-five that need to be done?
The county program has been completed. It's the folks who are doing this on their own that have, we still have some outstanding ones. And it's not as simple as, um, them, you know, just getting the, getting the site cleared and getting the equipment off the site. Uh, my understanding from, uh, one person I was working with, I'd say, a couple of weeks ago, and they're still not complete, I think by the end of May, they had their site cleared. But they forwarded all of the soil testing results and all of the information to the county, uh, and that's still pending with the county. So there are some lots that we have not been able to, uh, deem as, uh, you know, eligible for reconstruction because they're still going through and, uh, finalizing the county paperwork. But the, uh, the county's program, the right-of-entry, the county's right-of-entry program, that is complete.
Is there a timeframe they have to get that done by?
My understanding was that the lots were to be cleared by, I think it was the middle of last month, is my understanding on that.
And are they restricted from applying for, before it's approved?
You can apply for a building permit, or, excuse me, you can, you can apply for permits, so either planning or building, prior to the site being cleared. However, the permits, the start construction can't be issued until the site is clear. And same with temporary housing.
Anybody else? Jeff?
You mentioned that once the building safety process gets, gets finished and the fees are waived, that the county fees are still in place. What county fees are we talking about?
There's school fees associated with it, is my understanding, that our building and safety staff, uh, made us aware of. And there was, there's, there, I'm sorry, I don't remember the second fee that they mentioned, but there were two fees at least, uh, that are established by the county that the city charges.
Well, I know they're, they're impact fees that, that happen when you build a new house, for example, impacts on school district requirements and so forth. Doesn't seem to me that that would apply if you're simply building the house since you already paid impact fees on when you built it originally, but, um, maybe you can let us know what the answer is to that.
And, uh, anybody else?
We, we can verify that for you.
Commissioner Marks?
Yeah, I had a quick one, I think it was like three or four slides up, uh, where you had kind of the first summary slide with, I think, thirty-five and thirty-four, one, yeah, that one. Um, this, I, I know in the presentation before, you intended to list those that were, um, same-sized, those plus ten percent, and then those that were brand-new CDPs. Is that, does that line up with this list, or is it this one a little different?
This list does combine some of those categories, uh, but the numbers at the end of the, uh, the numbers, if you were to add all this up, would match the numbers on our cities, our city website. Uh, my goal, though, is in the future, actually, to try to get this to look a bit more like our city website, so that what you see visually here, the way it's presented, matches.
Lines up. And those seventy-two would be then the hundred to one-hundred-and-ten percent, and then those three would be those that are, um, totally, kind of totally new development? Is that roughly correct? I'm sorry, yeah, would that be correct?
I'm sorry.
No, that's right. The thirty-five and thirty-seven, those representing seventy-two builds, are those the ones that show a hundred to one-hundred-and-ten percent?
The thirty-seven is a temporary housing permit, so the thirty-five is, um, the like-for-like.
But then like-for-like, I thought that was more like ninety in our last presentation? Or am I just, my memory is not serving me well?
That does, that does sound low, thirty-five.
I thought like-for-like was like ninety or something overall.
I think you're right, actually.
Forty-five and forty-seven.
The like, the like-for-like is one-hundred-and-fifty-one.
Oh.
The bottom there are the number of planning verifications. So if you were to put your home back, and you just push out ten percent, and you're not triggering, uh, any requirements for reduction in setback or height above eighteen, uh, feet, you would be that bottom number there, the planning verification.
So you've increased by about sixty since our last session, if I remember right?
Yeah, in the last couple of weeks, it's gone up, yes.
That's great, okay, thank you, that's such a, that's such a big jump, I didn't track it.
Yeah, that is the headline, right?
Yeah, that's, that's great, thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Uh, anybody else? No? Let's close that down, move to item two, oral and written communication from the public. Do we have anything? Nobody wants to talk to us, all right, good meeting. Uh, moving on to the consent calendar.
Can I make, um, two quick announcements?
Oh, I'm sorry, wait, I got planning commissioners' comments, don't want to miss those. One of the commissioners go first and then go back to you.
As you wish.
And you guys want, any comments, gentlemen? Go ahead.
Yeah, I don't, I don't know that this, tonight's the time to, time to get into a big discussion, but something to think about and be ready to discuss in the future. And that would be that, um, it seems like there might be some inertia towards shifting the meetings to Tuesdays. They were on Tuesdays up until 2012, when they were shifted apparently for the benefit of the Malibu Times production schedule, and, or the publication schedule. And they don't seem to be making it on time anyway these days, usually. So, uh, having an extra day after the weekend seems like it would add, allow more time to address some of the factual and legal issues that come up over the weekend, and, um, I think maybe there's some, some, staff might appreciate this, too. So just, maybe we think about this now, whether we want to do this, pros and cons, and I don't know whether this needs to be agendized, or what the procedure is on it. Um, but maybe that would be a good idea in case the public has an opinion and wants to weigh in.
Okay, very good. Anybody else? John?
Yep, um, oh, Jeff, did you?
I want to say that, that I support that idea wholeheartedly. I both, I never liked it when we switched from Tuesday to Monday, and, and I think it gives staff, uh, a real benefit in being able to address the issues that come up, so it doesn't have to all happen in one day.
Okay. John?
I would, um, we're not having, having a hearing right now, but I would adamantly oppose, be opposed to that, having to spend my whole Monday getting all, all the comments come in at Monday at four o'clock. I'd like to see some of them over the weekend. Um, the other thing is, I, I hope in the future, we reconsider making decisions, uh, after eleven o'clock.
Yeah.
My brain doesn't function after eleven.
That was my mistake, I, I'll try not to make that happen.
The other thing is, I got several calls this weekend about a new set of signs that went up on Point Doom, directing people to the headlands from the Coastal Commission for beach access. And, um, apparently it has something to do with the, the gates at the park. And I wondered, I couldn't remember what to tell people. Have the gates at the park been approved? Or are they in process, or what?
You're talking about the alligator teeth and the, that, um, that has to come back to you, um, as a coastal development permit, now that the city council has, um, approved it as a capital improvements program, uh, project, so we're in the process of getting that scheduled.
So we have to approve it, and then it gets, then it gets?
The CDP has to be approved before it can be constructed.
Okay, well, somebody stirred somebody up.
If you, if there's information, you can send me about that, I'm happy to look into it.
Well, I know at least one sign is on Fern Hill and, and Wildlife, but there's several others between there and the point.
Anything else?
Nope.
Commissioner Marks?
Uh, nothing to add, other than I think I would prefer Tuesdays as well, for what it's worth.
Okay, I've just got two quick ones, um, and one, I just, a quick comment on the, uh, city council meeting that took place last week on the TDSF issue. Uh, and I guess it's sort of an apology to the, to the commissioners. I mean, somewhere in, near the end of the meeting, Paul Grissani got up and sort of trashed each one of the, the planning commissioners, uh, and the city council, who directed us to actually do that thing, said nothing, which I thought was interesting. Uh, would have expected a little bit more out of that. And so let me give you what I think is the best advice I can give you if you're building a house, if you're thinking of building a house, do two things. Pull up Malibu's general plan, and read the mission statement. Read it. And then go to the coastal, the LCP, and you can, there's a fine thing, you can find words and type in neighborhood character, and read what pops up. And I would read them not once, I would read them twice. And I can absolutely guarantee you that if you read both of those things, you will never be surprised by anything that takes place up here at the planning commission. Best advice I can give. Uh, Bonnie?
Thank you, Chair Euring. Um, I just wanted to make two quick announcements. Um, first, I wanted to congratulate Jessica Thompson. She has been an assistant planner, after being a planning technician with us for several years, and she's been promoted to associate planner. She, she's got, um, one or two of your items later tonight. We're very happy about that. And then, second, and less exciting, is that, uh, the new fees for the fiscal year, um, nineteen-twenty have gone into effect as of today, so, um, if you have any fees to pay coming up, just make sure you check, uh, what your fees are going to be before you write your checks. And that's it.
Excellent. Go ahead, John, one more.
I wanted to, uh, congratulate Jessica, our clevenger, for getting married, to a great guy.
Very good. Okay, on to the consent calendar. Anybody want to pull anything? No?
Looks like you don't need a motion if you want to, if there are no objections.
Just keep going, okay? Let's move on to the public hearing, item number four A, which is coastal development permit number twelve zero zero four, string line mod review number twelve zero zero one, demolition permits twelve oh oh two, nineteen twelve, and nineteen thirteen, lot merger twelve zero zero one, offer to dedicate, an application for lot merger, demolition of three existing single-family beachfront residences, and associated development and construction of a new single-family beachfront residence, and associated development. This was continued from May twentieth, and we have some speaker slips. We've got, we get a staff report, please.
Yes, thank you, members of the commission. Next item on the agenda is a coastal development permit for two-two-two-three-zero, two-two-two, two-two-two-two-four, two-two-two-one-four PCH. It includes a lot merger of three adjacent lots, demolition permits to demolish the existing single-family residences and associated development, and string line modification, and offer to dedicate. The lots are located on the ocean side of PCH in the single-family medium zoning district, and each lot is approximately a quarter of an acre in size. The project before you tonight was previously heard by the planning commission on May twentieth. At the request of Commissioner Mazza, the applicant has redesigned the proposed residence to include eight parking spaces, and has aligned, realigned the driveway to not utilize the view corridor. The project before you consists of the lot merger, the demolition of three existing single-family beachfront residences and associated development, construction of a new thirteen-thousand-seven-hundred-sixty-nine-square-foot, two-story, single-family beachfront residence, plus an attached one-thousand-five-hundred-and-fifty-square-foot glass roof conservatory, for a total of fifteen-thousand-three-hundred-and-nineteen square feet, including two attached two-car garages, decks, exterior stairs to the beach, a new onsite wastewater treatment system, and shoreline protection device, landscaping and hardscaping, and a forty-two-foot, one-inch-wide view corridor on the east side of the property. The proposed development, development meets all, uh, setback requirements, with the exception of the building string line as measured from the nearest corner of the structure to the east. The building to the east consists of a notch or a jog in the building design that pulls the building string line approximately eleven feet closer to PCH than the most seaward corner. Approval of a string line modification would not approve a structure that extends further seaward than the two neighboring structures. The proposed structure would be developed in line with the existing neighboring structures. The project has been redesigned to include two attached two-car garages and four unenclosed parking spaces on the east and west sides of the structure, for a total of eight parking Story poles were erected in April. The photographs show the view of the proposed development from PCH. Um, the photographs also show the relative height of the adjacent neighbor to the east. The properties on either side of the subject properties are constructed with two-story single-family residence. And these photographs show the proposed development from the beach, both looking west and east along the sand. As evident from the story poles, the proposed development will not extend seaward of the existing neighboring structures. Staff has not received any additional correspondence regarding this project since the May twentieth hearing, and all correspondence was included as part of the packet. In summary, staff recommends that the planning commission adopt resolution nineteen thirty, approving the project as condition. And this concludes my presentation, and I am available, as well as the applicant's team, for questions.
Thank you very much, Jessica. Okay, we've got, Drew, you've got your applicant team, uh, and you, you get fifteen minutes, I believe, right?
Yep, do we have any disclosures since the last hearing?
Any disclosures? No?
No.
I have a comment, though. Um, I went many years without being able to change projects, and, uh, it's, it's always been by consensus, so I don't want to take credit for doing this. It was consensus of the board. Thank you. Commission.
Okay, Drew, you've got fifteen minutes, and we've heard this before, so if you could sort of make sure we focus on the new stuff, that would be very helpful.
Yeah, I don't have anything to add to the staff report about the project. I just wanted to let you know that, uh, I'm here to answer questions, along with the same staff that we had here previously, so if you want to get into any of the technical issues, the technical consultants are here as well. So, um, I also wanted to just point out that the applicant is, uh, in concurrence with the conditions of approval. Uh, they're in, uh, in agreement with the offer to dedicate the lateral public access easement, and also the view corridor forty-two feet width. And that's it.
All right, Drew, thank you. That was excellent. Questions? John, go ahead.
Uh, Jessica, I, I noticed that because of this change, several of the plans, um, and review sheets were dated after our last hearing. Has the resolution been changed to, uh, reflect that, or do we need to say anything about that?
I don't think there'd be anything in the resolution that would need to be changed.
No new plan, the new plans, the old resolution?
Uh, oh, I did change the date stamped date, but that was the only thing that was really needed.
Uh, to facilitate discussion, I move approval of the plan as submitted.
Were there any other speakers?
Oh.
No, we, they, they, I'll just, Drew's the only team.
Okay, so we close the public hearing, okay.
Now, I'll close the public hearing. John, go ahead.
Well, I moved approval as staff recommends.
I'll second for a discussion. Anybody want to discuss?
Yeah, I, I've got two things. I, I would like to hear either from staff and/or from the applicant about the string line. Um, we have written here that the standard is whether it interferes with public use, and, uh, the standard is whether it's necessary to avoid a deprivation, and this would result in a house that's still way bigger than any of the neighbors. So if somebody would like to articulate what the deprivation would be with the string line, why do we just automatically allow that?
We don't generally just automatically allow it.
Why would we?
Yeah. Um, if I could go back to my presentation, hold on. Parker, could you bring up my presentation, please? So, I don't know if you can see, um, in this exhibit, but the corner, the green dash line, um, ends on the east side in this jog that I was discussing in the, in the staff report and in the presentation. It's really just an architectural feature on this house that is pulling the whole string line further towards PCH. If somebody put an addition right there, if they pop that out on that east side, the string line would come to where the red line is, anyway. So it's not impacting anything negatively, and the existing beach profile remains the same, because the house is not going to be pushed any further ocean side.
I understand it as a matter of common sense and practicality, I just wonder from a legal standpoint, if we're talking about, you know, we have to make the finding that there's a deprivation, or there would be, to get the variance, I don't know, it seems like.
I think the, the issue, or the, the way that
I think the issue, or the way that staff reviewed this, was that if you were to look at figure one on page four of 22 in the staff report, it's an aerial that shows the three lots involved in the application, as well as a few properties on either side. And you can see that there's a really clear prevailing string line that goes across. And so the focus really is on the string line, and this would be kind of a strange anomaly that, that goes landward where none of the other houses have, have that same condition.
So we're somehow just calling it a non-material technicality or something?
That's, the string line modification is designed to address those kinds of little anomalies, as opposed to a string line variance, which would be something more significant in terms of a change.
Okay.
And then Commissioner Jennings?
If I might add a little thought to it, this provision was under a lot of discussion when, when it was originally enacted. And, and if you think about it, they, what we have in this particular case is a notch. And if you imagine two-notched houses on both sides, you could end up having one house being here and the other house being here, and the house between them having to be drawn back to where the notches are. And, and so it was to avoid that kind of problem, that some flexibility was written into the string line provisions in order to be able to allow, if it looked appropriate, to pick another corner from which to draw the line.
Okay. And then my, my only other point was that.
One follow-up, if I may?
Oh, yeah, okay.
It's not material here, but just in terms of the description you gave, where if they built out to that, to kind of include that as livable space in that little corner, I would just ask, not to modify this report, but in the future, the red line, I would think then should be drawn from that kind of theoretical corner, which would be formed if they pulled that forward, so that it actually would reflect a true string line. Because if that's the logic, I would think that that's a more appropriate place to put the, the red line.
I think the, the reason that we've drawn it this way is that it's actually an existing fixed point, so we know where to connect it and measure it in the future.
I'm just.
But I understand what you're saying.
Yeah, and I'm trying to play the logical extreme of what Vice Chair Jennings called out. And if you had two large notches, you know, you could really shift a few feet forward or back, so, I don't know, just as a practice. Sorry, go ahead, Greg.
Commissioner Hill? Yeah, and then following all the discussion we had the last time about sea level rise and what, what to expect with that, and the fact that the FEMA's legal range is from 18 inches to 66 inches expected, it seems to me that what solves my problem with calling it only 18 inches would be to insert some kind of indemnification clause that's in effect says, like, like what we do with fires, this being a high fire zone, to just say, the applicant recognizes in some fashion that this is, that they're choosing one of the riskier measurements that's allowable, or the riskiest measurement allowable under the law, and that, that the city is indemnified against any and all that comes. I think that sort of circum, would circumvent all the discussion about, are you choosing a prudent sea level rise figure or not?
Comment?
Yeah, good.
I believe that's in there somewhere.
Condition 99 deals with.
It's almost in there.
Yeah, it, it talks about wave, wave action and flooding and other hazards associated with development on a beach or a bluff. Sounds like you want something more specific.
Maybe you want to put the word, the phrase "sea level" in maybe in that same clause, and maybe that's all you need.
Well, they also have included the wave uprush study as a requirement to build a property, and they have to follow all the tables in there. I do want to comment, though. We've had five or six experts come in here that are real experts, and to the man, they all say 17 to 18 inches. We had an LA Times article written last week that said nine feet. So I'd rather go with the science than the LA Times-type analysis.
And just by way of, I don't know, common sense, that, that there are state policy guidelines on what sea level rise number to use, and when you look in it, it gives you a choice of how risk averse you want to be or not. And if you choose the sort of moderate risk category, that specifies a 36 to 42-inch adjustment for sea level rise. So that's between the 18 inch and the 16 inch, sort of a mid-range. So that, that to me would seem like the, sort of the prudent zone, but if you want to say 18, and then, and indemnify us, fine.
Any support for Commissioner Hill's suggestion for the indemnification?
So just kind of modifying line as item 99 to reflect some language to that effect?
Just one word?
So it would include, you would just add sea level rise, so if you wave action, sea level rise, erosion, flooding, landscapes?
Yeah, and effects thereof. Something to that effect, yeah.
John, you happy that you're?
I accept it.
And I had another, just, not necessarily at an amendment, more for a discussion, just in terms of the information we were provided, you know, in looking at what we do have, kind of your comment earlier against neighborhood character, something that calls out that this, this residence is roughly three times the size, something like that. Is it, would we want to add that as part of the record?
There is no neighborhood character on a beachfront.
Even so, just based on the analysis provided?
It's not in the code. No reason to put it in. I mean, it's just words, but.
I just, I wanted to throw it out there for a discussion. Okay.
Okay, so we got.
So you accept my?
I'll accept the change also. We've got a motion and a second. We got the change that Commissioner Hill put in. Kathleen, we get a roll call.
Commissioner Maza?
Yes.
Chair Euring?
Yes.
Commissioner Hill?
Yes.
Commissioner Marks?
Yes.
Vice Chair Jennings?
Yes.
Motion carries.
So I hope no one says we turned down 15,000 square foot houses.
Speak for yourself. All right. Item 4B, conditional use permit amendment number 19003, an application to amend the conditional use permit for the operation of a restaurant, Soho Little Beach House, continued from July 1st, 2019. And we've got some speaker slips for this one. We've got the applicant team. Any disclosures?
You should.
Let's do, let's do staff report first.
You should tell us. We have a new audience. You should tell them about how they do minutes.
Here's, here's, yeah, I mean, basically you get three minutes to speak. If you want to give a minute to somebody else, you can do that. The person can get another minute. If you don't speak, you can give them a minute of your time to do that. The timer is going to be over there on the counter. I mean, we used to have one on the podium here, but apparently that wasn't working. So Kathleen is driving the timer over that side. Hopefully, it will beep when you've got 30 seconds left, so you've got an idea of, of what's going on.
Beep once.
Beep once.
A limited, max of eight minutes.
You got a max of eight minutes. Okay?
If you get donations from, uh, five other people.
Yeah, you get donations from other people.
But the applicant will get 15 minutes.
The applicant gets 15.
And they can reserve time for rebuttal.
Richard, let's do a staff report, then we'll do disclosures.
Good evening, Chair Euring and members of the planning commission. What we have for you this evening is an amendment to the conditional use permit for the operation of the Soho House Restaurant on Pacific Coast Highway. The reason why we're here this evening is that over the past couple of years, staff has worked with the Soho House in an attempt to bring them into conformance with the violations that have been reported. And we've mentioned these various concerns we've had with them in our compliance hearing that we, permit compliance hearing we had earlier this month, earlier this year in February. And as a result of this, the applicant has submitted a conditional use permit amendment, and that was one of their options that was given to them at that last meeting, in an effort to bring them into compliance. And that's what we have here. This is an aerial photo and vicinity map. The Soho House Restaurant is part of a development that included two restaurants, the restaurant directly to the east, which is now Nobu. That's the, the other end of the site there. They have a joint use parking agreement, and they do share spots. 10 of the parking spaces in the Soho House parking lot are used by Nobu during their operational hours. The applicant has proposed a modification to the approved onsite valet plan, and the purpose of this is that staff identified that based off of what was found in the planning commission's approval from 2007, the valet operation was not operating consistent with that plan, so we have a modification in front of you for that. The applicant would like to request the inclusion of amplified and acoustic sound so that they could have performances, or at least music, as part of the operations that they have on that site, because as the conditions are written currently, they're prohibited from internal music as well as external sound. It's limited to seeing no amplified music or entertainment. The applicant is also utilizing off-site parking for their employees. There was, staff was informed that they're using approximately up to 40 spaces at 22619 Pacific Coast Highway, that's the enclave, and they're using that for employee parking only. We'll get into some of the concerns that were raised within the last couple of days and that relates to the valet parking. And then also, as part of this, they also requested a modification to their hours of operation and the hours of alcohol service. Specifically on the hours of operation, the way the application has been approved in the past, it limits the hours of operation to simply the days of the week, and no consideration was given for holidays or holiday eves that follow on weekdays. What they're requesting is basically to have their weekend hours for holiday eves and holidays, so they could have extended hours then. And then the extended hours on the alcohol service, that one essentially is in the morning hours, they'd like to be able to begin the sale of alcohol consistent with the sale of breakfast. Right now, the change is that, the way it operates currently is that they can serve breakfast a couple hours before the alcohol service can take place. This is an aerial photo showing both the Nobu Restaurant, and that's on the left, excuse me, the right-hand side there, the building you see, and on the left-hand side is the Soho House Restaurant. The way the valet plan was approved as part of the previously issued coastal development permits for, there's one for each site, and then there was a joint use parking agreement. But essentially, it was envisioned that the two sites would be constructed together and would share the parking lot together. And in that plan, what we have in the old staff report, and it's a copy of it in the current agenda report, is that where you see that blue arrow there, that is the westernmost driveway. That was originally envisioned to be an entry driveway, and you would come into the site and you would head towards the east. There'd be valet stands for the two restaurants, and then you would exit out of the easternmost driveway, which would be right adjacent to that crosswalk that you see on the right-hand side of the photograph there. What happened was that the two restaurants, even though permits were approved at the same time, construction started relatively close to each other, Nobu was completed first, and it was completed, I would say, a good time, there's a good amount of time between Nobu's completion and the opening of Soho House. And what ended up happening was that because the Soho House parking lot was an active construction site, it was fenced off, and the centermost driveway, which you see there with the green lines, was utilized as the entrance for Nobu. And then you would go in front of Nobu and exit on the driveway there to the east. That just seemed to work, and as we reported in our last planning commission hearing, where we were doing the compliance report, that's what was being used. And both restaurants currently feed into that parking lot, that driveway, and they branch off, if you're towards the east, if you're going to Nobu, and if you are going to Soho, you branch off to the west. Our traffic engineers have reviewed this parking plan, or valet plan, I should say, and it is determined, we do believe this to be a better solution for the valet operation. It allows for two queuing lines. And so what we're here to do tonight as part of the amendment is to memorialize this so that they would no longer be out of compliance with their valet plan. So what you see is the valet entrance would be the green there. You could either turn in from the center lane or turn in from the right-hand lane on Pacific Coast Highway. They would have the ability to stack two rows of cars, and the red area that you see towards the west, the end of all that stacking, that would be the valet stand. So the idea with this plan is that they would have ample room for queuing cars onsite, and they wouldn't have a backup onto Pacific Coast Highway. Cars would then exit through the blue arrow. So tonight, when you're looking at the amendment to the valet plan, the amendment is specifically limited to this. Now, staff is aware that neighbors have provided us with correspondence, and it's also been provided to the commission, and we shared it with the applicant this afternoon, that there's evidence that we're seeing cars coming out of the Soho parking lot, making a U-turn on Pacific Coast Highway, and then what they're doing is parking by the Dun &amp; Bradstreet Building. So they're entering where the KFC used to be, the Malibu Country Chicken. And that's roughly a little bit across the street and to the west there. Staff's code enforcement will be contacting the restaurant operator tomorrow. The reason why it didn't happen today is because it wasn't until about 4:00, 4:30-ish, that I was able to finally get all these videos together from Kathleen. But we will be following up with them on that, and that is a separate issue. If it turns out they are indeed parking off-site, they would be, for their valet, that would be in violation of the 2013 conditional use permit amendment that says all valet parking shall be onsite. So we've provided our code enforcement staff with that condition. So we will be looking into it. So tonight, once again, when it comes to the valet, you're not in any way approving off-site valet use. It would strictly, it would strictly be just the onsite flow so that we would be consistent with the plan. The other modification to the parking is that the applicant has requested the use of the building that is to the east and across the street, commonly known as the enclave. They would like to use that for their employee parking. Now, staff has spoken with the operator of the enclave, and based off of what they reported as their leased area, they're required to have 64 parking spaces. And the way that building is currently built and striped, there are only 73 spaces. The applicant is requesting that the planning commission allow them the use of that as off-site parking, and they had provided data that was looked at by the city's traffic engineer. He provided guidance on how the counts shall be conducted. But what they're essentially telling us is that, and this also comes from the building operator, is that the site is underutilized, and they're asking to take advantage of the unused space as off-site parking. But once again, the way it works out with roughly 1,600 square feet of that building leased, they're required 64 parking spaces for that. However, they are giving us numbers that they're using more parking spaces in the line of 20 spaces. But they're asking the commission to allow for that.
Richard, sorry, Richard, could you restate the numbers? Did you say they only have 1,600 square feet leased?
It was 16,000, I'm sorry.
Okay. And then the parking required for the overall building is 74 spaces, and then they're using much less than that?
That's correct. Their numbers are, what they're presenting to us are in the 20s. And the, the building as a whole, though, as I mentioned, is supposed to have, per the plans that were approved, 74 parking spaces. Staff's only been able to count 73 spaces. The operator said there's only 73. We don't quite know where the missing space went. But the, the take-home from the story is that if you apply the city's parking standards, which is one space per 250 square feet, and that standard was in place at the time that the building was built, and the approvals for that building used that parking ratio, they do not have by code the excess parking. And so what they're trying to demonstrate is that through a parking study, is that while the code recommends or requires those, that number of spaces, there's extra parking there. It's, in reality, it's, the parking demand does not match the code requirement. Staff recommends a couple of modifications to the conditional use permit. We observed today that condition number 13 should reference condition 12 and not condition 9. This has to do with violations of the valet operation. What that condition stating in condition number 13 is it references, which is right above it, which has some guidelines on how the valet shall be operated, and we realized there was a, a reference, it was an error. And also, we wanted to add to the permit, if, the conditional use permit, if the planning commission agrees to it and allows for it, the requirement of a lot full sign. So when the lot has reached its full capacity, rather than the valet operator just queuing cars or having cars wait for a space to open, they put in place a lot full sign, and this would be used for them to turn away cars and not have cars either back up in the valet queuing or spill out onto the highway, blocking lanes of traffic. Staff does recommend the approval of the resolution, adopting the changes to the conditional use permit. However, staff would like to make the council, the commission aware that we have been in discussions with. discussions with the neighbors of the property to let them know about, the discussions about what's being presented this evening, and those neighbors have provided us, as I mentioned, with video showing the valet, it looks to be the valet using off-site parking. And there was also some questions raised about the wastewater treatment system. It appears that that system was being pumped on a weekly basis. We did have the city's environmental health folks look into that, and what we found was that it was not unusual for the system, apparently based on the type of system they have there and the operation of a restaurant. It's common for the grease pits to be pumped by the, by the wastewater maintenance contractor, so that truck is not only pumping sludge from the OWTS, but also emptying out the grease traps, and that's a common occurrence on a weekly basis. And also, what was explained to me is that the way that the system separates out the effluent, it pushes the sludge off, and then the more liquid waste enters the drain field, but it's not uncommon for that sludge to be pumped weekly, and the reason behind that is that they do have a very strict wastewater discharge permit from the Regional Water Quality Board, and doing what they're doing helps them continue to meet those wastewater discharge requirements so that they don't cause a pollution issue for the ocean. I'm aware, I'm, excuse me, I'm available for any questions, as well as the applicant is here this evening.
Richard, thank you very much. Any disclosures?
I spoke with Mr. Moore, the president of the Homeowners Association of the properties above, prior to the time, this matter was previously scheduled to come on calendar. And, and the one thing that, that we talked about that is not highlighted in the, in the staff report, is that it's, it's not just the noise of amplified music that is upsetting to the neighbors. We also talked about the, what he considered to be the unusual acoustic nature of the bowl in which these properties sit. But as I say, it's not just the amplified music, it's also the noise from the audience, cheers, applause, woo-hoo, and et cetera. So, and, and I, I thought that was a significant fact that ought to be mentioned in disclosing. That's it.
Commissioner Ariel?
Since the last hearing, I've been almost T-boned several times by cars, valet cars coming out of there. I have observed cars double-parked in the entry lane several times as I've just been driving by, so then in effect, in, in effect, there's only one entry lane. I don't know if they're staging there temporarily or what. Couple days ago, I saw a valet parking in the Chicken Restaurant lot, right in those spaces, right next to the, right in the front of the lot, and I, I think I should probably mention too that I've had a lot of past professional experience as a sound engineer, and go into all kinds of detail if you wanted, played in live bands, so I understand how a lot of this equipment behaves.
Thanks. Commissioner Marx?
I did talk to Frank Nielsen today, who told me he's a resident of an apartment approximately quarter of a mile away, and represented some people in his building. He said that they never had a place to park because of the employees. I asked him to submit this in writing. That was today, so I don't know if he submitted it. And then I talked to Mr. Moore, mainly about how to submit information, but he did supply me with the same videos of the parking that I think you got, Richard, the, the U-turns and the parking in the Dun &amp; Bradstreet Building. I also drove up to the enclave and drove back down, and I, I did notice it appears the building has more construction on it on the third floor, bottom floor, I guess, bottom of three, than the amount shown in the eighteen-thousand-five-hundred square feet we've been told about. That's it.
Commissioner Marks?
I have one more. I'm sorry. And I did talk to the chairman of the Public Safety Commission, who randomly called me, and he said that he was, he was going to ask Lieutenant C2 to come down and talk about enforcement tonight.
I don't have anything additional since your last meeting.
I also got, I did not speak to Mr. Moore, but I got a bunch of emails from him, emails from some of the other residents. I spoke this afternoon with Richard on, on some of the issues. Last week, I took a ride up to the enclave, just because I've never been up there. I'm on the bottom floor, they're, they're renting out space to Nobu, there's a design studio there, so there's some stuff going on, not material to this one, I don't think. Thursday, I was up there last Thursday afternoon, and the parking lot was full. There was one space open. So I'm, there's, there's a chart in your staff report that sort of shows a lot of open stuff, but boy, there wasn't anything there the day I was there. And then additionally, in your staff report, you identify that they're looking for forty spaces. There's a letter that we got from, I think Ken, April twenty-six, twenty-nineteen, that says they're looking for fifty spaces, so maybe Ken, when you speak, you can tell us which one that is. That's all I got. So with that, let's open up the public hearing. Ken, you're first, you've got fifteen minutes. And let me just check on one thing, because your applicant team is you, there's John Marshetti. Am I doing that right?
It's John Zeeman.
I got, well, here are the, here are the names that I've got. John M-A-R-S-A-S-H-I?
They might be, they're not necessarily affiliated with our team, they might just be in support of the project.
Okay. How about Thomas Leonard? You're, so you're there, okay. John Zeeman, we got.
Yes, and my colleague Monica Bruseno as well.
Right, so I don't know who John, is John Marshetti here?
I'm a member of the office.
Okay, so you can speak after they get through. You've got fifteen minutes.
Thank you. We're happy to save time for rebuttal. I don't think our presentation's going to last fifteen minutes, but the rebuttal time I really want and concerned about mostly is just questions from the commission. First of all, just, my name's Ken Ehrlich of Elkins Cult. On behalf of the applicant Soho House, we appreciate the chair's time and the commission's time over the last few years on this issue, and hopefully tonight, we're here to resolve it. Just to answer quickly the questions, if there was a reference in my letter of April this year to fifty spaces, we're, we use forty, and we're leased forty from the enclave. And I'm happy to, to talk about the details of that, but let me just try to give a big picture first of, of where we're at. First of all, we have the, a brief, a couple slides here. There we go. The setting. Richard Malika, the planner, mentioned that Soho House opened in twenty-twelve. This space was originally built out as a higher-end restaurant, which I believe was called Nikita, which operated for a while, I think even by invitation, and then opened to the public, and then closed. Regardless, Soho House opened in May of twenty-sixteen. The, the space itself is a social club, not open to the public. It includes a sitting room, a terrace, a bar, and a dining room. We say that to stress the, the character of the space. It's not necessarily a club, a nightclub, and certainly the programming is not music and never will be music-driven. Total employees are around a hundred, typically twenty-five to forty per shift. As I say, as I just referenced, it's a social club for arts and media professionals. Part of our original CUP was to include Malibu residents, and we've more than fulfilled it. Right now, more than a to, a third of the total membership are actual Malibu residents. The experience is reflected, reflective of the Malibu community, the values of the community, and consistent, high-service. It's, it's a very, very, I mean, not only has it been a pleasure working with this client, but it's obvious when you go there that they really want to serve the public and be a good, strong member of the community, and provide a safe environment for everyone who comes. The permitting history is, is interesting. The nineteen-nineties, maybe some of us will remember, I remember Peerview, and certainly a lot of noise, a lot of music, and a lot of alcohol was consumed there, and luckily the statute of limitations is likely expired for that space. Two thousand and seven, the CUP that we're talking about now came into play with the no-amplified sound issued to a prior operator, the same site which operated an upscale restaurant. Two thousand and twelve was when the current building, I believe, was designed and built, and then we inherited and have, have had some slight modifications to that entitlement work since then, since our opening in two twenty-sixteen. This is our first significant change to, requested change to the CUP. So I want to give a brief overview of the two major issues, sound and parking, and then Thomas Leonard, the operator himself, will speak, followed by John Zeeman, and again, we, we will go less than fifteen minutes. The existing permitting doesn't match what actually goes on with the space, and now we're working to correct it. We've worked for more than two years to correct it. We believe we've, we've come with significant experience and developed significant experience to come up with a solution, which Mr. Zeeman can address. But those are four or five attributes of the system, as well as empirical, objective controls to it, which we're completely willing to live by and will live by the resolution as proposed to the commission this evening. We propose a, what I call a grammatical or clarification, or clarification to condition seven, that the sole thrust of it, and maybe Trevor can appreciate it, or some of the other staff, is to try to objectify the process. So we know when we're in compliance, we know when we're not in compliance. So we know if we have, for example, someone, a neighbor who might be repetitively calling, we'd like to have, we'd like to understand upfront whether that is going to be considered a unique complaint or a serial complaint, or how it's going to be either characterized or more importantly, considered by the city. So that's, we, I call it a clarification, we're happy to discuss it if it comes up. Condition eight is similar, we're simply trying to objectify going forward exactly what is compliant and what is not. Parking, it, it's an objective fact that this site uses less parking and less parking demand than the site next door. We have a joint parking agreement, we've lived up to it, I'm not aware of any violations of the actual agreement itself. We understand the parking's an issue, we want to be part of the solution. The, and I, staff will attest to the fact that every suggestion staff's come up with here, we've just said yes. Moving the parking stand, great, they wanted a circulation plan, the answer's yes. We don't believe, and have no evidence frankly, to be direct and clear about it, that the videos are our valets. We think that both, the, both operators use the same exit driveway, and we're, we're clear about that. So again, if, if there's an issue, we're here to work with the city and the staff about parking, we agree with the resolution when it comes to parking. Again, the, a clarifying, a condition, a clarifying language about condition thirteen, again, there's talk in the, in the condition itself about the word nuisance, and yet there's no nuisance finding required. It seems to assume that if there is a claim violation, that it is a nuisance, so we try to clear it up. I'll, I'll call it a minor clarification. We appreciate your time, we appreciate the time that the, the city and the commission have spent on this. Let me defer to Thomas and then Mr. Zeeman.
Do you know how much time you want to reserve to the end? Does Kathleen?
Why don't we stay five minutes?
Okay, go.
Thank you very much, good evening. I wanted to just mention about the noise issues that we've had in the past. We have had a few noise issues, there were mainly, I think there was two in twenty-eighteen and one in twenty-nineteen, and really, we've taken responsibility. I think we've worked very closely with the city staff on every one of those occasions about how we address that and how we adapt the business accordingly to make sure we fall within the CUP. But we're not here today to say we haven't had violations, we have, but we are also very keen for it to be noted that we do work with the city very closely when something like this has happened. We take full responsibility for those times when they've happened before, including on one occasion when one of our members actually brought his own saxophone to the club and played it, and, and we had a noise violation citation for that. So again, slightly out of our control, but again, we took responsibility for that. We had a piano for a while in the club, we took the piano away because again, we realized if that was played loud, that would be, be an infraction of our, of our CUP. What we're trying to achieve, and what we've worked very hard, I think, with the city on, is to try and, and set up a set of rules that we can continue to work within that are workable for us. And we're not really trying to change the nature of the business, as, as Kenneth mentioned a second ago, we aren't trying to have a music-driven club, this isn't a nightclub. Music is, is a part of what we actually do, and it isn't, it isn't the driver for our programming. We're not trying to have large music nights or anything like that, we're trying to have it as a complimentary part. So that's really, you know, my, my comment on that. Thank you very much.
I am the sound guy. I prefer acoustician. My name is John Zeeman, I'm an associate principal at Vena Clausen Associates, we're a seventy-year-old firm based in Santa Monica, and this is what we do, we deal with noise. We were founded in Brentwood by our founder back in the forties. We have offices here in California, multiple, Toronto, New Delhi. We are one of the largest, if not the largest, dedicated acoustics firm in the world, meaning we deal with noise, that's all we do. I myself have been in this industry in entertainment noise in some capacity for the last twenty years. So this issue with Soho House is actually, as we understand it, of course, there is a residential neighborhood nearby and commercial vicinity, something that carries and produces noise in some regard, whether it's people or whether it's the audio system when it was functioning. We understand that there is a hillside on the backside, and that is unique in its fact of its topography and how sound will carry that. It's a very common issue, especially around the Santa Monica Mountains. I have a lot of experience of all sorts of areas up and down Sunset Strip, and all around Toluca Lake, especially around Universal City, where one of our biggest clients is an amusement park whose mascot is not Mickey Mouse. And our whole day, our like, whole day in and day out, all day, every year, is about keeping them in compliance with Toluca Lake and keeping their neighbors happy, so we have a lot of experience in doing that. But we want to illustrate the fact that this is a very common issue, especially with the topography of Malibu, and that there are proven results of how to fix this. And this is just the topography in the, in the sense of what we understand where the sensitivities are, we know that there are outliers, of course, but we want to make sure that we show everyone that we, of course, are taking this into account. There is documented papers for what we're proposing to Soho House as what we call a distributed speaker system. Dr. Zheng Kang of the University of Sheffield has very much demonstrated this with tube structures, and by that I mean the London Underground, and also the Hong Kong and Prague and their metro systems, that the idea is if you utilize more speakers of high quality, you can actually leave them at a quieter, lower level, providing better quality.
Excuse me, you're at your five-minute reserve time? So I don't know if you want to go into that, or?
It's, it's okay, you can finish.
Yeah. Thank you, thank you. And the idea is, is that it's demonstrated through science and through academic and published books and papers, that if you utilize more speakers, you can actually keep them lower while providing coverage and quality to the listeners and the audience. Our modeling utilized a minimum of six, sixteen speakers, which sounds a lot, but the idea is that they're all quieter, because you're closer to a speaker. It's the idea that if you ever have a speakerphone, and if you all of a sudden can't really hear it, you shove it closer to your ear. If you get it closer to your ear, you don't have to turn it up as loud. And this just breaks this down graphically, if you have more speakers, you get better coverage, less sound escapes from property line, because you don't have to turn it up as loud, and you get better sound quality as a result, it's kind of win-win-win-win. And this is how we modeled it, so we utilized the existing exterior trellis system, placing a speaker at each major column, so no new construction would have to be built, nothing, it would be all just about screwing in some speakers and wiring them up. The idea for planned equipment would be, you do not need large speakers for this, they don't have to be high wattage, it's not required. The speakers that you have right here above the dais are larger than we would even recommend, you don't need anything that large. You would also have to deploy these speakers with an audio limiter, literally something that locks out changes to everyone, that the only people that can make those changes are any manager that is on duty. The MOD could have an idea of being able to change that if they need to, say if something is complaining for being too loud, they can go, they can drop it down, and so on. And that all sound must go through the limiter, if you do that, no one else has control. And the idea is that you can calibrate this, this is very much what we do in Toluca, that you can calibrate this, you send people out into the neighborhood, you listen to what's going on, and you radio back, like, I can hear it, it's too loud, turn it down. And when you find that nice spot where it's just below and you can't hear anymore, you lock it in, and then it doesn't move. This is a very good system we've utilized in other night, other events spaces, rooftop decks especially, where it's a brand called Formula Sound, this is an audio limiter slash ducker, although this works more on a, a sense of ducking a vault- This is an audio limiter slash ducker, although this works more on a sense of ducking of voltage. If anybody really wants to get nerdy with me, I can do that later. But this ducks voltage and not overall sound pressure level, so it doesn't sacrifice on sound quality. We recommend, we usually recommend something like this for distributed speakers by a high-quality manufacturer, something by like, say, Function One, Turbo Sound, things like that. They can be used in nightclubs, but that's not the point. You can use a smaller version, because they have, they provide better, crisper, quality sound at a lower level. You don't want to go cheap on your speaker. You want a nicer speaker, and you can see there for scale. It's not even much bigger than that gentleman's head. And that's taken directly from their website. I did not draw that image. So in summary, this is a very common sound issue. It is very well documented in papers and books on how to serve this. It is proven to be reparable. We have a lot of success in doing this. We recommend the use of a distributed speaker system to be able to do this, and the use of a limiter that locks out all changes to everyone. You just are installing small speakers, and the ultimate goal is not below to where you can't measure, but inaudibility to the neighborhood, and our modeling shows that is very much possible. Thank you.
So, 30 seconds. I just want to stress the fact that we're dealing tonight only with Soho House. A lot of the video that has been submitted by the community, including a July 4th event, was not Soho House. So we're here just simply to deal with what is on the plate of the commission, the sound, the parking, et cetera, and the actual issues themselves. And we're happy, happy to take questions, happy to also respond to the community if the commission so desires. Thank you.
We have some additional, oh, excuse me. We have some additional speakers. Let me start bringing them up. Let me just see.
And quick one, Kathleen, how much time do they have left? Just they're aware.
Five minutes and six seconds.
Ellen Lieberman, are you here?
Yes.
Are you, you're not speaking on this subject?
No.
Okay, I didn't think so. Just put that on the side. Okay. Richard Gibbs, followed by John Graham. Yeah, you're up front. Jeff, you're up front. Linda, you're up front with Jeff. And then Marissa. So we got a, okay, Richard, you're on.
Mr. Lieberman, which item did you want to speak on?
Oh, so sorry. That's amplified music, by the way.
No, he's, he's going to be on five.
You know, okay.
I actually didn't mean to hit that, but that's an amplifier. So it's an awfully broad term to use when we're talking about acoustic. Craig knows this better than most. And I'm going to double what the acoustician gentleman was saying. He's absolutely right. I've played in front of 600,000 people at the US Festival. That's not what we're talking about here. Some little speakers will go a long ways. But that's not really the main thing I wanted to talk about. What I really wanted to talk about was what the Soho House, what the Little Beach House has done for the community, and I think that's really important here. Yeah, they aren't, they aren't, this is not a nightclub with, you know, blues bands playing all night and booze flowing freely. That's not what it's about. It is a social club. And I'm one of the founding members, I guess you would say, the first members of this place. And I started an organization called The Composer's Breakfast Club. It started at Coogie's about five years ago with three guys, just fellow film composers, television composers getting together and talking about the business. It grew and grew. We kept outgrowing the different restaurants in Malibu. We would, we went through Coogie's, we went through the Malibu Farm, then went to Olo when they opened up. That turned into a problem. We had grown at that point to about 25 people, meeting at every, every Monday morning at 9:00 AM. And it was just a problem, not because we needed more space, but because we needed more acoustic space. There was a lot of other people in the restaurant doing things, and we wanted to be able to talk and have a featured speaker. So that, that didn't work in a large public space. And the general manager at Soho at the time, Andy Vaughn, I said, "Could we try this over here once?" And they, he agreed to do it, because these were mostly members of the community and support the community. They were not mostly members of Soho House. I was, it was me and a couple of other people. We started doing it immediately, we filled the dining room at 9:00 AM on a Monday morning when there were literally no people there. I had given him a, your media guy, a website to pull up to show the type of speakers that we've had come talk there. And it's been a fascinating series. It's been a great service and a boon to the community, to the locals, to all the musicians in the area, engineers, producers, so on. We were doing, we're doing some live music nights as well, but they were pretty mellow by and large. And it, it really, it really has been a great thing for the community. Because of that, a lot of people have joined Soho House, a lot of locals have joined. I think John Zambetti was one that joined because of that, and there are others. And I would love to see this continue and still be able to do it and not have to worry about somebody playing something at that level. That's basically it.
Thank you, Richard. John, you're up, followed by Jeff. You'll be up after John.
Okay, great. Thanks. And my name is John Graham. I live on Ridgemont, 3882 Ridgemont. And my wife is here also, and she's donated me her time as well, but I don't think I'll need our combined time. So we are very much interested in maintaining the peaceful ambience of our neighborhood in Malibu and the kind of community it is, has been for many years and is now. And we do feel threatened by this imposition of music. Soho House is interested in their, you know, satisfying the requirements of their private members. I appreciate that. We had a very nice tour of the Soho House, and I appreciate the facility and what they're trying to do, and I applaud it. And I applaud the previous speaker's comments about what they're doing for the community. I noticed that he was not talking about needing music outside in order to accomplish what, what Soho House is doing for the community in that regard. So I don't think there's any enmity with the Soho House, but there is a real concern about our neighborhood. If you look at the bluff and the diagrams that we saw earlier, we are up on a bluff, and it has a unique characteristic that it blocks the sound from the PCH. So we don't get the traffic sound, which is awesome. We live in a very quiet, almost rural-type environment as a result. The loudest noise at night is an owl cooing, and when it's seeking, it's mate, the mating gets a little louder. And, and the sound of the waves. And that's important, because we're getting the waves from the beach, because it's the line of sight, the line of sound. The Soho House and Nobu are also in that line of sight and line of sound, but the PCH is not. So the traffic is diminished or gone, except for the sirens. And, and so when you're, what the Soho House is actually doing is they're saying, "Well, we'd like to impose our choice of music on top of the waves." And I don't think that's appropriate. We sleep with our windows open. You know, we're of a certain age. We go to bed at a, at a indecent hour compared to maybe what we were doing 20 or so years ago. And that's what we'd like to maintain. So the Soho House basically is saying in their presentation, and I studied it carefully, and I note in the presentation, they don't point out where in the northern neighborhood they placed whatever it was that they were measuring the sound by. But I can assure you, having looked at it, the decibel count at our house in the evening is nowhere near 50 decibels. So this idea that, "Oh, we'll play something that would only reach the neighborhood at 40 decibels," is not going to disturb us at night, is, is just flatly incorrect. I think that sort of goes to the process issue here, too. Soho House, you know, again, I think they've been great. They gave us a nice tour, but, and I think what they're doing is great for the community, as the previous speaker said. But they didn't confer with the community at all about this issue of the decibel count. We never heard anything about this, in fact, until June 22nd, eight days before the first hearing was supposed to be scheduled, when we got a notice in the mail saying that this was something that they were attempting to do. So I don't know where those, those sound collecting devices were placed, but they certainly weren't placed on my property or many of my neighbors' properties, which would have shown that the decibel count was way below 50 decibels at night. Again, it's that owl cooing. So I don't think that they're trying to create an Ibiza down there. I don't think they're trying to create a South Beach Miami sort of feel. But I do think that any sort of noise that obscures the waves, comes up and interrupts our evening, our sleep, our concentration, and by the way, our own music is really not appropriate in a place like Malibu. And it's the kind of Malibu that we live in, you live in, and we think we ought to be preserving that over the interests of a private club. Thanks a lot.
Thank you very much, John. Okay, Jeff, you're up.
Yes, my name is Jeff Moore. I'm the president of Corona del Malibu Homeowners Association. I represent 21 homeowners. Virtually all of those homeowners are vehemently opposed to this CUP amendment. I'd like to point out that many of them aren't here because we weren't notified about the change in date from the first to the 15th. There was no official notification. Originally, we got the yellow slip. That being said aside, what they're representing, what the applicants are representing is not true or accurate. Their application is asking for amplified sound and live entertainment. Live entertainment could be people with trumpets, saxophones, drums, any of the above. How do you control the sound of a trumpet? How do you control the sounds of a big drum set? You can't. The fact that they're talking about little speakers and all that is ridiculous. It does not apply. And Mr. Relicus, Mr. Mullica had said, "Well, if there's any violation, call the sheriff." We have called the sheriff. If sheriff tells us, we will not come out for a code violation. They don't show up. They tell us, "Call the code enforcement when they're open." You call code enforcement and say they're violating, they say, "We can't do anything. We have to personally witness it." So if they're having their, their music after 5:01 on a Friday or all weekend, there's nothing we can do. Who do we call? Are we going to get the personal cell phones of the code enforcement that's going to come out and witness it? No. And as far as they're representing that there's no off-site parking, the gentleman said, "How do we know? Who do you believe? Your lying eyes or what's really happening? Send one person for one hour to McDonald's or across the street and watch where their valets coming out of their parking lot go with the cars. They cut through traffic, they make U-turns, they grossly overburden their parking. They probably have 500 cars a day entering their parking lots. It's sixth-grade math. If you've got 52 designated parking spots and you have over 500 cars coming in over a 10-hour period, those extra cars have to go someplace." In addition, their representation that they're not overburdening their septic system is also ridiculous. They sent two giant pump trucks to pump grease? They're, they're having two 3,500-gallon pump trucks to pump grease? That's ridiculous. Somebody should also monitor how much their system is designed to handle as far as cubic feet of water and how much cubic feet of water effluent is actually going into their system at both restaurants, because we've been complaining about this for years, because we hear the pumps running at 5:30 and 6 o'clock in the morning, and we sometimes smell the effluent. So again, if they're trying to tell you they don't have outside, off-site parking with their valets, and they don't overburden their septic systems weekly, I mean, according to the code section, they're only supposed to be able to pump their septic three times in 18 months. They're doing it every week. That's 52 times a year, times five years. That's almost 500 pumps for the two locations, which is grossly an exaggeration of what the system was designed for and the code section was designed for. Again, do you believe that this is all grease and no effluent and no other material going into that septic system? If you guys have any questions about any of the videos that I provided to you, I'm happy to talk to you about it or send you copies. And if you look at the videos and how their valets snake through traffic and almost, and make U-turns and cut and go, they back into the entrance to Soho House, and they come in going the opposite way when the traffic is lined up down the highway. It's only a matter of time before somebody gets killed. And the city is on notice that they have a huge problem, and if they do nothing, because we've complained and not one thing has ever been done to cure this situation, effectively the city's going to be liable for lack of enforcement of their own rules. They're going into it with their eyes wide open and not doing anything. Again, virtually every homeowner in 21 homes is vehemently opposed to this CUP amendment. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Linda, did you want to speak?
I just want to echo my concern about the noise. When there have been amplified sound, it's been very, very disruptive. I'm very concerned, and my understanding is that till 2:00 in the morning every day? Is that what the, that, I mean, that would be really very much interfering with our life and our sleeping.
Okay, thank you very much. Yes, sir?
I submitted a request to speak as well.
And your name is?
Darius Bagai.
Hang on.
I was the first person to sit, so I'm just in.
Let me just make sure I got you here.
Can I have an extra minute?
Yeah, Mary Ann. Darius Bagai. I do not have, Darius, why don't you come on up, speak, and then fill out a speaker slip, because I do not have one here.
Do we have any other speakers?
I got other speakers, yeah. But you were, you said, you, but you were, been here, you, were here when we got here, so come on up.
Thank you.
Did you, did you say you had a minute from somebody else?
Yes.
If you could fill out a card, too, just to...
Yes.
You filled out, sorry. Yes. Go ahead. We'll make sure, when you're done, just make sure we've got one of these slips filled out with both of your names so that we can get it on the record.
Sure. It's somewhere.
You're on.
I appreciate that. I would like to clarify a few things, and I know that the Soho House folks provided some amendments as well, which were, are nice, but in fact, I believe they need additional clarification. First of all, they mentioned Cantina back in the 90s. Yes, I'm probably aging myself, but I, I've been around and I used to go to Cantina. It did not have outside music, despite the fact that it may have been loud inside. But the outside portion is critical here. Just as in most residents in Malibu, they don't want a high-rise being built in front of their home and obstruct the view. Similarly, those of us who've been living in Malibu all these years and enjoy the scene and the sounds, we really want to make sure that it doesn't change. In other words, we, we continue to hear the waves crashing at night and actually enjoy that. I've been to many Soho Houses around the world, so I'm actually a big fan. I think it's, it's a great organization, and I even know some of the founders. However, every location has its own dynamics, and Malibu has its limitations, both traffic, sound, sewage, and we need to keep those in mind when advancing the size, or frequency, or the number of membership to any restaurant or private club. And I hope that you will take that into consideration. If they have 40 employees, then there's additional members, well, they have to go somewhere. I wish there was better public transportation for Malibu so they wouldn't have to bring their cars, but those are the limitations we all have to live with. Now, as far as the sound goes and the number of speakers, I agree, if you have more speakers, you turn them down. They're small, almost like giving each individual person in the Soho House a set of headphones. Well, clearly, if they all had headphones, we wouldn't hear anything. But the question is, they're not headphones. They're small speakers. The direction of the speakers will affect the propagation of sound. We do live in an interesting area, and if you notice, the map that they had earlier, essentially, the neighborhood that is most affected by the sound is us. All the homes above, in fact, even the, if you look at the sound engineering, the acoustic map, it really doesn't go that far up. I don't believe even our residence is on there exactly, and we hear the waves every night. So I am not sure that they know, or anyone else actually in this room knows, the effect of, that the sound would have. We didn't go through any test period. There's only one way to know. Theoretical analysis on a piece of paper says, "We think possibly no one's going to hear it." My question is, well, what happens when we do hear it? Who do we call? Who's out there with a decibel meter saying, "Oh, you know, they violated it tonight. It's not 50, it's 70 decibels." So some of the logistics are actually unanswered, despite the propositions that they provided that they want certain, if three people call. Well, what if three people call the first night? Now, if I were them, I'd say, "Well, maybe those are bad calls. Maybe somebody doesn't like me. How do I verify that those are legitimate calls?" So some of these additional enforcement issues have not been addressed in the CUP. So I, I hope that the commission will think carefully about those, not because we want the Soho House to go away. the Soho House to go away. We don't. I certainly don't. But I believe that it also has to be taken into consideration that the vast majority of people who move and live in Malibu live there because it's a nice place to own a house and they like to, you know, they don't want to be in downtown LA, and they like to listen to whatever music they want to listen to at night in the confines of their home. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Marissa, you're up next, followed by Tamara Green.
I was sitting in my meeting.
Oh, that's, okay, so you're all set. Got yours. John Zambetti, you're following that, so if you could sort of come up, take a seat so we keep it moving, and then follow...
Can I have Richard's slide, please? I'm sorry.
And then following that will be, well, maybe this is you, Terrius. Okay, Terri, your name was Terri? Found your card. Got you. Okay.
Nice to meet you.
Nice to meet you. I apologize. Keenan, you're up after John. Go ahead.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, thank you. I think the inherent problem with, is not the intent of what this business wants to do, but between the two restaurants, which I'm using Richard's slide here to depict, it's like Siamese twins. They think they're independent, but they're attached and they live within each other's bodies until they're separated. When this, when these were developed, the original project where Nobu is, was Data Motive, Win Sail, Chart House, and on from that. And then we used to have our Kiwanis Club meetings at Peerview, so I'm very familiar with that, and the Arcadi's Pizza and everything. But the original, this has gone on for so many years, over a decade, between the impacts of both CUPs and the interface and ramifications of that. The coastal commission doesn't like it because the staff, yes, they park on the street. Yes, there are deliveries that park in the center island and the vendors take hand carts and move product onsite from the center island and leave their trucks there, blocking sometimes the only paramedic access on PCH. Friday, I came from Santa Monica. I got about an eighth of a mile east of this project and it just stopped. And when I got to the two restaurants, they were all people waiting to get in the two restaurants, the two businesses. And then once I passed over, the old tide pole used to be, it was clear. But the impacts, both of the septic, the backup of the traffic, the staff is still parking onsite, the valet still, they like to take pictures of me. I see them parking in McDonald's, Kentucky Fried Chicken, they parked in these restaurants sometimes, and the valet guys, because I'll stand there with my camera in a public space and photograph it, and I've sent staff pictures and videos. And the people that I represent, both are residents, property owners, and business owners in the area, and this is, I don't know how many times I've testified about one, if you grant an approval for one, then Nobu's going to come back and say, "Well, you gave it to Soho." Now, we want that, and we know that Nobu's already had musical sound, exterior sound violations, and it was cured, then they put it back, and then it was cured. The original parking plan, and you have to tie these together because they share an agreement, the, one of the storage containers on Nobu was removed. There's still another storage container which is utilized as an office. That is six spots lost. On the Soho side, I noticed that they tandem a bunch of parking on the west side and then moved the handicap behind that. Now, under ADA law, the handicap has to be a sole thing. You can't valet someone in a wheelchair, tell them to put up, wait for them to unload, et cetera, et cetera. One thing impacts the other. Both of them impact each other as far as parking, sanitation, traffic impacts, intensity of use, coastal access, and all the other things that you're fully aware of. Thank you.
Thank you. Marissa? Keenan? John, you're up then, Keenan. Excuse me.
Yes, good evening, everybody. I pretty much want to just reinforce what Richard Gibbs was saying, and as a former member of the Malibu Arts Task Force, you know, very aware of how woefully deficient we are in this city in terms of dealing with the arts and specific music. Soho House does provide a community service with the Composer's Breakfast Club, and the Composer's Breakfast Club is open to non-members, as is the, they had, the Composer's Club put on a monthly concert, which was also open to the community, and there was no cover charge or anything applied if people wanted to come and hear music. It just seems like in this day of modern acoustical sound reinforcement, there should be some kind of a way to reach a happy medium here where people are not bothered in their homes and yet live music, again, Soho House is not a musical, it's not the Roxy or the Whiskey Agogo or anything. It's just a place where it seems where some music can be had and there should be some way of reaching a happy medium here. And I just wanted to, again, just reiterate about the community service that the club does provide for the arts community here in Malibu. Thank you.
Thank you, John. Keegan, you're up.
Good evening, guys. How are you? For the record, my name is Keegan Gibbs. I would like to, I'll just speak basically on the sound and the entertainment portion. The, I've been a member or so since the beginning, and I've been aware of the parking issues because I've heard it from you guys, I've heard it from City Council, I've heard all the past history about it, and I've also heard it from their side a ton. And I know that they've actively really tried to amend that and fix that, and they've talked to me and expressed their grievances about how many tens of thousands of dollars they spent on, on parking, off-site parking, and on their lawyers, et cetera. So I know they're actively trying to do this, and it's not just a smokescreen for you guys. So anyways, on to about the entertainment and the music. When Soho was first slated to come into town, I was, I'm one of those people that shouldn't like it, right? I grew up on the western side of Malibu. I surf. I'm kind of grung, like, I'm kind of grungy right now. I've been working on a fire truck to help prevent our community from burning down again. And I really appreciate the rural nature of Malibu. But I'm an artist, and I need a place to be able to show films, to be able to have speaker series. Like, we've had plenty of political, environmental issues that we've come and had events there for, and they've been really, really cool. So when they first opened up, they asked me to be part of their board, I guess, or whatever you would call it. And that intention was to make sure that the local Malibu constituents of Old Malibu or the slow-growth Malibu were heard. And I just want to say that they have done everything they can, and they shouldn't be balled up with Nobu, which I think is a massively different monster, both in the amount of people they bring in from out of town, as well as the violations with parking, the amount of employees that they have, and also the events that they have. In terms of the sound, I hope that we don't speak in absolutes. I hope that it isn't a yes or no type of thing. I hope that maybe there can be some sort of trial period, and I'm sure that Soho would be open to that, where they can work with you guys on figuring out if it's even possible to have music outside. Because I think, especially you guys, you know, you spoke incredibly well, and I respect you guys as community members here, and I really hope that they can both work together on figuring else, figure out how they can make the events happen, because I know myself and a lot of my friends have really enjoyed and think that it's a really positive place for people to go when Malibu doesn't have very much to do in the arts world. So that's all I got to say. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I've got three additional speakers. I've got Elizabeth.
I can mention...
You gave her time to me, but then she reminded me that I didn't make one of the points that she wanted me to make, so... You got to have her make it.
You've already spoken, so...
Yeah, you already, I can't have three minutes to do it.
Well, she gave me her three minutes, and I only used four instead of six.
No, you only get, she can only give you one minute. So if she'd like to make that point, come on up.
Did she, wait, did she donate her minute? Did he use the minute?
No, I'm sorry.
Kathleen?
Well, you gave him, you gave him an extra three minutes.
20 seconds.
Yeah, go ahead. You got one quick point.
One quick, is that two minutes or one?
One minute.
No, and the point I wanted to remind him about was just that the difference between inside and outside, and just to make sure that we're all aware of that. You know, inside is, we're not against inside sound, but we're, the outside sound is the one that really interferes with our lives and is really detrimental if you want to go to sleep.
You did do it. Thank you very much. Okay, John Marchetti, followed by Jay Lux, followed by Lieutenant Sito. Did you want to say anything this evening? Somebody mentioned your name earlier.
I'll call up for questions.
You may wait for after the speakers.
Yeah, we want to ask you questions.
Okay, we'll call you up. Go ahead. You're on.
Thank you very much for having us here this evening. My name is John Marashi, and I want to speak on behalf of Soho, not to regurgitate too much of what has already been said, but really just to illustrate a couple of things that I think is important for everyone to hear. First, for our fine families that have come over here, I appreciate the vantage point that you've brought, and I'd like to say, I'll be the first person to say, and I've been a member of Soho House in Malibu just shortly after it opened, there's nothing worse than a bad neighbor. I've lived on the coast in California for 15 years, and so I get it, you know, if you have a neighbor, whether it's a business or, you know, the family next door and they're doing things that are counter to why you move there in the first place, I think everyone in their hand would agree with it. Why we're here, the Soho community, is to be solution-oriented and to work together as partners in our community. I go there, and you can ask Thomas, almost every Friday morning, because like you, I want to hear the waves crash in. And if it was Animal House there, you know, I wouldn't be able to get my creative spirit and to be able to do what I need to do. So I'm sharing this because I want you to know that I appreciate where you're coming from on that. Likewise, I also feel it's important to take into consideration the proactiveness that Soho House has even, you know, in coming here and presenting solutions with the understanding that there's a degree of flexibility with it, you know, through parking, through noise. You know, as other people have said, with noise, we don't know unless we try. And so, you know, I think that there's an opportunity to see what works and how the needs of the business can be met, how the needs of the artists in the community, you know, can have the ambiance they like to have, and also that the residents of Malibu feel that they're being respected and that their environment is being preserved. Just the last thing that I want to say is that Soho House as a business has probably done more for the Malibu community than a lot of people want to give it to credit to, and for the fires that have ravaged our coastal community. You know, we fed the fire department, you know, we helped people during Thanksgiving time. I mean, these are a lot of things that, you know, the good things go unnoticed and everybody wants to talk about, you know, the not-so-great things, but, you know, we're here as a creative force, but also a force for good in our community. So I do appreciate everyone listening. Thank you.
Thank you very, very much. Jay, you're up.
Jay Lux, how are you? I also would like to say it's interesting to hear everyone's opinion, and it's not meant to just laugh at. I think that the people sitting here that are against the Soho House having music, probably listen to music, probably have similar favorite bands, we could make them up right now and sing together. You know, people love music. It's a really important part of the core of many of our lives. It's led to so many things as we hear in music and as we think and feel as we listen to music. So I just think music's an important part of our lives. Then the question just becomes, how loud is it and what we're talking about tonight? But one thing I would also like to stress as someone that spends time at Soho House, the people there, this is not a rowdy, this is not a rowdy place. This is smart, intelligent people. It's fun. There, I happen to have a condo at the Malibu, which is three buildings away, and I'm on the ocean. I have 20, there's 25 units in there. Everyone in there has become my friend. And when I bought the unit four years ago, you get to know people, and I remember it came up that I was a member, and a few of the people had made comments, "Well, those same people have gone with me, and they're truly asking when we can go back," because all you're doing is just spending time in a great place together. So the people that had never gone loved it, and we go back together and have a great time often. In terms of the traffic, it's a concern for a lot of people, and I hate to say that having traffic go in and out of there helps because there's two sides to it, but it does slow people down. There are a lot of deaths when people cross streets, and there is some aspect of it where the slow up is, you know, is positive. We don't live in, like, we're all Montana. We live in a, in a place here where 15 million cars a year drive, 40,000 a day. So it's, no matter what, Soho House or not, there are a lot of cars here. And Soho House is really trying to be as friendly to the community as possible. It's done wonderful things for a lot of people, and I'm here in support of it and hope that there's a way to work together and test out the music that they're talking about tonight. Let's test it and see what happens, and maybe, maybe they don't hear music after that, but it would be nice to be able to continue it because the Soho House has not been as fun without music.
Jay? Okay, we are, would anybody else like to speak? Because if nobody else does, we'll turn it back over to the, come on up. Fill out a card.
I'll have her speak.
Yep, that'll work.
Got a little inspired sitting back there. Dana Christensen. Hello, everybody. Thank you very much for everything. You know, the noise issue is, I think the gentleman who said, "Everybody, nobody likes a bad neighbor." That's a very important thing to say, and I agree. The noise issue is something to deal with, but I'm kind of more interested and concerned with how to deal with this crowded traffic situation in front of Nobu and Soho House. I mean, that's something to me that I don't understand. I've lived here 30 years, and so I'm just going to ask the planning commission something. What would it take to get three-layer-story parking structure built on one of these commercial lots that we have now? Like, the chili cook-off site up in the back against the mountains by the city hall? Why can't we go one story on the ground, two stories up, park all the, and lease space out to these two restaurants, park all their employees there, and just start to relieve some of the parking issues? How do you get that to the city council and get somebody to start thinking about stuff like that? I could write a letter, I guess. But I would just think that's something this city sorely needs. I don't, hope I'm not going too far off topic with the Soho House issue, but parking is killing them right now. So I just wanted to bring that up and mention it. I mean, pretty soon it would pay back just by having to lease it just to those two guys. You could lease spaces to all the other commercial people that need it. So they'd have to charge another buck for a martini. Pretty soon, it's going to be paid off. I just think there should be a way to get some project like that going in Malibu. I think it's really needed, and I imagine there's a dark side to that and there's a reason not to do it, but I just wanted to ask you guys, how do you take that step and initiate something like that? Thank you very much.
Thank you, Dan. For what it's worth, I had a conversation this afternoon on that very subject. So, okay. Want to get Lieutenant up?
Well, we're going to ask a question. You got to close it here.
You may want to have the lieutenant speak before the rebuttal. Just think of a chance to address it.
You want to come up and Lieutenant speak, and then we can always call you back for more questions.
Hi, Jennifer C. Two with LA Sheriff's Department. So prior to 4th of July, actually prior to summer, got with, together with the city, and they basically said, "Look at PCH and see what you can do to just make traffic flow." And so I'm not going to talk about music, but I just kind of want to talk to you about how I'm going to make traffic flow and what this kind of looks like. So I did get some funding from Sheila Kewell's office, and I implemented a traffic plan. And so what that is, is I broke PCH up into four different quadrants and put some of my amazing traffic trained gurus, is what I call them, in each, in each section, and really started identifying what is the problem? What is slowing down traffic? And so we took piece by piece. Okay, we need to make sure that we get traffic accidents out of the way quickly. But then we started looking at it even more and identifying the businesses on PCH that are bottlenecking. And so, as we mentioned, Soho and Nobu were quickly identified, along with the pier. So I went and met with Nobu, I met with Nobu first and had that discussion, and then I met with Soho, and both of them have come to the table and are willing to talk. And so I told them, I saw someone already brought it up, them doing deliveries. One was on a Saturday, and I mentioned this to the city, a Saturday at 3:00 PM during summer in the middle of the street. Guess what? They got a ticket. My deputies that weekend gave to, over 200 tickets. And so we are, I don't know if you guys have noticed us out there, but especially from Cross Creek down to Nobu, we are hammering people hard and not just giving them tickets, but really trying to make them aware of what, what their actions are doing to traffic. And so I will say that I've come to Soho and given them some direction of what I would like to see. For instance, with their deliveries, I don't want to see deliveries on a Saturday or Sunday after 10 o'clock. I really don't want to see it because it's... I really don't want to see it, because it just bottom knacks traffic, and there's only reds right there, and I will ticket you every single time. And I think the point has been taken, since I've given numerous citations to those folks. So I will say that they are coming to the table, they are implementing some of the traffic suggestions that my gurus have determined would help alleviate some of the traffic. There's still a lot of work to do. I will be having another meeting this week with Soho and see how we can look at that after this weekend that we had. Sunday was very busy for the whole city of Malibu. So do you guys have any questions for me when it comes to the traffic plan?
Just as a clarification, the four quadrants, that's for all of Malibu?
Correct.
So, okay.
Yeah, so I broke PCH into four in the city of Malibu, but really, we spend, I put most of my resources from Cross Creek to Nobu is really where I put a lot of the resources. And so you'll notice, not just deputies, I have motors out there, and then I also have people in blue shirts who are basically our parking enforcement. So if people come in front of Soho and park in the metro bus lane, it's a $263 ticket. And we've had a few of those, and I think they've quickly learned their lesson that don't do it. So those are some of the things we're doing. And then, right now, I'm currently creating the proposal based on all the information that we're getting and giving it back to working with the city. I know it's not just the city, it's Caltrans and Coastal Commission that has to make some of these decisions, but some of the ideas where I've been working with some of the business owners of, they came up with these ideas, not me, of is there a way we can get, instead of red curbs, a yellow curb where it can be ride share drop off, or we can really encourage people to to ride share to Nobu and Soho? We discussed the employee parking lots, you know, of, hey, could the, the business owners told me that they would help fund the shuttles of employees going around. So to really get the traffic off of PCH, open up PCH and allow the, the visitors to actually park on PCH, and the employees park on off-site and then be shuttled around. So these are just some of the ideas that I'm working with the business owners to kind of come up with. And then, once I finish my proposal, I'll bring it back, I'll bring it to the city, and they can kind of go over it and take it to Caltrans and Coastal Commission if they deem appropriate.
Thank you. John, go ahead.
This program you described, it's a short-term funding thing? It's not permanent?
It is not permanent. I did receive a lot of funding for this, not from the city, but from Sheila Kewell's office. We're also using part of it for like helicopters and beach team, but yes, I did receive some funding for this traffic enforcement during the summer, summer traffic enforcement.
Now, are you going to move this task force from quadrant to quadrant, or are you going to leave it around Nobu?
So, again, it's the entire PCH. So we're addressing problems, like I'm meeting next week, the 22nd, I'm meeting Franco from Sunset and Moon Shadows. So I'm not just focused on, on this quadrant, I'm focused on all the quadrants, but since today, we're here talking about Soho, I just want to let you know, we, we are kind of working together, we are having some plans to address the traffic issues. And yes, there's been some, and now we're creating a plan to address those. And so if they're willing to come to the table, continue to come to the table, then I think we can actually see an impact on PCH.
Okay, now, so when you, when your funds go away, you won't be writing 200 tickets in that area? You'll have a lot less.
Not unless it generates so much money to the city that the city would then want to pay for it, so.
Well, the city gets, as I understand, the city gets $19 a ticket. And the rest goes to the state.
And I'm not sure how that works. I'm not the money person. We have no quotas, just for the record, no quotas.
One more candidate.
No, I got a couple. These are all mostly transient drivers. They're not Malibu locals on weekends, I assume, because at least the people I know would, would think of driving down there on the weekend. Does anybody, if you don't have a repeat driver the next weekend, how do they learn?
So from what I understand, people have posted stuff on Uber, and it, because a lot of our violators have been Uber drivers, parking in the red and waiting for their customer to try to find them. So waiting five minutes in the red is not okay when you're blocking lanes, or when you're blocking a bus. And so from my understanding is that has generated around the Uber community about, make sure that you do not park in the, the bus parking, make sure you find a safe place to park, because the deputies are out there giving tickets.
Now, we haven't gone through this whole thing, but it appears that one of the biggest problems is more people than parking spaces. And so if we enforce, you close the lot when you're full, do you foresee more chaos in the neighborhood? Without valets being able to leave the, leave the site?
So I am aware of valets parking off-site. I am aware of this. And so something I implemented with, with Nobu is, I mean, that's not between me and Nobu, that's between Nobu and the city and you guys. And so what I told Nobu is, this is what I got to focus on, is public safety and get my traffic moving on PCH. And so what, what was happening is those valets would cross the street, but park the car, right? Hit my pedestrian button and walk across. Now, every time my pedestrian buttons hit, it stops traffic. So I said, no more, no more hitting my pedestrian button. What I want is those valets to go across the street, if they're going to park across the street, deal with the city on that. Go park across the street, and you wait there until you get a car called up, and then you come out. I don't want any more valets crossing the streets and pushing my pedestrian buttons. So these are the, some of the things that we are looking at and trying to address, and Nobu actually implemented that plan.
Now, one of the neighbors talked about, the sheriffs would not enforce city codes. So if we have a city code that says you can't park across the street, or can't valet across highway, or you can't push the button, you're not going to enforce that, correct?
We, we enforce city ordinances.
So if, if we bought you a decibel meter, you would actually go up to that, when you got a complaint, you'd actually go up there and hold out, pull out your decibel meter?
We would prioritize our calls and handle them appropriately.
Okay.
So if we have burglary going on, I promise you, I'm not going to get a decimal and go and check out, check that out. So, again, it's prioritizing.
Now, if you were driving down the highway, and a valet came out of the parking lot, hung at you, and headed up to go to an office building, would you pull them over?
Say that one more time?
If the city code said you can't park off-site?
Okay.
You're driving down Coast Highway, and out comes a valet driving a car who heads, hangs at you and goes down to a office building and parks it, would you pull them over?
It, it really depends. Me, no, because I were, I don't drive a patrol car. But with one of my deputies, depending on the day, yes. So again, we do cite for city ordinances, that is something that we do. So I'm not going to tell you every single time we would do something like that. It, you know, it's an infraction to be at the deputy's discretion.
Okay, now, if we left the entrance where it was originally supposed to be, if we left it the way it was originally supposed to be, rather than two restaurants entering the center, do you foresee a problem with that?
So I would like to get back to you on that in August. I am actually meeting with one of the engineers who actually did this traffic study for that parking lot. I'm meeting with him and then one of our traffic gurus to really understand why it was done the way it was done, and then if any of my traffic gurus have any, any additional information. So we're actually meeting with them early August, I want to say August 8th, off the top of my head. I could be wrong, but that's what.
Okay.
Thank you.
I would suggest that we all ask her questions now, so she can leave.
Yeah, so I did have a couple, and thanks very much for coming to share your experience and everything as well. I know at some other areas, like, say, at the entrance to Paradise Cove, et cetera, they'll sometimes put up a lot full sign, and it seems to me it leads to more trouble than good, because people just argue, well, I'm just going to be there quick, that type of thing. What's your experience in practice? If they did try to use a lot full sign, should that be combined with police presence when something is that heavy? You know, what would you advise there if that's considered?
Correct. So actually, before, before 4th of July, I went and met with Paradise Cove as well, and wanted to understand what they were going to do. And they did hire a CHP officer to stand by and do that. So when, when I met with Nobu, and I told them, I said, hey, Paradise Cove is hiring a CHP, and this is what they're going to do. I said, I'll see what resources I have, but basically Paradise Cove contracts with CHP, and so Nobu was interested in contracting with CHP as well, but CHP was tapped out that day, they didn't have any additional services. So I did provide the blue shirt, shirters, the parking enforcement for the L.A. County Sheriff's Department, they were there that day, and they actually helped, and it was, it was huge, just moving cars and being able to have a police presence. And then we also parked, don't tell anybody, but a decoy car, right in front of Nobu, Soho and Nobu, at their request. That way, it really did look official, just trying to get people moving and not stopping in hopes that the decoy car would persuade people, but please don't tell my secret.
Okay. And then the last one for me, sorry, is, again, from your experience with, you know, you've kind of got this, these funds to help with that focus study, or the focused kind of enforcement scenarios, kind of what's the, what's the decay rate? Like, you get 200 tickets in a given day, people learn, they start to change habits, the next day, I assume it trickles off, falls off, and then it kind of ramps back up. Like, is there a kind of a cycle you've learned that's best to kind of revisit troubled areas? Or any just thoughts on that in general?
Yeah, so that's, it's really too early to understand that right now, but I think this summer, as we're gathering stats, and we're really trying to identify what those problems are, we need to wait until we get some data on that and really understand, who are we giving the tickets to? I know a lot of it is the ride share. That's why I'm really focused on, I would love to see ride share, yellow curbs, where they could do it in a safe place that's legal. Look at the pier, right? Where do, where do the ride shares go? There's really nowhere, there's a fire hydrant, there's a bus stop. I mean, where do they go? How do we encourage shared driving when we don't have these shared drop-off sites?
Great, thank you.
Anybody else? Lieutenant, thank you very, very much.
Thank you so much.
This is very informative. Thank you. Okay, now, now, let's.
How many, how many of the valets were cited during, of those 240 tickets?
I would not know. I was not there citing that day. Oh, actually, I never.
Would they have cited valets?
If they broke the law, absolutely. We did cite delivery trucks. So, absolutely.
Thank you, Lieutenant. Okay, Ken, you back up? You got five minutes?
That was closed.
No, he's got rebuttal.
A couple of brief points. Thank you, Mr. Chair. We appreciate the community's comments, first of all, and we listen. A couple of points directly in connection with the comments. We're happy to share our septic records, that are public documents anyway, that we share with the city, and we sense that, that you will see that the, the septic records for our site do not substantiate the, the number of septic calls and trucks that are, that are purported to come to our site. It's a far less frequency than one or two trucks a week, I heard, but we're talking, according to what my client tells me, we're talking about a truck maybe every two to three weeks coming in connection with Soho House. Second of all, and I think more important to what's at hand tonight, in connection with listening to the constituency, one thing that struck us as, that resonated, is the fact that you can't control, for example, a drum set with, with the amplified sound. A drum set is a drum set, a trumpet is a trumpet. So, and, and the other point that resonated especially with us is wanting to hear the waves above the sound. So wanting to not change what's, would be there, let's say, without Soho House there. So if, if there are questions of our engineer, I asked the engineer, is there a way, if there is sound only coming from our speaker system, that the community up the hill can continue to hear the waves and we're playing music? He said, absolutely. So in that spirit, number one, and we agree with the proposed resolution, because we think we're going to be able to control sound that way. Second of all, and at the risk of bargaining against ourselves, we're willing to, if, if, if the commission is so interested, striking condition five, which relates to live music and directing it in a way away from the community, we're willing to, to have a prohibition on live music to give us greater control over the sound from our space. So it's all coming through the speaker system that we can control. I'm happy to have more dialogue with the commission, but we thought that's an appropriate response to what the community's saying.
Ken, thank you very, very much. Okay, with that, I will close public comment, bring it back up to the table. Who wants to start?
Can I first just say, do we want to do this in an organized way, and everybody address, say, sound, audio first, and then deal with that, and then talk about parking? Or do you want to structure it in some way where we're not talking about all things at once?
Maybe get one of the easy ones out of the way first, and that's the parking plan for the driveway. Anybody got any comments on that?
So just to adopt the routing through the center?
The routing.
Right, and the queuing, maybe, Richard, if you could bring up that slide, just so we can kind of.
I don't have any comments on that.
Okay. I thought it'd be an easy one, but maybe not.
Yeah, the, obviously, the, the main focus of our, of our attention ought to be, at least it seems to me, is to keep cars from queuing on PCH, okay? So anything that we can do to open up more space, to allow queuing inside the lot, is something we ought to try to work toward. The problem is that, when we write these conditions into the CUPs, it, it becomes difficult to change. And what we really need to do is, is to say, all right, let's try, you know, if, if the traffic engineers say this looks like a good approach, let's try that for a while and see if it works. And if it doesn't work, let's try something else. We've got to maintain a certain amount of flexibility, it seems to me, rather than writing the rules in and then have Soho House come back and say, well, we're in compliance with the rules, and we, we, we need more flexibility to be able to try different approaches. That's, that's point one. Point two is that the thing that, that infects this whole debate to me is the fact that it's, it, it's like two different movies going on. On the one hand, you've got Soho House, who describes their function sort of like the Reform Club in London, you know, a bunch of old guys sitting around, smoking cigars in leather chairs, very quiet, very mellow, nothing going on, and the neighbors are talking about an entirely different movie. The, the traffic is a sort of the same situation. We can talk all we want to about, about opening up places for, for the, for cars to queue, leading to the, to the, to the valet stand, but if the valets are taking cars and parking them off-site, we really haven't solved anything. And, and, and so the thing, the reason I say it infects everything is that, is that we, we try to work towards various solutions, but a lot of the problems are enforcement issues, and, and we don't have much control over how things are enforced. And so the temptation is to say, just say no. You know, we aren't going to do this, we aren't going to do that, we're just going to say no, because we're having such trouble trying to enforce the conditions that we do impose. As far as, as far, I, I don't know how that plays out in the, in the context of the, of the traffic, but, but I have to just go back to what I was saying at the beginning, is, if, if the city's traffic engineer thinks that this is going to be an improvement and is going to free up space for queuing and eliminating queuing in front of PCH, then I'm in favor of us trying it. I'm not so much in favor of us writing it into a CUP and then giving this, you know, problem, so if, if it turns out it doesn't work. So those are my comments on, on traffic.
Jeff, and I agree, I, where I was going to go with this, is if we're, we're going to go with this parking plan, I think we should get the city engineer out there with a study that says, you know, during the week and on weekend, somebody should be in front of that place checking out and seeing what's happening and report back to us, so we know if it is or it isn't working. Because what we basically do is put a plan out, and then with no follow-up, you never know what the hell's going on.
Yeah, just, just, and, and just kind of playing through what we're all talking about, if we, we look at what's drawn up there, I'm just trying to visualize what, what would be happening day in and day out. So cars would queue up, and if I just count the cars that can queue, it's like maybe a third or more of the total parking space, even if you have professional valets moving cars every 10 minutes or something. I mean, it's, it's almost designed to queue up to allow parking across the street, I mean, in terms of how this, this kind of queue lines up, that there's just another kind of observation. I mean, in terms of how this kind of queue lines up, that's just another kind of observation to start on this.
Well, I want to make the point, and by the way, I want to tell the audience that I'm on both sides of this. I do pointed questions, but I have an Airbnb behind me that does bar mitzvahs every 10 minutes, and the police will never come, so I understand that. I also was on the arts task force, and I know the need for arts in Malibu. So I want to be a little direct. Richard, when was the last time we sent an enforcement letter, the first time we sent an enforcement letter to this, to the Soho?
The most recent letter, I would say, was we sent them a letter and, as a result, on Memorial Day weekend. The first letter...
No, I meant the other way around. The first time you sent it.
And the first one, I want to say, was, I wasn't the planner at the time, but from the records, it was about two years ago. I'm sorry.
Oh, I thought it was more like seven, but...
It may be earlier than that. I don't have that date.
Jeff makes a point that we don't have any enforcement. And if you don't have any enforcement and nobody follows it, now granted, they're trying, we have to have another way to enforce. And as far as I'm concerned, that's us. Because we cannot, as far as I'm concerned, we cannot take testimony, as we have in the past, from our traffic engineer that says, oh gee, a new shopping center doesn't mean anything, or et cetera.
I do want to say, Commissioner Mazza, that we do have enforcement. We've got three code enforcement officers now, and we have closer coordination with the sheriff's department on these things. And so I think there is, there can be better enforcement than there has been in the past.
There can be. We just don't have that proven yet. Now, what Chris was talking about is this plan. This plan is what we have now, correct?
Yes, because what they have now doesn't match what was approved.
Right, so we've tried this one for eight, nine, 10 years. We know what happens. Yeah, that's our plan now. That's what they're doing. That's not our plan. So if we approve doing this, it's what we've had for seven or eight years, and we know what's happened. Now, I want to ask you some questions about that. Right here is a stoplight, and there's queuing. Ah, this damn thing.
Wait 15 seconds, just to clarify a fact.
Sure.
So what happens now is that the valet stand is essentially at the center of the green. When cars come in, where that green line makes a 90-degree turn, that's where the valet stand is. So cars going to Nobu go one side, cars going to Soho House go another.
You're saying it's right here?
Yes, sir.
Well, last time I went to Soho, I parked my car right there and gave the guy the six bucks, okay?
But what's proposed, what's proposed here, and my understanding, our understanding of it, is that the valet stand for both sites will now be essentially in front of Soho House to give the extra queuing, as well as having a directed circulation plan that's now part of the CUP.
So let me ask you a question.
Sure.
You come off the highway, there's people going to Nobu and people going to Soho. They got to figure out which lane to be in, okay? How are they going to know that?
I assume you can have directing signs, but the set, under the proposal, the valet stand is only in one space. So there's not going to be anywhere for them to stop. Yes, sir.
Okay, well, Nobu isn't in front of us, so I, now...
But Richard, please interject if I have it wrong. I just want to be completely factual here.
My understanding from the reviews was that this was for Soho only, and then an alternative plan was presented, which would eliminate, and we discussed this in the staff report, where we'd essentially go down to one lane for Soho so that Nobu, if they needed to, could follow the valet plan as previously approved.
So they need to figure out, well, that would mean Nobu comes in here, and they're going the wrong direction if it was previously approved, correct? This is the entrance for both restaurants.
And it's...
In this present CUP.
Right, and my understanding is if Nobu right now has also got an amendment in before us, and we're going to hopefully bring that to you shortly. And so Nobu is trying to essentially use the center driveway and then go towards Santa Monica. But this is a design for Soho, provided that Nobu remains in their current configuration. Should, and this is what we discussed in the staff report, should we have problems with Nobu and we require Nobu to go back to what was previously approved, then we would have both restaurants utilizing the westernmost driveway as the commission approved in 2007.
So my question is, we have approximately, somebody said 500 cars, whatever it is, and you add probably twice that much for Nobu. They both come in here and they queue 40, 30 feet. That's two cars. Then you totally hit a valet stand, and they got to get out of the car and hand the guy the money, and he drives the car away. And only two cars can back up behind him before they're out on the highway. Now, is there, is there a way that's going to work? Do, or do people queue in the highway for 50 cars?
We're trying to eliminate, what you have here is getting the valet stand as far to the end of this as you can because what we're trying to achieve is there are references in the agenda report, when you, the old agenda report, 2007, when these buildings were being built, that talks about a queuing of 10 vehicles on site. And now that's in the Nobu staff report. I don't know if it's in the Soho staff report. And what the engineers were trying to achieve here, our engineers working with them, was a method to try to get as many cars out of the highway as possible and try to get as close to that previous approval and determinations made by the commission.
Okay, so that's my question. Right now, they come in here, they're supposed to come in here. If you had your stand here, you'd have 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8, 9, 10, 11, 12, 13, 14, up to 16 cars queued, okay, for both restaurants, if they came in here and the valet stand was here. If they come in here and the valet stands were there, they have four spots. So you come off the highway, you've got two cars in front of you. That's it, and then you're on the highway.
Nobody's talking about doing it that way.
Well, that's what this is. That's what they're doing now.
Right. Richard, is both lines, you have 18 cars there, are those all, is that queuing all for Soho?
Yes, that's my understanding. And then the idea is what we're working with Nobu is trying to get Nobu to move their valet stand, which would, I guess, you call it the red, we'll just call it the red box there, the end of the line. We're trying to get Nobu, if they want to use the center driveway, to move their valet stand further to the east so that we don't have the situation that Commissioner Mazza's pointing out, which is the valet stands being very close to the entrance, like it is currently.
So the idea would be that they would mirror and have about 18 cars queued for Nobu on the other side, is that...
And that's the goal.
Now, I'm totally confused. Where's the, where is Soho, is Soho House's valet stand there?
From my site visit, I would say that the Soho House stand is probably about three to four car lengths in, about...
Right here?
In that area, yes. And Nobu's valet stand...
The valet stands here?
Yes, and Nobu is very close to where you'd make the right-hand turn.
Okay, so that, what right-hand turn? Oh, up here?
Yeah.
Okay, so you come in off the highway, you have 1, 2, 3, 4, 5 cars coming in for Soho only, okay? That's the queue. And then, if this thing worked, then theoretically Nobu goes that direction, towards Nobu. And I don't know where their stand is going to be, but... Where were these things at works? There we go. The people get out of their car here, and they walk over to here to get into the building. Well, that's where the entrance is. This is the bar. That's the entrance, okay? They get out here and walk over here, and they, well, that's the only way you can get in. Now, so we have one restaurant coming in, and it's got five cars. We have, and if the people that are coming in know which lane to get in, or maybe they have to cross over because they're really going to Nobu. So you have this cross right here, where this guy figures out, I'm going this way, this guy figures I'm going that way. Then, so they're backed up to here. Anything past here is on the highway. So to queue into here from coming from Santa Monica, this is a left turn lane, goes right to there. So that gives you two cars, two cars on the highway, and then you're backed into the left turn lane. Well, I don't think you can have two cars on the highway. That's our problem. I've seen people come right across here and stop, dead stop in the middle of the highway, many times.
I can suggest an improvement here.
Well, I'm just trying to figure out what you're saying. You're saying, is that what you're saying? They're going to do that?
Let Richard walk you through it again.
Okay. Where do they come in and where do they go out?
So both restaurants have indicated to staff that they don't want to share a valet. Probably a more eloquent way to say that, but it's our belief that what was originally approved was one valet for both sites. They would both share the same entrance and share the same exit, and that center driveway wouldn't be used. But what they are proposing to do, because they have been using the center driveway since the restaurants have been in operation, is one, we don't want any queuing of vehicles on Pacific Coast Highway. That's one of the conditions that we have, is that they're not allowed to have the spillback or anything like that go onto the highway. Now, sure, there'll probably be some instances where that happens, but the design is such that we're hoping that there's enough of a buffer in there that you won't have that problem.
Now, can you show me what the buffer is?
The buffer is moving the valet stand all the way as far east as possible, or excuse me, west for Soho. Because the idea is that with those 16, 18 cars there, that's enough of a buffer for the valet to keep up with the demand so that they don't have a line back up onto the highway.
Richard, they would unload in the red zone. Is that correct, where the valet stand is?
Yes, so the valet stand would get shifted further to the west, into that area you see that's red, so that they allow more cars onto the site, and that ideally will take cars off of the highway.
Okay, can I ask you a question about that? You get here, you get out of your car, this, this is double parked. You're only showing one park, but it's double parked, okay? And all the diagrams, and it's counted. Those are counted as double parked parking spots. So you get out here, you got a queue behind you, a valet picks you up your car. Where's he going to go? He's going to go out, right?
Ideally, the valet won't be going out. They'll be maneuvering the cars on site. That's the reason...
Yeah, but what I'm asking you is, he's sitting right here. He just got your keys, okay? If this isn't double parked, which it always is on a busy day, he's got these spots, and that's it. Or he goes back out on the highway. He can't, he can't back up because there's cars there. So where does he go? He has to go out. So I don't see where you get the ability to maneuver cars. Whereas if you had the valet stand here and you came in this direction, you can take the valet car and put it anywhere you want. But here, you've got this spot, and that's it.
If you change the valet around and 180 this, now the problem begins, it becomes getting the car to the valet stand for the person to get into the valet. So regardless of how you flop this around, at some point in time, the car's facing the wrong direction. They have indicated to us, along with our engineers, that by moving cars around and stacking, they'll be able to accommodate it.
So are you going to allow double parking here?
They are allowed to double park in there. Those spaces are tandem spaces, and they've indicated to us that they do try to park cars based on what they expect or the time needs of the person. So the cars that are there for a longer period of time do get shoved to the back of the line, so they have the more frequently moving cars up front. They're easier to get to.
But you will admit that if they are parked to their standard, their parking diagram, there's no way to back a car up here because there's a car already there. Is that correct?
Depends on how they stack the cars.
No, you can't stack, there's two stacked. You can't stack three because you fill this aisle.
The aisle width is not exactly the width of two cars. There is a greater width there because there also is probably about a 50-foot aisle width because of backup distances that were required when that was built.
These cars are eight feet wide, and you're telling me that the distance from that green line to the building is 50 feet? It's 16.
There's parking, without, we don't have the specifics on this diagram, but my understanding from our engineers is that they have a plan that will make this work.
Well, yeah, now, well, let me ask you something else. Well, we got told that 2007. Now, if you're coming out this way, I assume you say they're going to come out this way? Or they're going to come in this way? They cannot queue here. It's a left turn lane, okay? So when you have two restaurants and you have this distance, what do you do with the cars that are queuing there? There's only two allowed.
The resolution before you has a prohibition on queuing on Pacific Coast Highway. And once again, if you don't believe that this is a good plan, the commission could require them to return to what was previously approved.
Okay, well, all I'm trying to do is understand it, and it seems to me it's the same plan we have now, and it doesn't work. So why don't we try something else? I mean, if we're going to try things, you've done this for 10 years, it doesn't work. I've actually driven down this road and have somebody turn from that lane, the right lane, in front of me to get into the center divider. Because oops, there's Nobu, you know? And if you, if you go more than two car lengths, you've passed it. So that's why they queue in the middle of the road. But I just want to make sense out of this. Once you get here, I don't see any possible way you can move the car anywhere but forward, if the lot's full or close to full. Is there a possible way you can do that? With double parking?
I'm sorry, missed the last part?
If they have their 74 spaces or whatever it is, that includes this whole row right here of parking, okay? And I just want to understand how you could physically move a car in this lot if you had a double queue like this and cars parked here. Where could you go other than out of the lot? So if we have a prohibition of valets taking cars out of the lot, you've got a dead end.
Well, the other condition that Richard mentioned was putting up a lot-full sign. When the lot gets full, then nobody else can enter, and people have to find their own parking. So that's one alternative. If the commission is not satisfied that this is a workable plan, then we can try to find some other options. But as it stands, as it stands today, this restaurant was approved with this parking requirement. Whatever the valet operation is, it was approved with a certain number of parking spaces on site, so that's what we have to work with.
I know, but it was approved with a different parking plan. And now, how would you handle the lot closure between the two restaurants? Could one be open and one be closed?
Under this parking scheme, one lot could be closed. So if you had the lot closed, ideally because it's full, then you shouldn't be parking cars in your queue if your lot's reached its capacity.
So we could have the situation where Nobu said, ah, we're not going to put the sign out, and Soho said, we'll put the sign out. And then the people on the highway are supposed to figure out whether it's open or closed?
They're going to, I understand what you're getting at with the logistics. Unfortunately, both restaurants wish to pursue their parking needs separately. They don't want to have one lot that feeds two restaurants.
Okay, okay, I'll just put it this way. I agree with Jeff that we should be trying things. I do not agree that we should let the city do it. I think it has to come back to us because it's been too long. The city had five, six years to fix this.
What do you want to have come back to us? What are you trying to do?
Well, if we do this, if, I want to have, try a different parking plan, see how it works. And then have them come back, and if that doesn't work, try a different one. I agree with Jeff.
Can I, can I interject and maybe clarify on what you were asking there a minute ago? And then I have maybe a possibly better idea we can try to break. Just, so you're concerned with, if the valet stand is already at the western end of that, where do they go? The sort of first trivial question might be, or response might be, it's not that big a deal if they have to go out onto the street to get back in because they're not crossing anywhere, they're not, they'd just be looping back in. But then your concern becomes valid when they try to come back in, where do they go? So that doesn't work, so that's just to clarify that idea. Now, if they could get past the idea of not sharing a valet, I'm looking back to the, what came up when we were looking at Malibu Beach and understanding that if you have a parking area that only valets are addressing, they can park the spaces tighter than if public is allowed to participate. What if we made a loop on the site where you entered on the far eastern side... What if you, we made a loop on the site where you entered on the far eastern side and exited in the middle? And put the valet stand in the middle, so when you came in from the eastern side, you'd have the whole queue reaching from the east to the middle. And then leaving the western side entirely not part of that loop, so it's an area that's accessible only to valets and potentially parking more cars in it than having a whole pathway running down the middle of it that the public is working with too.
Can I comment on that?
How many, how many extra cars could you park on the whole lot if you only made the valet loop on one side of it with the valet stand in the middle? Good.
Well, I just wanna comment that I don't think you can do that because the light is here.
I wondered about that. Is that, is that, is that, or isn't that a problematic logistical thing up there?
I think it is because what do you, I, I don't know, I'm not a traffic engineer.
Let me sugge-, let me suggest something, guys. None of us are traffic engineers, all right?
Yeah.
And I, I think, you know, I, I think the argument that says maybe there should be a combined parking plan between the two restaurants. But, look, we, we, we've got a traffic engineer that works through the city. Is that correct, Richard?
Yes, that is correct.
So let's, look, let's, he, he suggested this. Let's put this out, make him get out there on Saturdays and whatever day, and give us two weeks, come back and tell us what the hell's going on. If it isn't working, make him do a new one.
I got a question. Did he suggest it?
Richard?
This plan was, this was one of a couple of plans suggested by our city's traffic engineer as a way to try to get cars off the highway. He also did, uh, one of the suggestions he also came up with was one valet stand, go back to that. Don't utilize the center driveway and turn that into additional parking. So that they could get, it's not that many more spaces, but maybe six or eight more spaces on, on the property.
But that's a safety path, right?
Well, that's the problem. It's, we're concerned that because of fire entrance, it may not work if fire has only the, the same access as the valet.
So I, so yeah, but let me ask you this. The only suggestion he had was to change where the valet stand goes, from what's happening now.
As I mentioned, this was one of a couple of suggestions, and like I said, if this is kind of the result of both sites wanting to maintain independent valet operations.
It, it seems like to me, if we don't wanna try to boil the ocean and figure this one out, I think we should have a condition, there's gotta be single stand. I mean, it doesn't seem like we can have two loops. I mean, what if one's totally dead and the other one's loaded up? We, well, you can't use that spot, that's mine.
Could we, could we do that? I mean, we don't have Nobu in front of us, right? I mean, it's, do we have the ability to do that? Or do we hold Nobu's feet to the fire when they come back with, with their CUP?
You have a couple of options based on what you wanna do here. You can approve a, a plan here that would be designed for both to operate together. But you'd also have a backup plan that would work in conjunction with how the current CUP for Nobu works, and that would be required until Nobu, Nobu has an application in before their plan is brought in to match that. So you would need to have two alternat-, two alternatives. One is your preferred, and one that would be compatible with Nobu's current CUP.
What happens if they don't do either?
If what? Yeah, I, I, I would call out that being that we aren't traffic engineers, I think the only thing we could agree to is that, I personally, I think, I'd, I'd require that they have to have a joint stand. Otherwise, we lose at least six or eight spots, just logically.
A joint stand, I mean, it seems to make sense. I, I don't, I'm not arguing that.
Yeah, yeah.
Well, uh, I, I don't know what Trevor's basically saying, but they could have different valet companies. They could have all kinds of reasons not to have a joint stand, and we aren't hearing them.
They actually have the same valet company.
Yeah, they got a joint-use parking agreement there too.
Only for the use of ten spaces.
City, though, that's, we don't have the city-
Yeah.
As a party of that.
Yeah, the, there, there are some issues with the, the Jupa and whether it was, um, completely executed the way it was supposed to be. There's, if, uh, if the commission is interested in a, in a single valet, there can be additional analysis or testing of how a single valet would work, and that can be brought back to the commission.
How do we?
Let me, just one, one concept here in, in natural resource management is, is the idea of adaptive management. When you're writing it into the code, that you have some flexibility about how you handle it, and you come back and you look at it. And so maybe that concept applies here to say, we get the city engineer to study it and provide some further recommendations.
I think, look, that's, otherwise, we're gonna be here all night long trying to design parking plans.
Well, one thing I wanna insist on is that number seven and eight, that gives Bonnie the authority to, to okay all this stuff, is, is deleted.
Let me ask Trevor, um, about the procedure that we might go through. If it sounds like what we're, what we're talking about is, is putting, perhaps, this proposed plan in, out to a test for a month or six weeks or part of summer, or some, some period of time. Then it seems to me that, that what we're probably looking at is continuing that aspect of the amendment to the C, what are we talking about? CUP? The amendment to the CUP for a period of time, having it brought back, rather than amending the CUP and then trying to change it later.
You're absolutely right, 'cause you can't have a temporary CUP in place.
Oh, okay, so, so then, um, uh, when is the Nobu, um, matter gonna be coming back in front of us, just in terms of timing here?
Currently, it's, we're not done with the public works review, and so, sorry, don't have a date 'cause I don't have a complete application.
Okay, so, um, let's say, I, I might as well put this, well, we haven't got a motion, maybe just a straw vote. The, the idea would be that we would, um, we would, um, request, I guess we'd have to request that Soho House put the proposed plan into effect. We ask that the, uh, city traffic engineer, uh, review it and get back to us, um, in, say, I think six weeks is probably a reasonable amount of time. That's up to debate.
Maybe that's even long. I think we should be able to know.
I don't know how long it's gonna take.
Yeah, we think you can get a, a response back within a month at the most.
Okay, a month. I'll go with that if the traffic, if, if, that's fine. But, but come back with it in a month, and that will give us enough time to at least talk about if it's working, how to adjust it with, with, uh, uh, Nobu, and if it's not working-
Right.
Going to a, perhaps a one stand.
The only thing I would suggest, and I agree with what you said, is that if, in a shorter period of the month, the traffic engineer, and he's gotta have, we're gonna have to figure out how to get him out there on weekends or whatever, look at this stuff. So someone's gotta make that decision. But if he looks at it within two weeks and says, "This thing isn't working," all right? I want him to come back quickly so we can either get to phase two and get Nobu into this thing, 'cause you don't want this thing to go on for like the summer before we know what the hell's happening.
Yeah, I get it, but the, the, the problem is that, that if, you know, if, if the traffic engineer comes back today after tomorrow and says, "Hey, this isn't gonna work," we then have to notice the hearing, we have to give everybody notice and bring them back in and all that. So you can't, you can't just say, "Hey, everybody come down here tomorrow." There, there are some time constraints that are involved. So I, I think a month is reasonable. If, if he comes in quicker, we can just go through the process, but it's not gonna be overnight.
Right.
So you're saying you can put out a notice for a month from now?
What, no, I, I think that, that you're asking for it to be brought back, to be continued to a, a date thirty days out, and that this plan that's proposed to be studied, you could also have an other alternative studied if you wanted more than one. But I think you should be specific about what you want them to look at.
I think the deal, look, if, I guess if I had my druthers, my druthers would be, let's get this one, let's see if this works. Let's get somebody to take a good, serious look at this thing. That's our traffic engineer. Meanwhile, if the traffic engineer in the course of a week or so says this thing is, 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 you know, crazy, have him, while he's doing that, come back with an alternative plan that potentially takes a look at having one parking plan for both, both sections, all right? That's, I mean, just conceptually, that seems to be something that everybody says that, that should work better. So take a look at this. If it do, if he's sitting up there in two weeks decides it isn't done, he comes back to us in thirty days, but he comes back to us with not only the results of this plan, but the suggestion of how we do the joint.
Would, would you like a proposal for a, a joint, a, a single valet on top of the study?
When he comes back, if this one doesn't work, I want that study.
So just, I think, I think the, the key is that this, we're not making an order here. We're asking, uh, Mr. Ehrlich, if, 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 if Soho House would be willing-
Right.
To participate in this little experiment. That's where we kind of are.
Isn't it obvious that this is overburdening the area of parking?
It, it's, it, it, there are, there were- Jeff, we're, we've had the public hearing.
I just want to ask before Ken answers, I wanna ask one question. Is there anything at all different with this plan than what's happening right now? Is there anything different?
The difference would be the two rows of stacking and moving the valet stand to the, uh, west.
So the valet stand already is right there.
All right, let's, go ahead, Ken.
It's slightly east of there.
Ken, go ahead.
Yes.
Yeah, see, you, you would agree.
We would agree, and let me add one sentence to say that in, in thinking with what the assistant city attorney is suggesting, that we would also agree to an alternative that explores a coordinated parking plan to maximize parking and circulation within these two parcels.
You're coordinating with Nobu, you're saying?
Yes.
So that's, that's what we asked for.
But, but whether that boils down to one parking stand or two-
Right. However, the best way to-
We don't have a dog in the race. We, we want it to be the best plan.
So let me get this straight. We're asking that, that they get together with Nobu and hook up a plan and then come back and say it works or not?
No, what we're asking, John, is we're saying we want the traffic engineer to go out and first study this plan, okay? Come back to us within a month and say, "Is it, isn't it working?" Meanwhile, as he's out there looking at it for a month, if he clears that it isn't working, we'd like to have them come back with a plan that says, whether it's the joint plan that he's talking about or some other one, where we, both parties are using the same valet and the same thing and see if that works better.
And then we try that one.
Then we try that one.
Okay, but-
Mr. Chairman, it, it's, it's just past nine o'clock. We've got four other items on our, on our calendar tonight, and three other items on this item, so.
Okay, so can we take a straw vote on that?
I'll just add, add one clarification. That the city engineer come out a certain specified multiple number of sampling times, not just coming out once, but there, there be some process about time of day, day of the week?
I, I'm, I'm a little limited about what I can assign the city engineer to do, um-
Who, who can assign him?
Well, the city manager could. I mean, we just, I just, without being able to confer with another department, it's a little hard for me to tell them to go work overtime and, and do things that, um, I don't have any idea.
Look, we gotta get this done. If we're gonna do it, we gotta do it right.
I, I completely agree. I wish there, if there's some way to, um, is there any way to use a temporary camera or something to monitor what the, um, flow of it is?
If you got a city, I mean, that's-
Soho could be, could, could mount a camera in their lot and monitor.
I want this traffic engineer to mount whatever he's gonna be mounting. So I want him to get the, he's studying, he should put it where he's gonna get the best view of what the hell's going on.
Yeah, if you can, if you can make it flexible enough that we can-
Would you be okay with installing a camera on the site if the, if the traffic engineer could pick a location?
All right, make it quick.
Very quick, very quick.
We are gonna get off this one real fast.
From the deck of the building across the street.
Yes.
I look down.
Yes.
I can see all the operations going on, where the cars are going, where they're not going. If you wanted to mount a camera there, you can. If you wanna have somebody sit in a chair and watch what's going on, you can.
Cool, thank you.
The sheriff's department's welcome as well.
Thank you, Norm.
And we could also, we could also, uh, have the residents do it. But I have, I, I wanna know what the straw vote is. Are we gonna have, are we gonna have?
I'm gonna tell you what the straw vote is.
Are we gonna have a lot closed?
I'm gonna tell you what the straw vote is. The straw vote is, we're gonna go with that plan, we're gonna figure out how, get the traffic engineer to study it and make, so we understand whether it is or it isn't working, why it isn't. In thirty days, they come back to us with that report. If during that thirty-day timeframe, he decides, or he or she, whoever's doing the study decides that this is not working, we want them to come back with, at the end of that thirty-day period with some kind of a joint plan using both parking lots.
And does it include lot closed?
It includes whatever plan they come up with, John. We're not gonna design the plan, that's what they're gonna do.
Yes. So to be clear, the direction is to study this plan-
Right.
For the next month, and also come back with a solution for a joint solution between them.
Yeah.
To record it and to have the city's traffic engineer, um, provide analysis of how they're working.
And then Bonnie, you gotta figure out who we talked to in the city to get that.
We just, we just got some digital confirmation about that.
Ah, excellent.
We should be good.
And I would just hope that when they come back with a plan, they answer some of these questions.
Well, John, I hope so too, but we gotta, gotta come back with it before we can do that. Okay, so that, you got a straw vote on that one? Favor?
It, and, and can we set a, a date for when it would come back? A date certain, so we don't need to?
August nineteenth. You just got the date. All right.
Can I, can we make a motion that based on the time, it, it seems realistic to suggest that one or several items may need to be continued, and we could send somebody home already? 'Cause we're, we're not gonna make it through everything, probably.
Yeah.
Well, we're, we're, we're like a third of the way through this item.
Third of the way through this item now.
Well, if you had to send two back, they would be, I guess, would be the last two.
I don't know if it's two, but just to consider the notion that-
People may wanna just, if we can speed up through the rest of it, that may-
We can.
Let's see how fast we can get through this and wait till final decision. We'll, we, hopefully by nine-thirty or we can sell, we go home or stay, whatever we're gonna do. All right?
But we're not continuing, we're continuing, we're not even continuing this hearing to the next thirty days from now. We got other stuff, right?
Right now, we, we've just taken a straw vote about the, the study that you want happening. So if you, if more that you wanna do on this item, we'll combine it all into a res-
Any other item, Craig, you, you wanna, any, what do you wanna hit next?
Yeah. About, uh, sound. I think I can maybe-
All right, sound.
Wrap that up a little bit. First, I, I'm, uh, some, totally sympathetic on both sides of this. I, I'm a musician. I think music is important in the community. Uh, I also live on a bluff over the highway and over the beach, and I'm in a spot where I, I don't hear the highway and I do hear the waves. And when there's somebody talking on the beach, I can hear that. So I understand that physio-geography thing there. Uh, starting out broadly and then getting into the details as needed, I think there should be a way to make an accommodation for the distributed speaker system to work. Because that's something you can test and you can, as somebody's pointed out already, it's almost like wearing headphones. If you have the speaker really close to you, that, there, there should be a way to work, work that for any kind of canned music or even DJ music, um, the, and, and, and adjust that accordingly. And, and I, I can find fault with some of this stuff in the, the study, and we can talk about some of those details, but we might not even need to get there. Live music is a completely different kettle of fish in terms of, uh, you know, if, I think if you want it, and you've already said you would give up doing it outside. If you wanted, you could probably figure out how to do it outside if you put in that fifteen-foot-high, high-mass wall in there. Maybe there's a solution there, but that's maybe for another day. And I would also think maybe you should be able to have some form of music indoors, um, and maybe it's time-limited, like ten PM or eleven, whatever the cutoff is. But if somebody can have a piano in their residence, I would think you should be able to have a piano in a structure like that, and that, that should be, s- That, that, if you could put some time constraints on it or put it in a room, maybe you need some extra soundproofing or something. I don't know. Where do I, else do I wanna go on this? Also, just in terms of instruments and talking about what live sound is, there are really different drum sets, you know? A rock drum set is completely out of the picture here, I think. But on the other hand, maybe indoors, like a cocktail jazz set, is something you'd barely even hear in the parking lot. So that's also something that there might be some flexibility on that.
Okay.
Okay, I, I probably have more on that, but that's a start.
All right, let me suggest.
One of the, one of the problems that, that infects the, the situation is that, uh, we've had numerous, I, numerous reports of violation. And, you know, I don't think it was some guy noodling on a piano or, or playing the saxophone. I think it was, it was, from what I'm hearing from the neighbors, uh, a, a much more elaborate situation. Now, when we talked about, um, Airbnb and, and things like that, I was doing some reading, and it turns out that, that, that there are sets of, of, of remotely operated noise sensors that can be installed. In an Airbnb situation is where, where it came up, so that, uh, if the, the landlord could be notified instantaneously if the noise level at the Airbnb exceeded a certain decibel level and it was in the, in the landlord's best interest to shut it down right away. It seems to me, let me, where's the sound engineer? Isn't it, isn't it, why don't you come forward? I'm gonna ask you a question. Seems to me that that would be the, the obvious first step in approaching this problem, is that you could mount, you could mount decibel meters, remotely operated decibel meters at the edge of the bluff or in, in whoever would like to volunteer from, to have a decibel meter set up. And, and would it be possible to this, to, to, to create a device like that or to, to, to purchase a, a device like that that would be sensitive enough or directional enough so that it could identify noise coming from one particular location, Soho House in particular? Because, because one of the problems they've complained about is not just the music, it is not just the level of those speakers, it's the crowd. It's the noise of the people cheering or whatever. And you can't control that by having speakers because it doesn't rely on the speakers. So is it possible, in your experience, to have decibel meters, remotely operated decibel meters, that could be put up in a sensitive location that would immediately identify whether noise from Soho House had exceeded a certain decibel level?
And then what would happen? Then, so we have to turn it down?
You could rain fire and brimstone down on Soho House. I don't know what the, what the solution would be. The solution might be to, you know, make a direct connection to the sheriff's office, or it might be to make a direct connection to code enforcement. If code enforcement has to have a, you know, eyes on situation, maybe that would be the solution. I'm just getting to the first part. If the first part exists, we can figure out what the solution would be later. So, question?
Yes and no.
Yes and no, all right.
So, yes, you can absolutely install equipment. We actually have installations like that through LA County, to where they monitor in real time. They monitor twenty-four hours a day. They're hooked to a cellular modem. They report back overages, anytime it gets over a certain level. Sound level meter is a decibel meter, functions like a thermometer as far as sound goes. And it can record that sound, but it's an omnidirectional microphone. Here's it from everywhere. It doesn't matter what causes the noise. It could be me standing next to it coughing. It could be Soho House.
Okay.
It does do that, but the alerts come real time. The identification does not. The identification is done by someone like myself or a code enforcement officer that goes back. They say, this is how loud it was in this evening. We got a complaint this evening. Was it them? You listen to it and go, yes, it was. And then you have reverible action.
And they could be record, they, these devices could record.
Yes.
The sound. And they, and while the microphones, I suppose, are omnidirectional, could you not have focused microphones attached to these instruments that would be directed at Soho?
What you do instead of having a focused microphone, what you do is you have a series of meters. So basically, you have one at, say, Soho's exact city designated property line, then you have one at another neutral location, or you have an onsite monitoring location. These kinds of things have to be done by humans. This is the main reason why I still have a job. Because if it wasn't, I wouldn't have a job. They would basically give it to a robot, and a robot would do it for me. So there is still a little bit of human interaction that has to happen, non-real time.
Okay. So the reason that I'm raising all of this is that, is that for all of the mitigation that you can do, and all the baffling and all the rest of the stuff, I'm still worried about actual enforcement. I'm trying to come up with a mechanism that produces enforcement. And if we can go in that direction, then I'm going to help support it.
And I'm gonna vote against it. I mean, against, for the reason is, Jeff, last year, okay, videos were sent into the city with the audio of music coming out of Soho, right? And I got, they were sent in, in August of 2017, they were sent in September of 2018, they were sent in October of 2018, they were sent in December of 2018, okay? These are different events. And then Memorial Day had another one, and all through that, nothing happened.
And see, this is why I said that the enforcement issue has infected this whole problem, and the temptation is just to say no. And I get that.
And then the other, the other side of the coin was, on Memorial Day, okay, when the temporary use permit went out prohibiting some music, all right, at Soho. What they did a couple days before the event, they sent emails out to some of the neighbors saying, jeez, if the music's gonna be too loud, make sure you call us. All right? So to me, it's a combination of, one, there is no enforcement we've seen, that I've seen, okay, that can effectively protect the residents. And the second thing is, Soho doesn't care. They don't care. I mean, it's been, we've had Bonnie call them, we've had, what's his name? Doug see them, okay? And they blow us off. So until, and I, so I got a problem with compliance. I've also got a problem with saying, you know, somebody down there is gonna have that switch to the sound. Can't trust them.
Can I ask you, if you had a decibel meter pointed at Soho, and it exceeded the decibels over a period of like three minutes, so it's not a, it's not a coyote scratching, could you automatically, with no human beings involved, shut off the sound?
I have never done it, but technically, technically, the equipment does exist that that would, that could work, yes.
Coming up, that solution may be more expensive than putting the speakers in, by the time you're done.
Now, I have another question on the speakers, and maybe you don't know this, but there, you identified among these, this quadrant right here on the beams.
Correct.
That's the only area they're allowed to serve food, and outside, and drinks. So, and maybe Ken should comment on this. Every time you have music, canned music, you're gonna kick everybody out of the outside restaurant? Is that correct? It doesn't sound reasonable.
Who said that?
Well, that's the only place you can have the speakers.
It's music for the restaurant.
So if you wanna, you wanna party and rock and roll, you're not, is it just for the people eating, Ken?
Yeah.
Nobody else?
Correct. It's the complement of program.
So, so Richard Gibbs comes in and wants to, wants to play his latest record. It's just for the people eating.
Okay, I'm gonna make a motion that we deny the music.
At this point, it should be a straw vote, since you want to make one motion.
Anybody want to take, got a straw vote on that?
I'll second it, yeah.
Chris? Commissioner Marks?
I'm just playing through in my head, which is gonna be better, a series of sixteen smaller speakers where there is no quote-unquote risk of some unamplified noise actually being more intrusive to people's lives. I'm, I'm a little torn on this. I would say for a place to start, I'd agree with going with no amplification for now.
Yeah, I think, Chris, what you gotta realize, if Ginger Baker's down there playing the drums, they're gonna hear.
Commissioner Marks, are you saying that you, that you're supporting not allowing it in the CP, or that you wanted it studied and you didn't want it?
Well, I'm agreeing for the sake of a straw vote, to move forward to in agreement.
All right, I agree. So we got three folks saying no music.
I'm still on with music, and I still have more conditions I might talk about.
Jeff?
I count three, yeah.
So that's.
You got to forge this easily, too.
That's no music of any kind.
Nope.
None inside with the windows.
Rule has, rule that we have today stands. Okay?
Okay.
Would that include special events as well?
Yes.
Yeah. Look, I mean, again, my problem, I don't have a problem with music. I like music. All right? I mean, I'm in favor. But, like I said, there has been absolutely no evidence that if they do something wrong, we can get someone from compliance out there to do anything about it. And the second part of the problem is, over and over and over and over and over again, they have had temporary use permit or the condition use permit sitting in front of them saying, no amplified music, and they play amplified music. And we got, and we got videos. It's evidence, okay? And I keep sending them in, and nothing happens. And that's not fair to the residents.
I agree.
All right.
Just, if I can say, it sounds like they're, they acknowledge that, and they're, they're trying to find a solution where they can structurally design it so that it won't go beyond a volume that would be heard.
But when you tell them you can't do it, and they do it, it's just like the, I'm not blaming Soho for this, but I've seen videos of Fourth of July at Nobu. If they had a TUP to do what they did, I'd be just flabbergasted.
So, what if you said, okay, put in, put in the system and try it, and see if the residents can hear it?
No.
I mean, on their dime. They can, they can take the gear back and then sell it back to the store.
I would rather solve something. And what we've done so far is, we said, well, we'll see what happens on the traffic.
Chair, you're in, just logistically, this would be, this item be brought back in a month. Would you be open to them proposing alternatives?
No.
When it comes back?
They can propose an alternative, if they like to do that, but at the moment, I haven't heard any alternative that makes sense.
Okay.
Now, Trevor, let me ask you. You said we're gonna pass part of this and continue part of it.
No, you have, you have one application before you. So you're continuing it to get this additional study done. So you can continue to.
Continuing everything just for that.
Yes, because you need, you can't issue part of us a CUP.
Okay, cool.
Okay, so let me just.
What did we say about music indoors? Any comment?
No.
No. They're gonna come back, if Trevor says they want to come back in thirty days with another proposal, let's hear it.
So that proposal could be, we're going to implement these sixteen speakers outside. We're gonna do a test in coordination with the neighbors.
And they would probably get the same vote.
I know, I know. I'm just, I'm just playing through in my head.
You know, maybe the point, you know, Craig Hill's suggestion is that, okay, put your money where your mouth is. You think that thing's not gonna make any noise, okay? Which, pay to put the speakers in, test it, and if neighbors bitch, you take them out.
But we have to pass that. They can't do that now.
I'm just saying, let them think about that. If they want to come back in thirty days with something like that, they got a shot to do that.
Give us a thumbs up on that, right?
Well, if we're not, we're not gonna do it tonight.
No, we can't approve tonight them having music.
Is there any other feedback you want to give them before this comes back?
Yeah, I want them, I think we need, look, I need, from my personal, I need some evidence. If I'm gonna vote for this stuff, I need some evidence that there's some adults sitting there in Soho that are watching the music button and not, not.
And to do not rely on the city to enforce.
Right. I mean, right now, there's no evidence. We got an adult having control of the switch. That's where I am. Okay. Well, they can, they can think about that. All right? Next, so we take a vote, got a straw vote on that one?
Yeah.
Three, two. Okay, what's the next item? Offsite parking. Anybody want to take a run at that one?
Well, I want to just see if I'm correct. Staff is telling us that the enclave cannot, cannot give them parking. And, and I would agree, since they're underparked, and there's a municipal code that says you cannot loan your parking to somebody if you're underparked. So. Well, I listened to Richard's staff report. I mean, it's a presentation. And I, and for me to be convinced of that, I want to know about the extra floor on that building and whether it's parked. And I also want to know if the owner of that building is willing to take his extra eight thousand square feet and take it off the market and never rent it.
Well, that's, okay, we're now.
We could, no, part of the requirement for offsite parking from another use is it has to be semi-permanent.
Right now, let's, let's just, if you, if we just stick with the eighteen thousand five hundred square feet, which everybody talks about, they need seventy-four spaces. Is that correct? Okay. And they need seventy-four spaces for, for the building. They don't need fifty-four spaces and renting out some. They're supposed to have seventy-four spaces. So they got nothing to rent out.
Right. And a question.
So, all right, so no offsite parking in this location, right? For the gentleman who was asking about why can't, why we can't build parking garages, it's the policy of this city that you cannot build a parking garage unless it's adjunct to another structure.
Yeah, but there's.
But related to that, we had, the city council has initiated that as a code amendment to allow parking as a standalone. It is in the process.
You gotta do that. I mean, there's no, there's no other way to solve this.
And to answer Dana Christensen, other cities know what they're doing, and they have, Santa Monica has a parking assessment district, which I paid into in my business for twelve years, percent of my gross, just so they could have parking structures at the promenade. Laguna Beach has parking structures the city built, and sells in-lu parking spaces for eighty thousand dollars of space.
We gotta go, we gotta go.
There's ways to do it.
Straw vote, guys.
Can I just ask, has, have we heard from Coastal about their legal requirements about the public parking on the landside stuff? We haven't heard anything lately, right?
We have conferred with the Coastal Commission on those old conditions. They have never, to our knowledge, and Coastal's never been able to produce a parking management plan, which was what the condition on those old CDPs called for. And they have also acknowledged, Coastal Commission staff, that it's their jurisdiction, they retain jurisdiction to enforce that condition. So the ball's in their court. They've been aware of it for a long time, and nothing's happened.
Okay. So, offsite parking, straw vote. I say no.
No.
Yes.
Chris?
Chris?
Offsite parking, yes or no?
Are you saying offsite parking at this location, or in general?
Offsite parking for this use, no.
Look, I mean, the problem I got with offsite parking, if we say yes, I got Malibu Beach in, sitting down there just waiting for that answer.
Well, Malibu Beach is a different situation. That was required parking they wanted to move here. This is not required parking. You're not authorizing any required parking to move. You're only saying they can park employees or excess parking in another location. So it's completely different from the Malibu.
It's completely different, except the fact that the, the, one of the reasons we turned it down was what it does to Pacific Coast Highway, which is exactly the same.
Well, if, if they're not gonna park in the offsite lot, the employees, yeah, the employees will park somewhere. They'll park on PCH or wherever, you know?
Well, you know, it's not legal, as far as I'm concerned, for a valet to leave that lot, under our city code.
This isn't valet parking. This is employee parking.
No, no, it isn't, because in their application, they say employee and other parking.
What, what staff has recommended is employee parking.
Yeah. Okay.
My concern, I don't see a reasonable way to address this in isolation from Nobu. They both have the same issues. And how do, how do, how do we decide yes or no for these guys without addressing that one?
This is just whether, this is just whether you'd want, you would, you would be willing to allow them to park, Soho to allow them to park their employees offsite, whether that is something that would mitigate traffic impacts or increase them. It's up to you guys what you, how you see what they proposed here as being beneficial or not beneficial.
But then, how does that impact Nobu, either legally or just, just?
The only impact on Nobu is if they're gonna have, is if they're gonna have to park all their employees in the lot. It'll fill up more of the lot with employees.
But we don't have anything in front of us that allows, has any space for them to park.
If we say yes, you can park some of your employees offsite at another location, doesn't that, what does that do to Nobu?
It doesn't have any effect on Nobu. It doesn't allow them to park their employees offsite. They haven't come here to ask for that. And so.
If we say yes, they'll say.
It's, it's two questions, whether, number one, you would allow the employees to park offsite, and number two, whether the proposed location is acceptable, or you want them to come back with another location. They got thirty days to come back with something else if you don't like the current proposal.
We don't have a traffic study that shows what happens when they do that. And we also have no location for them to do it at.
Well, they've been, they've been doing it. They've been doing it there, so.
Well, hey, and I, and I might have shot my wife sometime, but I didn't, you know? It's, it's, you violate a law, you violate a law.
Mr. Chair, if I may, this is, this is not, we're trying to solve a problem by, by having the employees park offsite.
I understand.
If we have the employees park onsite, that just exacerbates the parking problem that you've been debating for the last forty minutes.
I understand.
So, a final point on this is that we have numbers that, we've monitored the parking. We've submitted documentation under penalty of perjury that the enclave is underparked. There's also a provision to say that if the enclave needs that parking, and they need to boot us, we are responsible for finding alternative parking for our employees. So that takes the city completely out of the equation. We're trying to find relief here.
Right, and I understand. And the problem is, I don't know where that additional part, I mean, look, the thing that we're trying to do, or I think one of the things we're trying to do, is, is understand what the impact of all these cars going all over PCH is going to be. And, you know, I don't know if, if the enclave gets full, and you gotta go look someplace else. I don't know where you're gonna look.
But it's not your problem. That's what I'm trying to say for now.
No, 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 it is our problem.
For now, we're trying to take that responsibility until the city comes up with what we believe is a more regional solution for a regional problem.
But you don't, our code say two hundred and fifty, every two hundred and fifty square feet gets a parking spot. It doesn't say, the applicant can go count the cars on a certain day, say we don't need them, and therefore there's more parking spots. It doesn't say that. It's the same, it gets us in the same boat we had when foolishly, the city council let a certain office building have six and a half foot parking spaces that wouldn't fit cars. We're stuck with it because they violated the code. And there's a reason for the code.
Be judgment, guys. Anybody got any?
Yeah, don't park offsite, until you find a good place.
No, I, there are empty parking places. They ought to be utilized. The, the owners of the enclave building are not going to allow the, their tenants to go without parking places, because when, if that building ever gets leased out or gets fully leased out, that's one of the conditions that any sane tenant is gonna want. They're gonna want that parking place back. So if it turns out that this, these empty parking places in the future become unavailable, then, as Mr. Ehrlich says, it's, it's not our problem. They have to go find the other parking place. In the meantime, the city may have constructed a ten-story parking garage, who knows? But, but while those empty parking places are available, I think it only makes sense to use them.
Well.
Wait, Chris?
Are we gonna have a?
I'm just trying to, I mean, the trouble I'm having is, how do we know that they're used for employee parking? I mean, the, some of the input we've gotten from, a lot of the input we've gotten from the community is that, okay, well, you're actually having valets driving cars making two U-turns to get over. I mean, that, that's part of the concern I have by opening up that kind of Pandora's box of saying, go and park over there. Okay, then, now, is the music the problem? Is the parking the problem? Who is there? You know, that, that's where I get trouble.
If you're talking about, you'd be an enforcement solution, you look for a mechanism.
Yeah, but that's, that's a large part of this whole conversation.
We have no enforcement at night.
Because the, the way it's set up is that employees would park there themselves. There'd be no valet. If a valet is seen entering it, that would be a violation that was proposed.
The valets are running around now, no one's watching.
They're gonna have a camera installed for the next month if this moves forward.
Richard, can I ask you a question? Has the enclave ever paid its parking tax?
From our records, no, and that's one of the conditions that any lot that they find to use for offsite employee, is, employee parking is gonna have to register with the city, so we do have a condition in the resolution to address that.
Isn't that an endemic situation in this town? And, uh.
Okay, so let's, let's, yeah, let's just talk about, park, offsite parking at the enclave, guys, what do you think?
I would, I would be saying yes, if we can put some kind of language in there indicating that, that this is a temporary provisional thing, that we're looking towards some future solution, that I don't see any better solution at the moment.
Well, everything we're doing today is gonna be reviewed in a month anyway, so.
Well, no, I'm saying, like, you know, looking towards a better, you know, parking lot with a shuttle and, and that kind of bigger picture thing.
Guys, there are no temporary CUPs, Trevor just told us.
No, but we're getting agreement from the.
I'm looking for aspirational language.
Commissioner Hill, you could maybe propose something that you would allow the enclave style offsite parking until a, a lot or shuttle system's available, and then that could be required, you could make that type of condition.
That sounds better so far.
Well, I, I want to remind you of all, all the study we did on Malibu Beach Inn, and it wasn't just because it was required parking, it was because we had all this craziness on the highway. And you start opening this up to craziness on the highway and having our compliance department follow it at night, it ain't gonna work.
They were proposing to have valets move the cars from Malibu Beach Inn across here, there'd be no valet, people would just park in that lot when they came to work.
Look, I think, my, my, I'm concerned that if we don't do something to clear up some of the traffic problems in the middle of the city, it ain't gonna get any better.
So what have we done so far to clear up anything?
Well, John, I'm just saying, you know, maybe the process is right now that letting, and it's employee parking at the enclave, if we catch them violating one customer car up there, it's over.
I, I can go with that if we have enforcement. And if you can give stickers to employees and put them on their window and have the sheriff drive up there every night, and see if every car up there has a sticker, and they pay for the sheriff to do it, and certify to us that I know somebody's looking, otherwise nobody's looking.
Ken?
We're happy to put stickers on, I mean, I, I don't know that, I don't know what the mechanism is, and maybe the city attorney can tell us about us ensuring that someone's gonna enforce against us, I mean, I, I don't know what that looks like, but tell us what it looks like, we'll consider it, but we're certainly, we're happy to have the employees put stickers on or somehow identify those cars as employee cars.
If, if the, if the commission's open to some type of very strict enforcement mechanism, staff can come up with options about what that could be, if there's interest in exploring allowing the offsite at the enclave or another location.
Well, if, if this is coming back, we're happy to have that considered in the next 30 days, and, and if, and if I can make a pitch to allow us to try to come up, at least install now something on the sound, and then have it come back as well, we're happy to do that too.
You can come back to stuff, we're not gonna install anything right now.
I want to remind everybody, there is a provision in the code also that says you can't give parking spaces away when you're not using them, you can when you're not using them, which okays things at night, but not at, not at daytime.
Okay, John, I, I understand, I understand, give me another solution for how we take care of some of the traffic in the middle of the city.
Okay, on this, there's a lot of solutions, you can cut down how many people you have too. Do they, should they have 4,000 members or 3,000?
Well, okay.
Okay, there's plenty of solutions. When the lot's full, is it their problem or the customer's problem? That's another solution.
You're having customers running around the city trying to find a parking, ain't gonna help us anyway. Yeah, but I, I, I'm gonna suggest we have a, allow them to park up at the enclave, but I want some stickers or some pla. Huh? Okay, and, and.
Enforcement.
And, yeah, and just make sure there's no valets, customer cars being sent up there, guys, 'cause we'll put a bulletin that thing real quick.
You're looking for a strict condition that would remove the ability to park offsite if there's violations.
That's correct, and if, if they, and if they have to change the location, I want them to come back to the planning commission and tell us where they're changing it.
If, if I can, let me, let me just try to kill this while, while we're here, there's, there's frankly too much for us to digest, there's too many conditions, we're happy at this point for, for the commission to simply deny the CUP amendment, and we'll go back and rethink and, and figure out what to do. But, we're trying to work with the commission, but on every single thing to say no to the sound, and, and now to come up with, you know, the, these measures, it's frankly too much for us to think about right now, we're happy to have it denied.
Or you want to withdraw?
We, we prefer it to be denied.
If it's denied, then they could appeal it to the city council.
Right.
But it's, it's the commission's discretion, if they want this information, they, you guys have the discretion to continue it, it's, it's the commission's choice.
We just, we just shaped, shaped something constructive about the kinds of information we want, I think we should continue it and get that information.
Yeah.
No, I don't see any point in, in trying to tailor something that is gonna be unacceptable to the applicant and unacceptable to the residents, and I think that, that Mr. Ehrlich is probably on the right track, we ought to just deny it, move it on.
I'm gonna make a motion to continue.
See, I, my concern is.
Torturing puppies, I mean.
Well, it's, it's either that or, what it really is, Jeff, as you know, it goes to city council and they hear it for a half an hour, and listen to whoever's gonna whisper in their ear, and then it happens, we at least have a hearing.
The other, the other issue I would say is that if, if the commission's not seriously thinking about moving it forward when it comes back, staff doesn't have the time to continue to, you know, move around with it either.
Well, I don't think we're being unreasonable following the city codes on these things and, and asking for, for parking spaces that are actually available under the code and things like that.
Mr. Chairman, I, I move that we deny that item.
On what basis, or do you want to have an, a, a resolution returned to you denying it, or? Okay. And it would be based on the impacts on the, the community?
Yes.
Okay.
I, I would like to hear from Mr. Ehrlich, five minutes ago, it seemed like we were close to something, was there a straw that broke the camel's back here, or what, what, what changed here? Stickers, that was the problem? I don't know, what, like, where, where, where are we going here?
No, I, with, with all, with all respect, Commissioner Hill, the, the sound is a very big issue to us, it's part of the culture of the club. I appreciate, not only, forget me, Soho House appreciates your efforts to try to work through something that's beneficial for Soho House and beneficial for the neighbors. We've been at this for, for, since our existence, we've been operating since 2016, I was retained in around 2017, and we've been at this for two years, working diligently with staff. And to have the kind of response, especially on the sound, which is to us the biggest issue and the thing that we've worked most on, and everything else, unlike the parking, for example, we've said whatever the city wants. We've come up with a solution on the offsite parking to relieve pressure on the system in this one area, having voluntarily, having non-required parking used offsite, and our employees doing it, they're identifying themselves as it is, working out a lease with the enclave, going up to the Coastal Commission multiple times to get their input on it, working with the city again, and, and, and having that kind of response is really off-putting to my client. So, we're completely respectful of the commission, I, I, I think our record shows how respectful we've been and how much we've wanted to work, but especially when the sound is a, a, a non-starter, the, the whole issue becomes more difficult for us to work it through, we're happy to have it denied if, and, and retain whatever rights we may have, we may want to rethink it, we may want to do something else.
So your calculation is you make it more and better from the council?
Not necessarily, this isn't necessarily a political move, I, I, I don't want to lie and say that's not a consideration, it is a consideration, but there might be something else that we go back and redo to maybe rethink the issue of music, maybe we'll, I, I, I don't know, I don't want to say now, it's, I, I want to be as careful as I can, prudent as I, we can be, but also make sure that the client's protected.
You neighbors, any, just, don't, don't, raise your hand if you think, raise your hand if you think we should try and come up with some solution for music.
Well, the problem, as you've pointed out repeatedly, is enforcement, when these gentlemen are very honorable, I'm sure.
If they're gonna talk, we need it if they might.
Okay. No, you've, you've answered my question.
Question, question to Richard.
Go ahead.
Richard, on, on, on page two of your staff report, you say, this staff report basically would address most of the pending compliance issues, what are the other ones?
What? Okay.
The next one we have listed down there, I'm looking for the paragraph we're reading from, but one of them that we identified, for example, is that they're still in the process of installing their vehicle impact protection devices, we issued the permit, I want to say, back in April, and I think they're working with their installer to get that in there.
Okay, that's, that's, that's basically what you're talking about. Okay, well, if Jeff, if Jeff's motion doesn't get a second, I'm gonna make a motion to continue.
One other thing, Thomas, can you? What do you think?
I think that we would like it denied, the reason is, it's not, it's not a political move, as Ken said, but we've invested hundreds of thousands of dollars, we have, I stood here before we opened the club, and one of the concerns from residents was parking on PCH, so we took it upon ourselves, not realizing, to be honest, in good faith, we took it upon ourselves to come up with employee parking at the enclave, we've operated that since the day we opened, we have a sticker system on our cars, and we've, we've monitored and provided Richard with, with evidence of how that system works over the last few weeks, valet don't park in that site, because when they do park in that site, which we have seen in the past, not our valet, other people, is, we have a problem, so we kick any, anything we see like that, we monitor ourselves, and we pay several thousand dollars a month to use that space with the enclave, and we've done it effectively for three years. Now, what we could do to, to come back in to be CUP compliant on that one subject is we could put our staff back on the lot at Soho, that would then have the knock-on effect, which would, would be a very big problem for us, as well as a problem for the city in a, in a general sense, is that our patrons would then be doing multiple U-turns, looking for parking, parking on PCH, and, and causing the problem, which we have tried to come to you, we've, we haven't, haven't come to you, we've just done it, and it's worked, and whilst it might not be the long-term, bigger-picture solution, it has worked for three years. The language we have put forward in the CUP amendment is that we will continue to do that if approved by yourselves, but if that doesn't work, if we're giving notice or for any reason doesn't work, we have 30 days to give you notice about where we're gonna then park our employees, we don't want to park our employees on site, because it's gonna put our customers on PCH, which is a bigger city problem, but one which we want to help, help do. We've demonstrated for three years to become solutions-based, when I spoke earlier tonight, I did say that we had had some problems, I think on record, we have three citations on record, and I'm sure there have been other calls, but we come here today asking and demonstrating we're a solutions-based company, but we also come here today to ask for some support back on music, because we believe we have a solution, we've already invested heavily in coming up with a solution with the gentleman you heard earlier, we're happy to invest the money, which I think is quarter of a million dollars on the sound system, to make sure it works, we're not doing that with the idea that we're gonna be here in a few months saying it doesn't work, we want to be a part of the neighbor, neighborhood, and I think that we want to be given the opportunity to, to show that we can do this, we don't want to invest quarter of a million dollars on top of what we've already invested coming here to talk about sound, to screw it up in, in a matter of weeks, we're very keen to work with the residents, you know, and we've demonstrated that, this is a long-term solution, we believe, and it's about us being, we're not going away, we're here for the long term, but we are coming to the city with solutions, and we've demonstrated that with our parking solution over the years, so whilst nothing is perhaps perfect, we come here, you know, in good faith, and, and I think really, we want to be given the opportunity to show what we can do, and to show how respectful we are and everything else, so if in three months you say, listen, we've had violations and these are the problems, then of course, we're in a difficult situation, but we're also running a business, and by investing that kind of money into a sound system, we don't want to get it wrong, I can assure you. So, that's, that's where we come from today, we come here as good faith operators, we know we've screwed up in the past, you know, we put our hand up, we've met with Doug Clavenger, but we also have demonstrated, I think, time and time again, that we have worked with the city, when we're in trouble, we try and figure things out, and, and I'm sure there's.
I just wish you guys hadn't, hadn't had as many violations as you had.
I think we've had three on the record violations.
Like I said, I got six, I got six dates, where people have sent videos in of, of music going on, and, and those are the only ones I'm aware of.
But I think, I think what we're asking for, Chair, is, is we would like to say that, you know, we'd like to move forward, we'd like to prove, if, if we're not given the opportunity, we're never going to be able to do this, and that's back to Ken's point about denying, so if you're thinking of continuing, we're not really interested because we don't want to invest more dollars in having to come back and, and try that and get this through, we, you know, we'll, we'll rethink everything, but I think that we would like to be able to show that we can operate in a responsible manner.
Gentlemen, my?
No, no, no.
Well, I'm just saying, they, they offered to withdraw, withdraw their live entertainment, I think my.
Yes.
My coverage, my degree, if it's just the speakers and no live entertainment, that might be.
Absolutely, so we're very happy to take out the wording that says live and amplified, we will take out live.
Hang on, raise your hands if you guys agree to that, I don't know, talk.
If, if you're gonna speak, come to the microphone, so we can record it.
So, I was initially quite interested in that, but here's the point that we've been trying to make, they have a large club, they say they're very music-centric, they've been around for three years, they have a very avid population base, which is awesome, they've done it without the music, now they want to put music outside in addition to in, inside music, we're all in favor of inside music, we think that's great, but we are opposed to the outside music for all the enforcement issues that we have in Malibu, and so, why can't they play in the three or four big rooms they have inside, play music, and they're insisting on, oh, they have to have this music outside as well, I just don't think that makes sense, particularly given the success the club has had in the three years it's already been running.
The purpose of outside.
It's a neighborhood offer.
Well, we, we already have music inside, it's a pipe system, like in any restaurant, and, and that's, that's, I think, established already, the, the music we're trying to have outside is a continuation of the music inside, we're not trying to have nightclub situations, what we're trying to do is to have the same level of music outside to create the vibe that we have, without that, it's, it is, it's affected our business dramatically, the club is still successful, of course, but we have seen, we don't have the vibe and the, the feel that we have, it's like going to a restaurant without music on, it's, it's, something's missing, so we're not trying to, we're not trying to turn the volume up and have a whole crazy party.
You're talking about audio wallpaper.
Audio, there's a nice way of putting it, audio wallpaper, what I'm really talking about is being given the opportunity by the city to install a system at vast cost that we will then monitor, and if we don't get it right, then, then we're, you're gonna take it away, we accept that, but we've demonstrated through parking to be a solutions-based operator, and whilst we have screwed up in the past, we're looking for the opportunity to demonstrate that again.
You know, what if we do this, what if we say, continue this, you guys talk to your neighbors? Okay.
Can we take a five-minute break and we can have a chat with them right now? Because obviously we can't speak to you, but maybe we can chat.
If you're gonna do that, you should continue the items that you're not gonna get to tonight, so that people could leave.
I think, I want to make, I want to try and get to the Boys' and Girls' Club, get that done tonight.
Okay, and do you want to continue the other two items?
We only have a half.
Yeah, we should continue the other two.
Okay.
We're not gonna get to them.
So that would be a, a motion to continue item 5A and 5.
Boy, I wish I weren't a parliamentarian, you got a motion pending, we got a second? Do I have a second on, on my motion? Okay.
Okay.
All right, let's take a five-minute break.
So there was, there was no second, just motion, is there, is there a motion to continue items 5A, C, and D?
Yes.
And a second? All in?
All in favor?
Lynn, Lynn Hecox is wanting to speak.
I understand, but we're gonna have to wait, Lynn.
Mr. Chairman, Lynn Hecox on 5A, we've already been postponed one time for like two to three months, we'd certainly like to be heard tonight, I've got a very short presentation, we've got a positive staff recommendation.
Well, then, you, I mean, if you want to hang around, if we can get through everything else before 10:30, you may have a shot, but if we can't, we're gonna have to postpone it. Okay.
So the motion is then to continue 5C and 5D, and here 5B before 5A?[1743.94]
Yes.
I'll make that motion.
A second? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
I'd like a seven-minute recess.
Go out and talk, guys.
Return at 10 o'clock. Please do not address the commissioners, they can't talk about this item, since the item's still active.
Thank you very much.
Keep trying, keep trying.
Sound, that's what we want. We'll get that one. Give us a sound answer.
We can't.
You have to.
30 days.
I didn't go up and park the enclave. You got no other solution? You got no solution? No solution?
Let's let it get back to the public.
All right, guys, here's, tell us where you are right now. Somebody tell us where you are.
Okay, so, Thomas, let me know if you agree here. Thomas, you with me, or are you listening to that other lawyer?
Thomas, listen to this, guys.
So the compromise that we've reached is that there would be a prohibition on live music, number one. Number two, they will install their system, and we will figure out a mechanism by which the neighbors are essentially the decibel meters for can we, are we hearing their music or are we hearing, you know, the waves as we would like it? And we will write it up so that with our sound engineer, we have a system that works to actually control it. Now, the problem is, in the time we have now, and given that lawyers are involved, it may take a little bit of time to write it up.
Here's my suggestion.
Everything that's proposed in that part of the CUPA is kind of what I think we're on the same page about. If we get a violation, or, we have to quantify how the nuisance and everything is worded, but if there is an issue, we have an open dialogue. If the residents feel that the open dialogue is not working, they're going to bring it back to you guys, and that's off the table.
Here's what I like to suggest. Mr. Overton, go ahead.
Not all of the neighbors agree. They dissent.
I think we have, well, we have one opposition.
Well, we have other opposition, but everybody can't come to a planning commission meeting.
Yeah.
I speak for a whole building full of people.
Okay, here's my suggestion, all right, is that you guys go back, talk to each other, okay, and we can bring them back.
So I think the recommendation, we'll work with what you've put together here, is we come back in 30 days, they can-
I don't think we need to come back in, I think we're in agreement, we're 10 to 1.
No, no, I want you guys to work it out, if you've got other people, I mean, make sure that everybody's had a voice in this thing. In the interim, what we want to do is get the parking thing going, get a traffic study, I mean, our consultant, whatever it is, go down and take a look at that thing. I'm going to make a motion that we continue to let you park up at enclave during this period, okay, and come back in 30 days, and hopefully, we can solve some of this.
What's the downside of not letting them say, "Let's start putting it in and seeing if it works or not?" Because I want them to work it out.
I think, I think, Chair, I think we have worked it out, I think.
Yes, we're in agreement. I think, could we bifurcate the parking, with a new application, bifurcate the sound and the parking as two different issues?
We'd like, I think we're in agreement on sound. We don't need to go away for 30 days, we've got an agreement tonight.
If I can articulate it, with the agreement on sound-
Microphone. Sure, I'm sorry.
My understanding is that the agreement on sound is that we would be able to go ahead and install the proposed system, as we install and after the installation, work with the community with remote sensors, whatever sensors and whatever objective numbers we can come up with, to get their happiness up the hill. Mr. Overton, who is not up the hill, but a neighbor to the west, remains unsatisfied. I don't think we can satisfy Mr. Overton tonight, and he's not impressed with the previous record, and I think that has been impactful to him.
Right.
And we respect that. But the neighbors up the hill, everyone else is in agreement with what I just said and what I met separately with the Assistant City Attorney, to suggest that the language would be such that we're able to install it and come back, and then we would work on specific triggers in tune with like sort of an adaptive management program with what Commissioner Hill said on the return.
The idea is that this-
There would be no live music, by the way.
Okay, I would like to get that, whatever your agreement is, get it in writing, right? So we've got something that they, you've looked at in writing, you've looked at in writing, you've looked at, so that we're coming in and we're not, there's no question.
I think the idea here is that they would be able to install the system and test it, but they would not, we would not be passing a CUP tonight to allow the ongoing use of it, but it would be allowed to be tested, so that then a solution can come back that would demonstrate, the neighbors would be able to say whether, you know, provide better input about the impact of it.
Yes, and we'll know in 30 days.
Are there any, well, I don't know if they can act that fast, but are there any legal restrictions on, you know, when you say "test"? Do we have to define what a test is and all that stuff?
No, you're asking for research here, and you don't need a permit to install speakers, it's a use issue. And so the idea would be that, is that they're going to work with the neighbors, they're not going to test it at 3:00 in the morning, because they're not going to want to annoy all the neighbors and have them come back in 30 days and say how obnoxious they were. So I think we can trust them to test out the system.
When they're going to test it.
Excuse me?
They have to give notice when they're going to test it.
Okay, so here's the deal, so it sounds like we're moving to a process that says, "Get it installed," right? Test it, make sure that testing is all consistent with the neighbors.
Collaborative with the community.
And come back in 30 days, tell us what happened.
And also loop in city staff, city staff should be aware of any tests and the installation and what's happening there, and so we can have objective, you know, observation and measurement.
Can we have a code enforcement person on-site when that test is happening?
Yes.
Well, the city staff will determine, you know, let's leave flexibility for the testing to happen, you know, the idea is to be most efficient as possible.
Is 30 days enough, or do you need more than 30 days?
I think it might be optimistic for us to actually get it installed in 30 days, so we'll try for that, but it may be that, and we'll talk to you. So if we don't get it 30 days, it could be another 30 days.
We have to specify a date this evening.
Let's say 30 days.
We don't know when it'll be coming up.
We could set it for August 19th, and if it needs to be continued.
Yeah, but to August 19th, if it doesn't make work, we can change that.
I'm sorry, Mr. Chair, I didn't hear you.
Because he said, the next day week, 30 days of bringing back on August 19th, because on August 19th, I'd like to hear back from the traffic guy, who's taking a look at the park, what's going on with the parking on there.
We have a number of items that come back if we get up, you know, because the staff report needs to come out two weeks in advance, so it's going to be-
It doesn't give us a lot of time.
I'm saying, we need more time for the, go ahead.
They have to notice it, so we're going to have to have, we have to have at least six weeks.
No, because if we're continuing to date certain, we don't need to renotice.
Have to renotice, so we could do September 3rd, but that's the day after Labor Day, or September 16th.
Let's do the 3rd.
You want to do the 3rd? So continue the item to September 3rd, if additional time is needed, we can always continue it again.
Yeah.
Okay?
All right.
So can I, do you mind having them-
September 3rd, I'm sorry, I'm hearing too many voices. I'm having a problem listening to the sound.
September, uh, talk to that guy.
Get it?
Talk to that guy.
So, thank you. So September 3rd or on-
September 3rd.
Thank you, Mr.-
And that's a Tuesday.
Can I clarify what the direction of the-
Yeah, but there's other pieces involved in this now. We want to get the traffic, so we're going to do the parking thing, get somebody to take a look at that, so when we come back on September 3rd, we've got an understanding of what's going on with the parking piece up there, right?
Okay.
We want to make sure, we want to get that moving forward, because we don't want to screw that up, and between now and then, you also get to park up at the enclave, but put tags on your-
Make sure there are.
Okay, and don't put any valets up there, don't put any customer stuff up there.
Or anywhere else.
Or anywhere else.
I would also like for you to come back with some kind of assurance to us that there's some kind of compliance involved here.
Yeah.
By us.
Yeah, you guys figured, right.
It can't be just, oh, well, you know, forget it.
Okay.
All right.
Can I clarify with the, make sure this is the direction of-
Go ahead, please.
One quick observation, we didn't have a straw vote on item four, the extension hours. What's the-
We're not going to get anything.
Okay, so we won't touch the hours.
Yeah, we're just going to continue, we'll do the extension hours in the drinking next meeting, is that okay with you?
Chair.
Trevor, if you make the motion, I'll make it. You say it, and I'll make it.
Okay.
Everybody listen up.
Commissioner Mazza, I believe the direction of the council is to-
Okay, folks, everybody quiet, please.
I believe the direction of the council is to continue this item to September 3rd, and in the interim, to have testing done of the installed sound system, working with the neighbors and with staff, as in terms of what's installed, when it's installed, and when it's tested, and what the results are. Also, to study, at Soho's request, the proposed plan for the valet circulation, and also study of a single valet option, and this will include video study and analysis from the city traffic engineer using a video location on Norm's property. Also, to study the use of the enclave property for employee parking using a sticker system, and proposing a condition that would have the off-site employee parking option removed if there are violations.
Right.
Does that reflect the council's-
And compliance system.
Commission, that's the council, okay.
I make that motion.
I'll make the motion you just talked about.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Before we do, I want to say I'm supporting the motion, but I want to make sure that, at least as far as I'm concerned, it's not the function of this body to bless whatever agreement is reached by affected residents and applicants, that's not what we do here, and so I just want to make that, before I vote yes on this, on this motion to continue.
Thank you for clarifying, Commissioner Jennings, the applicant is under no obligation to work with the residents, although it's encouraged by the commission.
Understood.
We're also under no obligation to approve what they come up with, we have to review it.
Okay, that's how we make sausage, guys, thank you very much.
Do you get all the favor?
We move, we got to vote. Everybody in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, now what's next?
Okay, thank you, gentlemen.
Let's get rid of what's his face.
No, let's do, I want to do the Boys and Girls Club next.
And-
Let's get that done.
For the, for the commission, can we also clarify that the items 5C and 5D were continued to the next commission hearing date, which is-
Yes.
August 5th?
Yes.
Is that correct?
That is correct.
Correct.
All in favor?
I'll second.
Okay.
Okay, let's get it going, because we want to get-
Okay, Boys and Girls Club, you're on.
You want a staff report?
Staff report.
Jessica, you can make it real short.
Yeah.
Okay. The project you have for you tonight is CDP 1917 and TUP 19005 for the Chili Cook-Off, which will be taking place this Labor Day weekend. Before you have the vicinity map here-
Hang on a second, ladies and gentlemen, everybody in back, out the door.
Please.
Thank you. Go.
You have the vicinity map and an aerial photograph. You have the vicinity map and an aerial photograph. Here we have the event schedule. Please note that in the yellow portion on Friday, the applicant has motioned to move the time from 1:00 PM start time to a 4:00 PM start time, per the applicant's request. We have a site plan here, which you also have in your staff report, which may be a little bit more clear to read than pictured above. The biggest change for this year's event is that there will be an additional private fundraiser event on Thursday, taking place from 5:00 PM to 9:00 PM. This event will be ticketed only, with no minors involved, alcohol served, but not sold. Following, we have the parking plan here. As you see, there's a lot of arrows going on. The red lots are highlighted parking. This year, they're proposing six lots, which is a total of one thousand one hundred and fifty-four parking spaces, which is an increase from last year's five hundred and ninety-one parking spaces. There's also going to be ADA parking offered at the library and the county lot, with twenty spots reserved, per the normal condition for the project. That will conclude my brief presentation. I would like to make sure that we also include that we would need to add the standard indemnification clause to be added as condition number one for resolution nineteen fifty, and just to reiterate that the Friday hours are being amended from a 1:00 PM start time to a 4:00 PM start time. I am available for any questions, as well as the applicant.
Thank you very much. Just a couple of quick ones. Insurance, you got an insurance plan?
Yes, we have certificate of liability insurance.
Okay, good. And we've got agreements from those parking locations?
Correct, with the exception of the county is still pending, and the La Paz lot is still pending, but they have an agreement with them, just on a signed contract.
Okay, go ahead, John.
Do we have an agreement with the city? Do we have a lease with the city?
Correct, we have a rental agreement that's been contracted with the Community Services Department.
So, so when, this is a question for Trevor. When the farmer's market wanted to park there, they had to go to city council?
They wanted to park there every Sunday for eternity, so it's a little different situation. This is a one weekend, that's why it's different.
Now, was there, was there done, was there an RFP done?
Not that I'm aware of. For what?
For use of the lot.
An RFP for the...
Well, it's city property, and the property next door rents for fifteen thousand a month. Is the city getting any remuneration? And was there an RFP for somebody to compete with them? Or is it a gift of public funds?
I don't know what the contract says.
The, the, yeah, the terms of what the city would be making would either be a decision of the city manager, if that's a management of facilities, or it would be a city council decision of if it's a, were, if it's a full rental of the property. So, you know, we just need to look at whether the findings can be made for the proposed ACDP and the TUP that was before.
Okay, so it's not, if they did it for free, it's not a gift?
It's not a zoning matter.
It, it, yeah, it would depend on, you know, if there's a public benefit there, arguably could be, I don't know what the terms are, or what the agreement was at this point.
And then my next question is, are they gonna pay city parking tax?
I can relook at the agreement, I don't have the specific numbers for the city agreement with them, for the cost, I'm not sure if they pay the tax.
My question of Trevor, would they be covered by city parking tax?
I believe the parking tax is paid by the property owner, not the person renting the parking.
Right, and that's what I'm wondering, is Brad Bell paying?
I don't know the answer to that. I don't know the answer to that.
So...
It's a requirement if the lot, if the property's being rented, so we can follow up on that.
Okay, so we can put that as a condition? Parking tax is paid?
Sure.
Yes.
Okay. The other thing I wanna mention is, this is personal opinion, but I think it's absolutely insane...
Wait, we haven't opened the public hearing?
Oh, okay.
And were there disclosures?
Yes, I talked to Casey Ernest for about fifteen, twenty minutes on this, and she went over basically everything in the staff report. I didn't learn anything new.
I spoke with Casey for about that length, and learned that any potential interaction with SCE on the Bell parcel appears to be alleviated. I can go into more detail on how and why when we get to it. And that this was the, last year was the first year that number of visitors were tracked, which may have some bearing on how objective it is to make projections about increased number of visitors, and I got some clarification on the backup plan for ride-sharing option.
What clarification did you receive?
Just where it is, and how it would work, and why we might need it.
Which is what?
Well, I guess we're getting into the substance now, but that...
I think that was in the staff report, and just asking you to disclose it, so it can be discussed.
I don't remember exactly what was or wasn't at this point, but just that if it's not possible to do it down next to the Legacy Park and a certain number of spaces there, that it could be moved into an aisle into the Bell parcel, and it wasn't, it was fuzzy on the map, so I thought it was maybe a clarification.
Jeff?
Yes, I've had the same conversation with Casey. We went over basically the items that are in the staff report.
I also had a discussion with Casey. One thing I learned was the timing of the Bell lot. I don't remember if it's explicitly in the staff report, but I think SCE releases it if I remember the day before, so I did have a little concern that, what if they're delayed? Could that impact? So, yeah.
Okay, and I had a conversation with Casey on the details of the kickoff, so, okay, any other questions? John, you had one more you were coming up with.
Well, we're gonna have...
Are you gonna open the public hearing?
One question is, is the plan really actually to add eight thousand...
Microphone's not on.
Oh. Is the plan really to add eight thousand additional cars to the corner of Cross Creek Road and Civic Center Way, and have the lights blink red during Z-traffic?
To have the light blink red is part of the approved traffic plan by Public Works. They'll also be having hired flaggers out there to direct them to the approved parking places, and that had been several, we had several meetings with the Public Works Department to work out that solution. Keep in mind also that if there are eight thousand visitors, they're gonna be spread out, if I'm not wrong, over the whole weekend, and they'll probably be...
No, no, it's each day.
Is it each day? It's, it's eight thousand on, I expect it on Friday night, five thousand subsequently Saturday and Sunday and Monday. But they'll be more than likely not traveling alone in their cars.
I mean, the red light, blinking light, a little bit, you know, we, we hit stop signs, we put stops, or we put the lights in to deal with additional traffic, and then we get additional traffic, we go back to the stop sign, so it just is an amazing process.
I think if we, I think if we open the public hearing and do it, we can get done in seven minutes.
Casey, you've got, wanna speak?
Sure, I'll make it free. It was a pleasure speaking with all of you commissioners, thank you for your time, and thank you for this evening, this was an enlightening evening, and I've learned a lot. I just want to address the parking, particularly for Friday evening. We did use a, through our ticketing system last year, we did track just under eight thousand attendees. However, we need to keep in mind, that's attendees, these are predominantly families who are coming to enjoy the festival together, so we make an approximation of three to four people per family. This year, with the proposed ride-share and Uber drop-off designated spaces, we anticipate twenty-five percent of attendees would be for ride-share, twenty-five percent would be Uber-designated, thus leaving a little less than four thousand attendees for parking spaces, which we have a thousand for, which we anticipate turning over one point five times on Friday evening. So we feel very confident about our traffic parking management plan for Friday. The rest of the festival is a much more, a fluid flow of people in and out of the event, so we just wanted to address that. And as Jessica mentioned, we are increasing our traffic safety plan by addressing the light, controlling that, bringing on flaggers, and additionally, we are hiring a professional parking management company this year to oversee all of the parking lots that we have secured.
Okay, thank you very much. I'd like to make a motion to approve the temporary use permit.
I have one quick question of staff, sorry. One other question in the traffic discussions you had, any talk of putting someone at the intersection of, say, PCH and Cross Creek, and then Malibu Canyon and Civic Center to note, you know, event ahead, go the other way, something like that?
I don't know that there's gonna be a person there, but there are message boards to be placed there.
Okay, something to alert traffic, okay.
Correct.
Thank you.
I wanted to ask for a site plan review on carnival rides that exceed eighteen feet, but I guess there's no time tonight, so...
I wanna suggest, when you make your motion, that you include that vendors of parking have to pay parking tax.
I got a problem with that.
And then I'd also like a motion, make a motion that we do not have blinking lights on Thursday and Friday during rush hour, which I would call four to six. Because we have, what, fifty thousand cars that go to the valet every afternoon?
The applicant has input on that, maybe? Jim?
Tony?
Hi, I'm Tony Doran, thank you for your time. I'm involved with the Boys and Girls Club as just a private citizen, and I assisted in talking to the owners of the commercial lots, all who were not seeking serious compensation for their contribution to the 501(c)(3) that Casey has done. I wanna recognize that she took this event, in my opinion, in a great direction last year, back towards the fair it originally used to be, and a little bit away from the carnival and chaos it had turned into. But the owners who have offered their property were not looking for big compensation, so I don't know if the tax is a serious penalty to them, or a penalty to the Boys and Girls Club, if you would consider that.
Okay. The only reason I mention it is, is the municipal code tax, it's not something that you should be, we should be giving away. We're not a legislative body.
Let's put the tat, let's...
You're not able to enforce the parking tax?
No, 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 I just mean that the, it's not, it's not part of the zoning code, so it's technically part of another section of the municipal code that's enforced elsewhere.
It can still be required that they...
Yeah.
So I would like to require they pay the parking tax.
Gotta make them, include that in the motion.
Okay, and then I, and also, my other part, and we have three minutes, is to, on the rush hour Thursday and Friday, to get rid of the blinking light. It's gonna be a bad problem.
Look, if the traffic consultant, is the city consultant's plan, is what they came up with?
With the light, yes.
This was a traffic engineer?
Yes.
And just to point out, most of the...
But they're going to be people directing traffic at that intersection? Correct, a flagger. So they can wave people through as needed, I don't think everybody would have to stop.
Is it legal for non-police to do that?
They'll have the, they'll have the appropriate people doing it. Additionally, it's not on Thursday, the flashing light will not be on Thursday, it's just for Friday evening, where they have that max of eight thousand people, estimated.
Got a motion?
Sorry, to clarify, most of the traffic's gonna keep running on PCH anyway, shouldn't even go through there.
Right, they're gonna come to Malibu Canyon and come up.
Yeah, exactly, okay, okay.
I got a motion, need a second.
I'll second it if you have that, you have that...
Chair Euring, that, that motion was staff's recommendation, as Jessica stated it earlier with the addition, and also with the, with John's, Commissioner Mazza's requirement that the parking tax be paid, is that correct?
Correct, I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Done.
Wait, wait, I'm confused, I'm sorry.
Roll call?
I'm just trying to figure out what the motion is, because I heard John make a motion, which he then seconded.
No, no, Steve made the motion, I seconded it. And it was the staff's recommendation with the addition of they have to pay the parking tax.
Chair, Chair, it was Chair Mazza, sorry, Chair Euring's motion, that was staff's recommendation, as stated by Jessica earlier, I think there was an addition that you, that you made to it.
The hours, and then adding the indemnification clause as the first condition.
And then also adding Commissioner Mazza's requirement that the parking tax be paid. That was the motion.
One more thing.
We gotta go.
One more thing.
All right, well, I hate to belabor it, but the, you're, you're using the passive voice here. Who's going to pay this parking tax?
I, I wanna address the parking tax. I understand if it's part of the municipality and it's part of code. I do just wanna point out that by us being able to take on the Chili Cook-Off last year, and the funds that were raised not only for the Boys and Girls Club, but for the other six Malibu-based charities, it gave us the six-month runway to operate the fire relief program, where I paid my entire staff out of our payroll, and I just wanna bring that to light. Those additional funds are needed, they do come into play, and they are served, they're all going right back into the community. That's my only point.
You don't pay it.
You don't pay it.
We would absorb that cost, because our, our parking partners are essentially giving us the lots, so we can raise more money for the charities.
So as they said in the other hearing we had, just figure out what the parking tax is, and raise your price.
Just wanted you to be aware, thank you.
It's just requiring compliance with the parking tax, right? Provisions?
Yeah. You get one minute for Lynn.
Okay?
Do you want a roll call, or are you...
Anybody agree? Roll call? Kathleen?
Chair Euring?
Yes.
Commissioner Mazza?
Yes.
Commissioner Hill?
Yes.
Commissioner Marks?
Yes.
Vice Chair Jennings?
Yes.
Motion carries.
All right.
Five A.
Five A.
Staff report.
You may have one minute.
Okay, so it's coastal development permit number seventeen zero zero five, minor mod number eighteen twelve, application to amend the administrative coastal development permit for two seven eight six five, Winding Way. Lynn, staff report, please.
Thank you, Chair Euring. I will abbreviate my presentation if you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them. The property is located on the north side of Winding Way, and is an approximately three point nine acre irregularly shaped parcel. The property is located in the RR2 zone, surrounded mostly by single-family residences. This is the project description for the original approval. It included in addition to a single-family residence that constituted a replacement structure, conversion of two accessory structures, a swimming pool, OWTS, grading, lot merger, and demolition of some structures. The planning director subsequently approved a substantial conformance determination for some additional revisions to the project, and when the applicant submitted a second request for substantial conformance, we, the planning staff, determined that the substantial conformance request was beyond the authority of the planning director, and we converted it into a CDP amendment, and that's the project that's before you tonight. The proposed project involves converting two sections of the single-family residence from a flat roof to a pitched roof with a maximum height of twenty-eight feet. These are the story poles above the master suite, and this is the rendering, and you can see the red cloud showing the pitched roof above the master suite. And this shows the pitched roof above the art studio. The other component is converting one of the two approved light wells from a vertical ladder into a stairway. This light well does comply with all standards in, in the policy interpretation. The applicant provided calculations demonstrating that the grading quantities would not exceed one thousand cubic yards of grading. And the last component is a minor modification for a six-foot-high solid wall, fifty-five for a six-foot-high solid wall, 55 feet from the property line. So this is a 10-foot reduction of the front yard setback. This is Winding Way, looking south, and you can see that it's heavily vegetated, and looking north, also with a lot of mature vegetation. And again, you can see the story poles of the proposed wall. This is the site plan showing the wall at 55 feet from the property line. So staff is recommending two new conditions that would be added to the resolution. One is that the applicant did point out, just very recently, that the calculations of the light well length is incorrect, and it exceeds the maximum length by approximately three inches. So that's something that they said that they can revise, and we will require that prior to plan check approval. The other condition is that it was also discovered that construction had commenced for the project that's before you tonight. So we are proposing a second new condition for the applicant to resolve all code violations prior to final inspection. And that concludes my presentation. I'm available to answer any questions, and the applicant is, is available as well. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Disclosures.
Yeah, I had a peek at the site and noticed that much of this work is already underway or done. The peak roof sections are built, and the proposed orientation of the wall and gate is already, the concrete has been poured for the gate. And so I guess we'll have something to say about that.
John?
We heard, I, I want to disclose, I was in the original hearing on this property. And we did hear this minor mod for the setback. We did hear for the solid wall, and we denied them. So, for various reasons. So I know that, that some other councilman commissioners may not know. Also, question. This project exceeds the maximum total TDSF by the size of the light well. And that's a big problem with me, because I don't like to exceed the TDSF limit. This house was proposed at exactly the limit, and they moved 50 feet around, but then they added the light well. And the light well exceeds the TDSF. So I'm gonna have a real problem with this property.
Yeah, I visited the site also and saw, as Commissioner Hill had called out, just, it looks like much of the proposed changes were already in place. So I observed similarly.
Yeah, same thing, I just, I drove by staff for a few minutes. And I guess the question is, there was a statement that says that there will be some enforcement, what do you enforce?
I think they were saying they had to resolve the violations, there might be fines to be paid, or if there was something illegally built on the property, they would have to be removed before they could get the final approval.
Or if you, if you end up approving the planning entitlement for it, then they would have to obtain the proper building permits and get it inspected and all of that stuff.
Okay. Anything else? All right, Lynn, you're on.
My name is Lynn Heacock, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. I'm here on behalf of Tomboy Farms. We were advised that our staff planner received a complaint indicating that we had some illegal construction on our property. Our, our staff planner contacted our project superintendent, Mr. Alan Lieberman. Alan Lieberman called me this morning, and I said, "We've got illegal construction on our project site. We've been under construction for the last two to three years, and this is our very first complaint." I said, "I need to get to the bottom of this. We need to explain it to the planning commissioners." Yes, we accept the staff recommendation. But we do have three rooftop structures. There were 24 feet in height. The planning commission approved the 24 feet. California Code Check, the city's planning, plan checkers, approved 24 feet, and they were constructed. Subsequently, those same 24-foot-high sections were reconstructed up to 28 feet, pitched roofs. They still have California Code Check corrections, but the planning commission never received, never, never approved those projections. They are actually on our amendment tonight, and Lilly has circled up those roofs. The planning commission originally approved two light wells on our property. Subsequently, those light wells were approved by California Code Check and constructed. Subsequently, one of those light wells was extended in length to accommodate a stairway, and that was shown today on one of the exhibits that Lilly perceived. We have an approval from California Code Check for the light well, and it does meet the interpretation that some of, all of our light wells do not exceed 25% of the perimeter of the basement. And today, I've spoken to Tomboy Farms, and we want you to approve our project. But today, on behalf of Tomboy Farms, we are extremely apologetic for having violations on our property after two to three years of construction. And we hope that we can regain your trust going forward into the future. I want to introduce you to Alan Lieberman. If you want to see those same exhibits that were shown by Lilly, he can show them to you. And if you have any questions of me or him, please ask them.
Alan?
When we first got our permit for substantial conformance review, we started building the project. We had, we were told we had to have a fire hydrant on the project. And so, I've never built in Malibu, I didn't know, so I assumed, but we have plenty of time to put it on. When we got the substantial conformance review, or actually the first set of plans, the initial, they said, "You can't, fire department can't give me a permit, because I don't have it on-site, I don't have it working." I said, "I didn't know, I'll take care of it," and they said, "You get it done." Over the next year or so, we kept working on the permit for the fire department and get the fire hydrant installed. But we were being held up, and Richard Sherman, who was with...
What company? Richard Sherman?
Underground Development, who's working on the fire hydrant for us. I said, "Listen, I have to do something. And can I put a fire truck on there? Can I do, you know, fire water trucks and stuff?" So we finally spoke to Craig George, and he said, "I'll let you do everything that's non-combustible." He gave me a separate permit to go ahead and put in our basement and our 12-foot retaining walls. We did all that, we did all the waterproofing, we did all the backfill. We had some other foundation work, which we got a, another permit for, through Craig George. And eventually, we got the fire hydrant put in, and we got the okay to start building the house. Then we went for a substantial conformance review, which originally showed the, the two light wells. There was always to be two light wells. Both of them were supposed to have ladders going up. One has a window, one has a sliding door. We thought it'd be great to make that sliding door into a patio. Patio was there. We thought, instead of just blocking it off, we would extend the stairs going up. And so we went ahead and built that at the time, that exterior, exterior wall. I figured if we didn't get it approved, I would just make it a planter, backfill against it, and just have a planter that was just a little deeper than normal. Not the planter so much as the footing and the retaining wall, which would be backfilled against it. So, moving forward, if I can remember so well, I've been there for quite a while. Then we went ahead and with this CBPA, which was submitted, I think, in June of 2017, and finally approved in a letter in January of 2019. During that time, we went back and forth with planning commission on a bunch of different incomplete letters. And as we kept going through, we kept checking off items, things that were okay, things that weren't going to be a problem, things that were approved, things that were cool compliant. So, once we got to the point where we knew we were able to put the roofs on, or at least in my mind, it would be eventually approved, and hoping that the paperwork would catch up, and not wishing to keep anything, the project moving and the house built, because these two roofs are integral to the whole house. And since we also had, in California Code Check, we had a, what do you call that? Conformance review, is it, what's the...
Concurrent, in the middle.
Concurrent, thank you. A concurrent review with California Code Check. And if there was any changes, it was all a dime to get them taken care of on the structural. That was approved as well. So I guess you might say I jumped the gun. I'm the project manager, whatever goes on, goes through me. Whatever mistakes or whatever blame is to be laid on, is to be laid on me. So we do have the, the roofs built per code of the structural improvement from CCC. I do have the wall built and approved and signed off when we did the 10-inch-thick concrete shotcrete walls. What else do I have? Oh, I, Commissioner Hill, I do not have the pilasters built. The pilasters that you observed were from a previous permit that was issued for grade beams and pilasters at 45 feet from the property line, at which time we had gates that were gonna be 42 inches tall. My clients then decided they wanted to have gates that were gonna be six feet tall, that you didn't have to have some sort of penetration through what you can see through. Excuse me. So those are there, owner's cost, it will have them removed. And we will go ahead and with the new permit, with the new CBPA, be putting new pilasters in and a new, what they might call a privacy wall. That I did not start, I did not build. And I guess that's about it. Like I said, you say I jumped the gun. We did have it all worked on. And, you know, I was hoping paperwork would catch up. We didn't have to have framing inspections for a while. So there would no be reason to, you know, have to hide anything from anybody. By the time paperwork caught up, unfortunately, with the fires and with staff controls, things got out of hand. And it's taken a year and a half to get to the point of just having the staff report issued. And it's been another additional six weeks, six months, just to get in front of you. So, any questions?
Okay. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you.
Anybody else speak?
Anybody else speak? No? Okay, we'll close public hearing. Go ahead, John.
They went from 24 feet to 28 feet. Was there a site plan review and did, was there a view study when it went higher?
There was a, an amendment to the existing site plan review when they went from 24 feet to 28 feet for that one section of the house. The, I, I did observe the story poles once they're installed, and they are visible from Winding Way, which is a public trail. But staff believes that it is compatible with the neighborhood, given that there are other two-story structures in the area, and it does not affect, negatively affect neighborhood character.
Does it affect any neighborhood views?
We have not received any complaints from neighbors for impacts to private views.
Okay, and then...
A quick question, were neighbors notified there was a change in height? So that they'd be aware, they'd know to weigh in?
Yes, the public notice did include that language.
The public notice was for the, for this meeting?
Yes.
Okay, and then you seemed to indicate that the gates were gonna be non-permeable? Are they gonna be permeable or non-permeable?
The, the new proposed gates will be non-permeable at six feet high, but they will be built at 65 feet from the property line, so they are outside of the front yard setback.
We did a minor, you're asking for a minor mod. How deep is the property?
The, the, so the minor modification is for the wall that runs along the width of the property, and that is within 55 feet of the property line. So that component does require the minor mod. But then at that point, the wall jogs back 10 feet to 65 feet. And the, so the gate is, is outside of the front yard setback.
So part of it's in the five yards, the setback, if it goes back, right? You don't have a gate sitting all alone.
The, the wall jogs back 10 feet.
The part that jogs back 10 feet is in the setback, correct?
It jogs, it jogs in, in, further into the property, so it's outside of the setback.
Yeah, but it starts outside of the property, goes into the property.
Yeah, but the gate is completely outside the setback. It's just the wall that's in the setback, correct?
That's right.
The wall, my question is, is the wall connected to the gate? Yeah, so by definition, it has to be in the setback.
The, the wall is in the setback. But then the wall goes back further from the setback, and adjoins to the gate, which is outside of the setback.
The gate is outside the setback.
Yes.
So is there any part of the wall that's inside of the setback?
They've, they've adjusted, they're requesting a minor modification of the setback, so that they can have a six-foot solid wall at 55 feet instead of 65 feet. Right?
That's right, I can pull up a...
Would you show me?
Yes.
Because I, because I, and we turned this down before, and I'm just wondering how it's, it's good now.
Is it exactly the same as what was proposed before, Lilly, do you know?
No, it's changed from what was proposed before.
While she's looking in on the subject of the gate, I thought that the front had to be no more than 42 inches high unless it were permeable above that, is that not accurate?
The, for the wall, the minor modification, I believe, is to allow it to be solid.
It's the height.
Right.
The gate to be solid or the wall?
The wall.
Okay, so the gate, they're saying is...
The gate, the gate complies.
It's non-permeable, and it should be, I mean, it should be permeable, correct?
It's, it's at, it's behind the 65, it's right at the 65-foot setback, so it, it complies. It can be solid.
How deep is the property?
The maximum setback of any property is 65 feet. I don't know off the top of my head, if you're asking about the depth.
So you, so you just move back 65 feet, and you can do whatever you feel like?
Right.
Okay, now, second question. Is the property fenced according to the code? It's over, it's over a half an acre. Does it have split rail fences?
There are chain link fences.
Okay, well, that's a, that's a code violation. Was there ever a permit for that?
The, the, the plan of the, the original plan called out for chain link fences, I mean, split rail fences inside the existing chain link fences.
Well, that makes no sense at all. Is that true?
There's, there's existing chain link fences around the entire property, okay?
That are on the property?
On the property.
Okay, so the property's got a chain link fence around it?
Yes.
And you're saying you're gonna put a split rail, oh.
There, there was, there was something about adding split rail fences to one part of the back part of Lot A, Lot AC.
So is that still, is that still a requirement of the project?
I don't, I don't know if it's a requirement or not, but it was once upon a time, some sort of addition that they wanted us to, whether it's for an aesthetic type of view or why.
It's for, it's for animal.
For, okay.
Now, is that there now?
The split rail fence is not in.
Is there another fence?
The chain link fence is in.
And did you put that in?
We, we put a new one in, because the old one fell down in certain parts.
Okay, so then it's required to have a chain, a split rail fence around the property.
Yes, no, we just replaced it, because the neighbors...
The chain link fence stays?
No, it doesn't, because it was taken down.
He said it's still up, he just put a new one up.
He put it up.
So what he's saying is...
We replaced the, replaced the old existing chain link fence with a new one.
He did it, as he said, replaced it.
You cannot replace.
He just did it, I'm just saying he did it.
I know, so I'm saying it has to be taken out.
Okay, that's...
Okay.
For what reasons?
Because you're required to have split rail, and you put in chain link.
There, there's language in the code that requires that if property is bigger than a half an acre, it has to, you have to have fencing that animals can go through. Some people will leave a gap in the fence, or some people use split rail. There are different ways to do it.
But if it wasn't asked to remove the existing fence to begin with?
Once you remove something, it's gone.
But, but, the code doesn't say that it has to be entirely surrounded by permeable fencing.
Everything over a half an acre?
I'm sorry, I've got the floor. And what the code, what the code has been interpreted before by talking to the staff in other situations is that there have to be gaps in certain places that allow animals to move through, but it doesn't prohibit chain link fencing.
Could you read us the fence section on chain link fences?
If you'd like, we can just add a condition that says that the fencing needs to be wild by permeable in accordance with the code.
Okay, now, I'm asking staff this. How do we deal with the fact that this is bigger than total out TDSF? Do we eliminate the, the light well? Which you need to, so do we...
It can't be unless there's a variance.
A one-man-to-walk-in light well?
When staff...
That's the only way I can see I can figure out how to fix it.
When staff calculated the TDSF, we found that it does comply with TDSF. The applicant is proposing to remove square footage, I believe from the basement for this particular project to comply.
Well, somewhere in here, it says you're removing 50 and adding 50. Okay? And then you say you're adding a light well.
The, the light well is included in the TDSF of the basement, right? That's what the...
Okay, if it's one, they went right up to the foot, within the inch. And so therefore, if half of it counts, it's still over.
I'm just, I, I don't know how much of the TDSF of this structure is basement-oriented, but the policy that's quoted is page seven of 16, the bottom reads, "The square footage of light well should be included in the total development square footage of basements pursuant to the section." So you count total development square footage of basements separately from total development square footage overall.
Right, but in this case, they mentioned that. Did you take into account 50% of the additional light well? And can you show me where you did that? Because somewhere in here, it says, and I'll find it, you took out 50... here, it says, and I'll find it, you took out 50 square feet and added 50 square feet, and then you added a light well.
Lynn, you're entitled to 1,000 square, an exemption of, of basement square footage of 1,000 square feet. Is there, get to the microphone, stand to the microphone.
Mr. Speaker, can you speak a little louder for me?
How, how, how large is the basement in the structure?
Page five.
It says in the project description, 989 square feet.
So, you get 1,000 square feet, and everything above that counts as 50%, right?
Right, the, the 50, the 50, addition of 50 square feet is for the light well, and 50, I believe, 50 square feet was removed from the basement.
Well, if you look at page five of 16, you will see that you're reporting you reduced the size of the garage by 50 square feet. You added 50 square feet for the breakfast nook. There's no mention of a light well there.
And that was for the substantial conformance determination that was previously approved. So, so that section one through five, starting with reduce the size of the garage by 50 square feet, is for the substantial conformance, and then following that is the project description for the subject application.
Okay, and that's where, on, on page six?
Same, on five of 16, number two, it says enlarge a previously approved light well and revise the basement floor plan. Is that what you're talking about?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay, and so the compliance table will show the floor plan. This is what, 5C? 5A?
5A.
So, all I have to do is look at the compliance table.
I got two square feet on the compliance table.
Could I just reiterate one, one more point of the...
Let me get this, let's get this and wrap it up first.
Okay.
Unless, are you trying to clarify something related to this?
Yeah, that the original permit and this substantial conformance review permit all permitted two light wells. One was a window light well, one was a light well with a sliding glass door. They were always permitted.
Yeah, but they were, they did not have stairs, correct?
There were always two light wells.
But were there stairs?
On the permitted plan.
Were there stairs?
The stairs is the addition area that we're doing.
If I can clarify something here.
Lilly's also got this picture of this.
The, the existing bas, the, the basement is spec'd at 989 square feet, and so if you were saying you're adding 50 square feet, half of which would be attributed to the basement square footage, that would be 25 additional, which would take you over to 1,000, or it would take you 14 square feet over your max TDSF.
So, the, the basement...
That's what John's saying.
The basement floor plan is, is displayed, and it shows that there was 50 square feet removed from the basement floor plan.
Where does it show that? Can you show us where that says that?
The report specs it at 989 square feet.
What was it before?
Right here, it's, it's, it's hard to see on the screen, but it is included in your packet, and so 50 square feet was removed for the basement. So, it was a like-for-like addition and removal of the basement.
So, where can I find the original basement in the basement now?
Would it make sense to, would it make sense to move on to some other questions while John sorts that out and get back to that? I understand that our discretion is limited on, on this amendment, the SPR, but I just have to ask out of curiosity, how is it that there are two ADUs both over 900 square feet if the whole thing is a new replacement structure and there's nothing that should be grandfathered? I mean, I, I understand that's not under our review, but it may be relevant to the overall TDSF slash neighborhood character, whatever, just how do, how do you get two extra-large ADUs under a whole new plan?
The, the two accessory structures have been permitted as a music room and as a dance and art studio.
And they don't have facilities in them?
They, they don't, they're not living units.
So, they're not limited to 900 square feet then?
That's right.
Well, we don't have ADUs, the city council never asked.
Right, or whatever we want to call them, okay.
We do have ADUs, we have second units, and we have...
Second units, but they're not AUDs, they're...
Okay, so that, that's an interesting distinction there. Just back to the question of the, the permitting after the fact, it, it does strike me that it sort of makes a mockery of the permitting process if we're going to let stuff go ahead and then give permits to it later. So, I just wondered what, I think Trevor, you alluded to that there, there might be some fine, or does, do they pay something into a remediation fund, or what, is there some remedy here to deter this kind of activity?
Well, I think there's been enforcement action on this. I, I don't know the details of what happened here, but they're also taking on a risk. If it's not approved, then whatever illegally was put in will have to be ripped out, so it's generally not wise.
But that, that's, that's the only thing, so...
You could be fined for every day, you know, that you have illegal stuff on your property. The fines can add up, and they can be, every day that it exists, you're liable for a fine. I don't know if they've been issued here, but you could be fined for that.
I think the case was just opened, so I don't, I don't know what the status of that is.
It's open today, the fines probably haven't accrued to that degree, but that would be within the code enforcement officer's discretion.
Okay.
Can you tell me what the, what we're approving tonight for the size of the basement?
Exactly 1,000 square feet is what it looks like, including the light well, that's what he took six feet out. I'm just backing into trying to understand her math. It looks like they had a little bit of room, they swapped out six feet from a corner to be able to squeeze in exactly the 25 feet needed for the light well. Yeah, so they just did the math to make it all fit to exactly 1,000 instead of 989. But correct me if I'm wrong.
Thank you for the clarification. On sheet RA1, the basement plan shows the calculations for the square footage, so it was approved at 955. They removed six square feet, and they added 50 square feet for the light well, for a total of 999 square feet.
So, they give us a foot on the basement below the max and two feet on the overall TDSF versus, you know, 10,240?
That doesn't count for the light well.
It did, it did. They, they brought it right to that 1,001 foot under it, by removing six square feet from the corner of the basement.
Project description built a 989 square foot basement.
So, that, that is not updated correctly then, in what was written, correct? It's actually 999, once they...
So, they made the basement bigger?
Yeah, but they've got the right to go to 1,000 without counting anything.
Right. Are they counting, does it say that it's counted? The, they went up, okay, they went 11, up 11 square feet.
Well, but...
Okay, and this, this light well is more than 11 square feet.
Correct, it was, so, so they went from 989, they added 25, they took away six, they ended up at 999. Didn't do the math correctly.
Okay, so 12, 12 feet. They got, they got 12 feet now, that's not a light well. The thing's 25 feet long by four feet, right? That's 100 square feet. Okay, so they're over. So, I, I'm gonna, unless you can prove that they aren't, I'm gonna add to the motion that the, the stairs are removed, because we can't...
Goes back to the original plan.
Yeah.
Which had no stairs, just a light well.
Just a light, yeah, yeah.
Okay, so I'm gonna make a motion to approve 5A, as staff recommends, with wildlife permeable gate, language added, and, again, not gate, fence.
You mean wildlife permeable fencing is required by the code?
Yeah, blah, 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 and that the walkout light well be reconverted to a, a ladder light well.
Well, just a couple of questions. I mean, so we, we, they're, they're allowing, the, the fence, the minor mod is pushing the fence closer to the prop, to the street than it should be by code.
Well, Bonnie just told me that it's in the, behind the setback, behind the...
No, no, it's not, it's, that's the minor mod. The, the motion is not to require everything to be permeable, just if it's required by code. I think that was the...
We're talking about two different things.
Okay, sorry.
Now, I, I don't want this council, let's, let's finish with the fence, the rails.
Okay.
They admitted they tore it down, so I don't want, I don't want staff's interpretation as, oh, they put it up and therefore they get to keep it. They have to put in the split rail, correct?
No, there are other ways to...
Or other methods?
Yes.
But they can't just keep their, their chain link?
They have to comply with the code as far as fencing more than half an acre.
Okay, that's, and then, you guys can have what else you want, I want the light well fixed.
Commissioner Hill, did you have something?
Yeah, two, two things. One, the proposed exempt grading is at 999, and I, I'm wondering, given that the project has evolved and mutated over time with the possibility of grading occurring at different times, do we have a close accounting of that grading, and can, can we in any way confirm that, that 999 is, is real, and how do we, how do we just buy that?
Well, in, in the, the, I believe what was approved on January 10th already had it at 999, so if they're...
He's asking if it's 1,200.
Well, it's gotta be, for the light well to be extended, it would have to be more. So, yeah, anyway, go ahead.
Yeah.
So, the light well's gone, so the, your question is...
Okay, so then that's gone.
Your question is, in the meantime, with all this work being done, has it exceeded whatever it is?
Yeah, I mean, it's just, just being right there on the margin there, it just seems like there's so much uncertainty over time that...
So, did the, did your grading include the addition of the light, you are, you said earlier that you already had two light wells approved, but one of them got bigger?
Mr. Chairman, Bonnie Blue, where I'm sitting, these speakers don't work with me very well, and Vietnam was a very noisy place. If you would all just speak up a little bit more, maybe 10, 20 more decibels, it would certainly be helpful.
We're trying to figure out if the, by putting in the light wells, you've exceeded the grading that was allowed under the original application. Then you need to come closer.
Yeah, Bonnie, I, I want to make a point. We're, we're eliminating the light well, so it shouldn't have any effect.
Well, the light well's already there, I think, so we need to, I just want to get clarification about how they...
Which light well's there? Is it with stairs or is originally constructed?
Haven't they already been constructed, the light wells?
It's, it's not clear to me, Bonnie, what you're saying.
Are the light wells currently in? Are both light wells built today?
Yes, they are, they were part of the original approved.
Okay, and the one light well has got the staircase in it.
One light, one, one light well is at, is at the window, it has a, a walk-up ladder to it.
Right.
The other light well had, had a...
A sliding door.
That had a patio that you could step out on.
Right, and then it's, and it's, you got staircases going up.
It had a block wall, it was just solid.
Got it, okay, got it.
What we planned to do, add an exterior wall, knock out that block wall, knock out that block wall, that, that ended the patio, okay, and just walk up those stairs as an additional, easier way to get out of the...
So, you're saying the light wells are currently constructed as the original plans, and the stairwell has not been installed in the second light well, correct?
The stairwell, the stairwell is not there.
Okay.
The wall extending where would have been those staircase had, is, is there. That was part of the original shot created area, as mentioned, okay? And so, if we, if we don't have the light well, the wall goes away, and it goes back to where it was before. It's that simple.
Okay.
If that's, if that's, if that's the recommendation.
Yeah, my question was a little more general about the grading, so, I, I, I don't know how to resolve it one way or the other, other than to hear, oh, yes, we keep a very careful accounting, and here's all the numbers that happened in this year and that year, and you know, it's...
I can clarify the, the question regarding the grading. So, the original approval was for 962 cubic yards of grading, and then there was a substantial conformance determination that allowed for 19 cubic yards of grading. And then there was, there's 18 cubic yards of gate, grading proposed for the light well, and the civil engineer did provide calculations that are shown on the screen that, that shows the math for how they got to that number.
Okay, so it's certified. So, my last question, I just noticed this, the biology review sheet for the checkboxes for review findings, none of them are checked. We don't know, so if it's incomplete or not approved or approved, the review sheet is blank. Page, well, you, I guess you can find that it's in the stack where the review sheets are.
The, the first page of the biology review sheet does show that the project is approved.
Oh, on that page, okay, the, the, on the, flip the next page in the packet, that doesn't need to be checked also?
No, that's, no, that should only be checked if it's incomplete or not approved, or if the environmental review board approved the project.
Bonnie, are you following me on this?
Yeah, it's, um...
Yeah, that's okay.
Right, because you don't get the first page if you don't, if you haven't cleared these on the second page already.
Okay.
You know, this project is a mess, just generally speaking.
It, it got messy, for sure.
Yeah, it really has. I mean, I don't know what the hell you guys are doing, but...
Well, I, I wanna, I mean, we're, we're looking to give, you know, minor mods and site planner view exceptions to this. I'm, especially going closer to the street with everything else going on, I, I don't feel that comfortable with that, nor about going even higher, you know, for, does that impact site? Does it impact neighborhood character?
We don't have any, I just, we don't have any evidence so far that there's any impact from the change in the roof line on views or anything.
I'm uncomfortable going ahead if they get dinged on the unpermitted work, because that seems to be important in terms of the permit process.
We, we don't, we, you guys aren't like an enforcement body, so that's up to code enforcement.
Are we allowed to ask if somebody ever got dinged?
I mean, Bonnie can make a report about if there's been citations issued, but I, you know...
I'd just like to amend my motion that planning director will report back to us on what fines were charged.
You don't need to put that in the rest of...
For this project? Or what?
On this project.
The, the case was just opened, so...
Yeah, you can come back six months from now, whenever they fine him. Okay, do we have a motion to do something? That's my motion, my motion is to...
Including the minor mod and the site planner view, let, let everything, like, have the, the fence another five, 10 feet into, towards the street?
I was told that it's beyond...
No, 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 so it's, it's not within the setback, it's too close to the street for the wall, then it makes a cut away from the street for the gate. So, we're allowing them to put a six-foot fence inside the setback, they're asking for a minor modification, and that's what I'm not comfortable with.
They're allowing, Bonnie, is this correct?
Which, which finding are you having trouble making? Section C, just the finding, let's see, which, which is finding one, finding two. So, it's the reduction in the front yard setback. Now, I thought for a minor mod, we had to have that, yeah, fitting, okay, not adversely affecting neighborhood character. I interpret that to be neighborhood standards, I don't think... It's not, so it's, it's whether, if you don't find it, if you find it that it adversely affects neighborhood character, that would be what you need to make. Okay, one sec, go ahead, John. Then you, you should explain why.
Now, that doesn't look like 55 feet from the street to me. Is it?
That's the existing wall that was there, the gate, that's the old gate there, we still use to lock up the property.
You're getting rid of the wall that's in the picture?
Yes. Say again, please?
You're getting rid of the wall that's in the picture?
The wall, the wall that's in the picture right now is part of the existing property. It houses a sliding gate that was always there, and we still use that sliding gate to close up. That will be demoed, and the gate will be 65 feet back from there, the new one, but that's just, that's just the existing gate.
Now, Bonnie, is there anything we, we can do to require that, that fence to be permeable?
That's already been established, yeah. They're, they're gonna follow code on that. Could be chain linked with gate, with gaps.
No, 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 we're talking the rest of property. I'm talking about that front fence that they want six-foot solid.
That, then you would want to deny the minor modification, because if, if you grant the minor modification, then it's no longer in the front yard setback, because you're adjusting the front yard setback to make it smaller, so that they can have a solid wall.
Okay, well, then I, I'm gonna, I'm gonna add to my motion, we deny the minor modification.
Can I clarify, I'm, I'm happy with the location of the wall, but it's the height that is problematic to me, the six feet.
Not the permeability?
Well, if they could do it 42 inches, then that's fine, but...
Well, you can't make them do that.
If you, if you don't grant the minor mod...
So, are you saying, are you saying that you would, you'd be, you'd be willing to, you'd be able to say it's, it's not adversely affecting neighborhood character if the fence was, was reduced to 42 inches from the location within...
was, was reduced to 42 inches within the location within?
But let me just be clear, if you, if you have a 42-inch solid wall that doesn't go above 42 inches and you don't need a minor mod anymore.
Correct, correct. I thought part of the mod was for the location of it.
Okay, so-
Either way.
No.
Let me make it clear.
You can have a 42-inch solid wall up to six feet with additional non, sorry, view permeable material in the front yard setback.
Or, or they, sorry, or they could go far enough away from the street and go to six feet.
Correct.
Yeah, okay.
Okay, so my question is, when I'm making a motion to make that 42 inches, all I have to do is deny the minor mod, correct? That's the simplest way to do it?
That is a way to do it.
Well, is there a simpler way? Okay, so that's my motion. My motion is that they, they follow, that they approve staff's plan, they follow the, the fence code, and we deny the minor modification.
But they can still put the fence in the location they want, I meant the wall.
And you just have to be for you?
Just has to meet the height requirements.
At 42 inches.
Do they need any permitting for this?
Excuse me, if, if we move that wall back the 65 feet, like we have the gate, then we can move, then we build that wall at six foot.
That's right.
So you would have your choice of either moving the wall back or reducing it?
Absolutely.
Okay, so you're proposing to, to remove your request for minor modification and to move the fence?
Move the request and, and everything will be 65 feet from the property line.
Okay, so they've now removed their request for the minor modification. So Commissioner Mazza, would your motion then be staff's recommendation with the addition that, that the project comply with the view permeability requirements of the code in terms of fencing?
Correct.
Okay.
And then now, I am assured that we're under the TDSF, correct? Because I could never figure out what you were talking about.
Okay.
Are we correct? Are you over five feet?
Well, the, the, the change, that there's no longer going to be a staircase, right?
Is that part of it too, so we're reverting to the?
So we're, and then my other portion of the thing is, the walk-up staircase goes.
Okay, so you're not, so you're, you're not allowing the, the proposed change to the second light well, so both light wells remain as originally approved? They've removed the request for the minor modification? And so then the remaining motion is to approve with staff's rec, to approve staff's recommendation without the minor modifications, no longer needed? And with the light well as previously approved, not as proposed with the, with the stairs and with required compliance with the fencing rules in terms of wildlife permeability. Is that correct?
That's what I said, yeah.
Okay, is there?
I'll second it.
Somebody, somebody explain to me, because I'm reading the staff report that says, in addition, both the previously approved light well and proposed enlarged light well comply with LCP policy four, et cetera, et cetera. The light well's square footage is included in the TDSF calculation, the combined length of the two light wells does not exceed 25% of the exterior perimeter of the basement and the enlarged light well is 36 inches, width is 36 inches. So somebody explain to me the calculation you arrived at that-
We determine-
Maybe, maybe Marx, could you explain it to me?
Yeah, so the thought was on this one is that it was both a combination of the grading and the, the square footage in the basement. So either one, the grading, they were already at 999 before introducing this. So if we introduce that light well, they're gonna, with the first square foot, cubic yard they remove, they're gonna be over the 1,000.
So it's a grading issue?
That, that's how I saw it, because in terms of the way that they presented the numbers on the basement, by removing the six feet, they got right to that 1,000 square foot basement, so that could fly, but I don't see the cubic yards working out in this scenario.
I thought you said it only added six square, it added-
They removed six feet and then they replaced with the other.
Yeah, and then we determined that the light well was 100.
With, with that, with light well in there, they're at the 999 square feet, but it's the, the grading which is really the issue now.
The basement is at 999, but the total development square footage is over when you add the light well.
No, because the basement is allowed 1,000 square feet with no impact to TDSF. That's why that didn't factor in.
Whatever.
Thank you for explaining it to me, if that's the issue. You understand that then, the issue is that there's too much grading now? That in order to allow that light well to exist? Can you hear me?
Yes, I can hear you. Well, what was the question?
It wasn't a question, I'm just explaining it to you, that the reason that the light well with the staircase is being denied is because you're now exceeding the 1,000 cubic yards of allowable grading by extending that light well and putting the staircase in.
Yep.
The grading, the grading calculations that they've submitted don't square with that. They, their grading calculations, I'm looking at Lily, they seem to total out.
Right, so, so the original approval had 962 cubic yards of grading, not 999 cubic yards of grading. So a subsequent substantial conformance determination approved an additional 19 cubic yards of grading. So, so they had 18 cubic yards of grading to play with, which is what they are proposing for the light well expansion.
And that was what was submitted in the January, January report? Or, because in the January report it shows 999, did they include that staircase in that report?
If you look at the, the zoning conformance table on six of 16, you see that what has been approved previously of non-exempt grading, it was originally 962 cubic yards, 981 was, it was changed to 981 through the substantial conformance review. So that means they had, what, 19 cubic yards to play with? And the light well does not exceed that amount.
Maybe. I move the question.
You mean you're cutting off debate, John?
I'm moving it, you don't have to vote for it.
I just want to understand, so in the, in the January report, we showed 999 cubic yards, so at that point, did we have that staircase on the stairwell?
Yes, and, and in the January report, I was mistaken in that I thought that they were adding a new stairwell, a new light well, sorry, when in fact they were proposing the expansion of that second light well all along. So that 999 cubic yards of grading proposed in the January report was for the exact, well, closer to what's being proposed tonight.
Then Vice Chair Jennings' point is correct. So if that does, did already count for the grading, then we don't have a grading issue conforms at 999. And, you know, to John's observation, they took the six square feet away, but they, you know, to account for, so they got right to that limit on TDSF on the basement, that doesn't, accounts for zeros on the TDSF for the structure. So, yeah, then as it stands, they would-
What is 25 times the depth times four feet divided by nine? That's what we have to know, is if that's over 19 or not.
Oh, so what was the total square footage of that light well again?
Well, it's not the square footage, it's the cubic yards.
Oh, well, that too. Uh, yeah. I mean, they, they showed the, the math on that calc right there, though, that's there.
Where?
Right up on the page, yeah.
Question, Marx, if you want to propose the change, you'd ask for a friendly amendment to allow the light well as proposed.
Well, I wanted to understand it first.
Now, they say the average depth is 5.5 feet, right? Square footage of light well stair area, that's, it's 25 feet long, right? And it's four feet wide, that's not 88.
The stairwell's only 14, 14 feet long.
14?
14.
14. 14. Feet times five feet is not 88. So those numbers aren't right.
No.
So that's what I'm saying. When you, when you move things right up to the square inch-
Right, you're asking for trouble.
You're asking for trouble, and those numbers aren't right.
I mean, effectively, the, the, the math lines up with what's been presented here and they're within a foot on everything, so they're pushing everything to the left.
Do you think 88 times 5.5 is, is the right number?
I'm just trying to look at the plans here, but... Well, 20 times four, it's close. I mean, four feet wide, 20 feet long, whatever, it's right there.
Whatever.
I'll, I'll make the friendly amendment that you suggested for Commissioner Marx. I think, you know, we're, we're within a couple of feet, whatever, it's fine.
The friendly amendment is to propose to allow the light well as proposed.
Okay. So I'll, let me ask one last question. It's 11:24, but on an, on an amendment like this, could we consider site plan review neighborhood standards?
Uh, I'm, I'm not sure what you're referring to here.
I'm just saying, this is a-
They've withdrawn the minor modification request, so there's no requirement, oh, yeah.
Yeah, you raised the height.
Yeah, there's a site plan review still, so yes.
So you do have a neighborhood character finding for that.
So we've, have we made a neighborhood characters finding?
Staff presented findings to make the, the neighborhood character finding.
What, in the last staff report?
They've, in both staff reports.
Okay. And you guys are all fine with that, I'll take these, I'll go home, I'll do whatever the, get rid of the stairwell thing.
Did you accept the friendly amendment?
Yeah.
And who was the second?
Steve was, wasn't he?
I'll second.
You accept the friendly amendment as well to allow the, the, the light well as proposed?
Yes.
Okay.
So, Mr. Chairman? Staff, the commission is recommending that the stairs be eliminated from the stairwell?
No.
No, no longer.
No, you're, you're getting your stairwell, you're getting your light, your light well.